The committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, and welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Councillor Anderson in the chair. Could I have a motion that we adopt the agenda in front of us? Councillor Stoner, thank you, and seconded by Councillor French. Any opposed? Motion carried. So we have a busy day today with presentations and deliberations. First up is the Asset Management Plan and Natural Asset Management Strategy Presentation. Mr. Rolston, you have the floor, and if you would introduce our guests. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. We're here this morning to present the recently completed Asset Management Plan Update and the district's first natural asset management strategy. I'm joined by Brittany Donnie and Jody Reckenmacher with Urban Systems, both engineers. Brittany will be presenting the Asset Management Plan Update, and Jody will be presenting on the Natural Asset Management Strategy. So for some quick background on this project, the district completed its first asset management plan in 2010, which was a great first step for the district on our asset management journey. It evaluated the majority of district assets and assessed funding gaps, as well as recommendations to improve the district's asset management practices. Over the past decade, the district has done considerable work to advance asset management, including completing detailed master plans for our major asset classes, completing condition assessments on our major infrastructure, initiating a benchmarking program, and increasing funding for our sewer and water utilities. Since 2010, there's also been a considerable amount of community growth, meaning we have a lot of new assets since the last plan was created. In 2020, the district initiated work on this Asset Management Plan Update, and one of the big goals of this plan was to ensure that we considered all of the district's assets. So this meant including some assets that weren't considered in the original Asset Management Plan. And this is a really critical piece to ensure that we're holistically planning for all of our asset renewal costs and to ensure that we have sustainable funding for our assets. So we're really excited to share the work that we've been developing since 2010. And with that, I'll hand it over to Brittany to lead the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, can everyone hear me? Okay, so like David said, there were through 2021 and 2022, there were three major components to a broader asset management capacity building process here. So there was an update to the AM plan. We also developed a natural asset management strategy, which my colleague Jody will speak to. And then we worked to advance the development of a long-term financial planning tool. So these three initiatives here align with the BC framework for sustainable service delivery on which the district's asset management process is based. So this includes assessing and planning. Those were the two big focus areas for this process here. So looking at district processes and practices, especially around information, and then the state of assets, and then turning that into an asset management plan and then the natural asset management strategy. So I'm going to be focusing the discussion here on the first two here. Okay, so the Asset Management Plan answers key questions such as what assets does the district own? How much are they worth expressed in replacement cost? When might they need to be replaced? That's a high-level forecast. How much does the district need to invest in asset replacement? And then what should the district do next? So providing recommendations around that. It's really important to note that the AMP is a snapshot in time of what is actually a constantly evolving asset inventory. So like David said, this is an update to what was the plan in 2010. And so it now includes more assets, more up-to-date costs, more up-to-date replacement timing than what would have been expressed in the 2010 plan. So it's constantly evolving process, continuous improvement process. And with the ultimate goal here of supporting sustainable service delivery at the district, the AMP helps the district understand the scope of the assets that it's responsible for, the state of those assets, and key information gaps. Again, with it being a continuous improvement process, what could be refined over time. It aims to help the district make informed decisions about where to prioritize investments, both in further data collection and then also in asset replacement. So this is not so much an operational tool as more of a higher-level long-term financial planning sort of tool. And just to further clarify that, because there's, you know, overall complex process of asset management here. You know, this is not a capital plan. This does not replace the capital plan. It does not include a list of specific capital projects, specific timing around them. It also only focuses on what the district currently owns today. So does not include assets that would be required to address, for example, climate risk, growth, other level of service upgrades driven by regulatory changes, that sort of thing. It's really looking at what the district owns today. And then further, just to show here how this fits within other tools here, you know, the lighter the box there, the kind of higher level or more strategic that asset management tool is, and then the darker, the more granular or operational it is. So you can see here that the Asset Management Plan, along with the capital plan, would inform that long-term financial plan. And the idea is that over time, these actually, you'd see those arrows go really both ways, that they start to really inform one another as you get that more refined picture of assets and replacement costs and funding needs over time. So what I'm going to do next here is just go through those key answers to the Asset Management Plan questions here. So the first one here around what the assets the district owns. The district has quite a diverse portfolio of assets that it's responsible for. Specifically, and I think this is probably not a surprise to Council, quite a large number of flood protection and drainage assets. And so this is largely due to the geography of the district, local climate, and especially the fact that the district is quite a self-reliant community. So, you know, especially if you look at some other communities in the lower mainland, for example, there's a lot of shared services there and receiving them from the regional district. Whereas it's not so much the case here. So the district is responsible for a lot of assets and services that they provide. And then as much as we're talking about assets here, this really is about the services that they provide. And so what we've done is express our reporting under the various funds that those services and assets are funded through. So we have the general wastewater, water, and solid waste utility funds. In terms of how much the district's assets are worth here, we're looking at a total replacement value in $20.21 estimated at around $883 million. So you can see across the board here that the largest value is represented in the general fund, where transportation and then the drainage and flood protection assets make up the largest slice of that pie. And then when you look at the wastewater utility fund and the water utility fund, that's where the mains make up the largest portion of those asset portfolios. And then on the solid waste utility fund, it would be the landfill itself. So when might they need to be replaced? This is a question that is best informed through conditioned data so that more reliable and accurate estimates of remaining life can be made. But in the absence of that, it's industry standard practice to rely on asset age and its material and comparing that to theoretical service life and using that to come up with an estimate of what the remaining service life is based on. So that's what we did in most cases here with the district. It's really common for a lot of communities to not yet have conditioned data that they do have on assets integrated into the GIS inventory, which is how we conduct all of this analysis here. Otherwise, it would be like very, very, very extensive effort to integrate that into the plan. And also just to differentiate this from when assets are actually replaced, that's a very different question. It's a much more nuanced one. That should be informed by much more holistic considerations such as risk, multiple considerations there, alignment across different capital projects, you know, looking at a corridor, for example, growth-driven pressures there. And so those are decisions that are made through a separate, like through the capital planning process and not through this one here. So what you're seeing here now is a 50-year forecast, a high-level replacement forecast of when assets might need to be replaced, again, based on the available data that we have here. So what you can see here is that we are seeing a pretty significant replacement costs, again theoretically being incurred within the next 20 years. So you see that really peaking, you know, kind of either side of around 2040 there, with again, the general fund there represented kind of in the gray-blue, making up the largest portion there, but then some pretty significant costs under the wastewater utility fund around that 2040 mark as well. So again, this isn't a really, really accurate or, you know, determinate sort of a forecast here. This is meant to support long-term financial planning decisions so that the district can look at this and say, you know, we're anticipating some really big expenditures over this amount of time here. When might we need to be relying on debt financing, pursuing other sources of funding, and then of course, also thinking about contributions to reserves through taxation and such. And so the answer to this question here, this is the interesting one. So how much does the district need to invest in asset replacement? There isn't a really necessarily right or certainly easy answer to this question. It's very nuanced. So this requires considering the trade-offs between cost and affordability, risk to service levels, and the service levels themselves that are being sustained and how much that costs. So these trade-offs can be explored to a certain extent through what I'll refer to as the ALKI. So that's the average annual lifecycle investment. That's expressed in cost per year of the district's assets. And we do this under different funding scenarios and compare these to current funding levels measured by or as indicated by contributions to reserves per year. So really, really practically, the ALKI is a number that is asset replacement cost divided by its service life. So you can see here that cost and service life are those drivers of the ALKI. So the longer the service life, the more that you can get out of the asset, the lower the average annual lifecycle investment or cost that would be incurred to sustain that service and replace that asset in time to sustain service. So assets have an industry-standard theoretical service life based on material and such. And so we can think about that, but then also assume that assets could last longer, which is something that we explore through these different scenarios. But that requires recognizing that more funding for inspection and maintenance would be required to extend service life beyond theoretical and/or accepting increasing risk of failure as assets approach and then exceed that standard service life as they start to deteriorate. So this is really important when exploring the district's current funding levels and inherent assumptions about how long assets are going to last in those funding levels. So that's what this exercise is about here. So we looked at three ALKI scenarios, industry-standard. Scenario two was what if we got 25% more service life out of them? And then scenario three, what if we got 50% greater service life? So again, along that spectrum there, there's increasing potential risk of asset failure there that requires, you know, added attention to the assets to make sure that you're mitigating that risk. So this is just an example here. We haven't shown this for all of the funds, but just to show you how this ends up getting reported on. For the general fund, we would show for each of the assets, major asset classes within that fund, what the ALKI is for scenario one, two, and three, and then what that means for approximate replacement cycle. So for example, for drainage and flood protection assets there, we're looking at replacement cycle of 74 to 110 years or so. So as you can see here, the ALKI is greater. Again, the shorter the service life, which is reflected in scenario one. And then it's lower when we assume that we get more life out of those assets. And then so comparing that ALKI to current funding levels allows the district to explore the risk that it's implicitly taking on with current funding levels. And then you can make informed decisions about whether and how to increase funding for assets based on that understanding of risk. So for example, if the district were to set the scenario three ALKI for the general fund as a funding level target, it would be implicitly assuming that assets in that fund will last 50% longer than industry standard. So this again can be mitigated through various management practices. And so what these results show here is that the district is currently assuming that assets in its general fund will last significantly longer than industry standard. Like we're still seeing a fairly sizable funding gap even under scenario three. And then we're seeing a gap under scenario three for wastewater, but to a less extent in terms of proportion of the overall fund. And then for water, we're starting to see more alignment closer and closer to industry standard values there. So a gap only under scenario two there. And then under the solid waste fund, it's generally, funding levels are generally aligned with industry standard service lives there. There is a gap under scenario one, but it's definitely aligned and a surplus showing under scenario two. So this is what most people are talking about when they're referring to, you know, the funding gap, which is very common for municipalities to have. It's typically just a question of how wide is it and for which funds? So on that note, communities are dealing with this in different ways. So various strategies include to increase revenues and then dedicate them to asset replacement. So specifically mechanisms there can be increases to taxes or user fees. And that is something that the district has been making progress on in the water utility fund and the wastewater utility fund. That gap has been narrowing over time. We're not seeing that happening in the general fund right now. There's been less progress made on that one. And there's just a lot of assets and services that are funded through that fund. So other communities have also implemented something like an asset management levy of say, one, one and a half, 2% per year, which can really support building up those reserves over time. Also, and Jody will speak more to this, the connection between the two, but leveraging natural assets to provide services should have a lower lifecycle cost than built infrastructure. And then also considering the implications for asset replacement, overall asset management when making land use and development decisions. So every new asset that the district adds to accommodate growth or level of service increases will add to the ALKI over time. So that's again where this is a snapshot in time and will be continuously evolving. But that portfolio and, you know, without action, the ALKI and funding gap would increase over time as more assets are taken on. So those are your various levers there for managing that infrastructure or that funding gap. So in terms of what the district should do with this information, a few things. One is to keep in mind that the master plans, the district has really good master plans and I think has been keeping them up to date. They provide guidance for near-term funding levels. Again, this is much more of a longer-term view that we're taking through this sort of process. This is meant to prioritize investments in data collection to get a progressively more refined picture of the state of assets and to inform decisions on funding levels. So the recommendations coming out of the Asset Management Plan are grouped according, first by funding. So the recommendation there is to maintain and implement up-to-date master plans. You know, there are significant investments that are made in those studies, but they're really important. They provide great information for the district to guide near-term funding and capital planning decisions. And then what we recommend here is to work towards at least the ALKI scenario three funding levels for the general fund. This again assumes that assets will last 50% longer than industry standard, and that's ultimately up to the district to make that decision on whether that it's comfortable with that level of risk. But that would be our recommendation at a minimum. And then work towards the ALKI scenario two levels for water and wastewater, or at least maintain funding levels for water where they currently are. Again, that gap has been narrowing over time. There's still some work to do there, but it's not as problematic as the general fund. And then maintain current funding levels for solid waste. We're seeing general alignment there. And so if you really were to prioritize investments in certain funds over others, that would, we would see that one being the lowest priority of them. And then these processes here are really great for uncovering opportunities to improve asset data and data management practices and tools that are used. So recommendations regarding data include updating the installation dates of road assets in GIS to reflect replacement and repaving done on those assets, integrate existing condition data into GIS. The district has been making, you know, pretty significant investments in gathering condition data on pipes and on pavement quality. And so integrating that into the GIS will enable, you know, the next time this plan is updated for it to be that much more refined. And then move towards a single source of truth in terms of data for all of the assets. There is quite a bit of work that was involved in consolidating the data from different sources. Again, that's really common, but it's something to make progress on over time. And then focus condition inspections on assets identified as theoretically high risk. So again, it's based on asset age and, you know, industry standard values. But the value of identifying risks associated with asset age or condition is that it can tell you where to shine the light in terms of gathering more condition data and making those investments really strategic. So we include some recommendations there. And then progressively, as you start to incorporate performance data into GIS, for example, break history, again, that can provide really valuable information on when assets might actually need to be replaced. And then we recommend moving forward that this update was done on a 10-year cycle. We recommend to shorten that to a five-year cycle, just recognizing the growth that has been happening in Squamish and the assets that are being taken on. This will give the district more information sooner to support funding decisions. So that's it for the Asset Management Plan. I'm going to turn it over to Jody here for the Natural Asset Management Strategy.
Thank you, Brittany, and good morning, Council. It's a real treat to be here in person with you today. Thanks for having us. So I'm going to talk about the Natural Asset Management Strategy. And before we get into the meat of the strategy, I want to start by talking about language, because the language we use here is really important. It's not just technical jargon meant to make people feel like they're in the know or not. There's some real meaning behind the use of the term "natural asset" versus the umbrella term of "green infrastructure." So just to break this down a little bit, when we're talking about natural assets, what we're talking about are naturally occurring assets or ecosystems that are providing services. So this includes municipal services. It's not limited to municipal services. You know, obviously, these ecosystems, they provide extensive services to all of life really in our communities. And so this includes wetlands, forests, lakes, creeks, rivers, the foreshore. And so this is what we're talking about when we're talking about natural assets. Sometimes you'll hear a little bit of conflation with enhanced assets, so things like rain gardens or stormwater ponds. So these are a little bit different. These are systems that we engineer and build to mimic nature. So they have a lot of similar properties to natural assets, but they're not naturally occurring. And then the third category would be engineered assets that are green infrastructure. So this is, these are built solely for the purpose of providing municipal services, like permeable pavement or rain barrels, green roofs. And they do provide some of the co-benefits that natural assets provide, but their primary function is to provide the municipal services. So the reason that this distinction is important is because when we think about how we manage our assets, we are typically already including things like our engineered assets in our capital programming and our maintenance, in our asset management programs. So we're already accounting for those. And those are built to provide those municipal services. So the co-benefits are not as great. When it comes to natural assets, as an industry, we just don't have the same kind of history of understanding and appreciating and maintaining and enhancing these assets. So by focusing on these naturally occurring assets, this changes the lens that we bring into our asset management programs. So what is natural asset management? So this shows the same process from the Asset Management for Sustainable Service Delivery framework that the district is applying. And you see right at the middle, there's a term "sustainable service delivery." And that's because the whole purpose of asset management is sustainable service delivery. And so natural asset management really recognizes that our gray infrastructure or engineered assets, they interact with natural assets. And if we didn't have natural assets, we couldn't deliver the same kinds of services. Our gray infrastructure exists in systems with natural assets. And what's more, the natural assets deliver municipal services that if we didn't have them, it would require local governments to build and construct and maintain infrastructure to provide those services. So this is something that we haven't paid a lot of attention to in the past. And so natural asset management is really an emerging practice to bring in natural assets into our asset management processes, acknowledge the services that they provide, and then identify opportunities to protect, maintain, and enhance these natural assets for sustainable service delivery. So again, all to that purpose of sustainable service delivery. So this is, it's an emerging practice, but it's quickly become considered a best practice. And so even recently, the engineers and geoscientists of BC released a professional practice guideline that applies to all professional engineers on asset management, but natural assets were integrated throughout. So this is, you know, now becoming the standard that is to be applied in asset management. So why consider natural assets in service delivery? Well, we know a lot about the benefits that natural assets provide our communities. And when these assets are effectively monitored, maintained, and rehabilitated, you know, they can provide extensive co-benefits like habitat, food, climate regulation, on and on. They can help service providers such as local governments contain that infrastructure deficit or funding gap. So that's what Brittany was referencing in her presentation. So we don't want to presuppose that we could replace our gray infrastructure with natural assets. That's not realistic, and that's not what we're talking about. But we do know that if we don't appropriately care for our natural assets or if we make decisions even intentionally to modify or change our natural assets, then that can require infrastructure, built infrastructure replacements to provide those services. And when we do that, then we are also signing ourselves up to operate and maintain and replace these gray infrastructure systems throughout their lifespan. So there are real trade-offs here that impact the cost of delivering services. We also know that natural assets can improve servants' resiliency, especially with a climate change lens. Typically, natural assets are more resilient to the demands of changing climate and climate events. And really, natural assets provide so many more benefits in ways that engineered assets just can't. So lots of benefits. We, so we know about all of these benefits, but as I said, this is an emerging practice. So we, the industry has made a lot of progress in figuring out steps of what it looks like in detail to implement natural assets into the asset management process. And there are some areas where we're still learning together, because quite frankly, ecosystems are complex. And so asset management for gray infrastructure has a lot of nuance and trade-offs to consider. When we introduce natural assets into that, it just becomes even more nuanced. So there's a lot to consider, but it's a really exciting time, and it's a great time for leadership, which, you know, the district is demonstrating significant leadership in this industry, even just by developing this kind of a strategy. So here are some of the examples of the nuances that I was mentioning. And these are nuances just in comparing asset management processes for built assets versus natural assets. So a great example is asset So a, a great example is asset ownership and responsibilities. So when it comes to gray assets, it's pretty clear who owns what and who, who is responsible for what, generally speaking. And there are a few gray areas, but that's not, you know, it's not the majority of assets. But when it comes to natural assets, you've got natural assets occurring on public property or you've got, or sorry, public, private, all kinds of different ownership and governance considerations. There are natural assets outside of a jurisdiction that will impact the services delivery, delivered within a jurisdiction. So, so just that concept of who owns what, who's responsible for what, who benefits from what, who's making decisions, you know, that is a, it's a big area that needs to be considered when we move into natural asset management. So there are a number of other nuances here, but the, the strategy starts to help the district advance these practices in the face of these kinds of nuances. So the district's natural asset management strategy, as was mentioned by David in the introduction, it starts to help understand the scope of natural assets within the district's jurisdiction. We also start to look at the municipal services these provide. So we recognize that these natural assets provide significant services that are not just for municipal services. The, the strategy acknowledges those, but it doesn't get into depth about those in the same way. And we start to look at the value of those services. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. And the purpose of that is, that helps provide the context and a little bit of the so what for the decision-making. So then the district is well-equipped to make decisions about how to embed natural asset management into planning and decision-making in general. So it is in your, in your asset management planning and processes. But natural asset management is also something that the district is, is doing in many respects through many different policies, programs, bylaws. Maybe it's not called asset, natural asset management, but it certainly is present. So it might be under the guise of environmental protection or, or other environmental programming. And so the natural asset strat, natural asset management strategy wants to recognize all of those existing practices and build on them. So the key questions that the natural asset management strategy answers, and some of them are, are kind of in parallel to the questions that your asset management plan answers. So first is just what are the natural assets? So what, what assets are within district boundaries? Notice a difference in language there from the asset management plan. Whereas the asset management plan, it was what assets do we own? This is what assets are within the district's boundaries that provide municipal services. And then what is the value of the services? That's a really key distinction. We're not trying to say the value of the natural assets. We're not saying the value of a creek is X. We're saying the value of the municipal service, so the drainage service of a creek is X. So that's a really important distinction. We look at the risks to those services because ultimately the value and understanding what the natural services, natural asset services are being provided, that's so that we can include that in our decision-making. So that requires understanding the risks. And then what are the priorities for improving practices and integrating natural assets into planning and decision-making throughout the district? So the municipal services that we looked at, drainage services, that's a very significant one when it comes to natural assets. And that includes erosion control, treatment, retention, detention, conveyance. There's a lot there. Drinking water services, that is water supply, water treatment, water storage to an extent. Wastewater services, receiving body for effluent from your wastewater treatment plant. Flood management and climate mitigation and recreation services. So these are all important municipal services that are provided by your natural assets that we considered, but the, the level of service is complex and kind of beyond the scope of what we could do in this strategy. So for those last three, they're acknowledged, but they haven't been evaluated. Those services haven't been evaluated. So this breaks it down a little bit further to show you which types of natural assets are providing each of these services. So for example, when we talked about the drainage services of erosion control, retention, detention, treatment and carbon sequestration and storage, that's provided by all kinds of natural assets, your forests, grasslands, shrublands, riparian areas, wetlands. You know, so it's, it, it becomes complex in all of these natural assets, providing the service and interacting together. We see creeks providing rainwater conveyance. The Squamish River is the receiving body for wastewater effluent, which is significant. Otherwise, you would need to build additional infrastructure to dispose of that effluent elsewhere. Lakes and ponds providing rainwater retention and detention. The Ring Creek aquifer as your supply and water treatment source. The estuary providing significant carbon sequestration and the foreshore providing storm surge and wave dissipation. So when it comes to valuing the services, as mentioned, we are not valuing the natural assets themselves. We are valuing the municipal services that are being provided. So we're not even valuing the full suite of services that are being provided. There are a few different widely accepted valuation methods. So the first is replacement cost, which is, you know, if we lost this asset today and we had to build some infrastructure to replace that service, how much would it cost us to build that infrastructure? Value transfer looks at other economic analysis studies done in other places where that there are some comparable conditions that have come up with a value that could be used in, in other studies. And damage cost avoided is what, what is the cost of damages being avoided because of the service the natural asset provides? So an example of where we would use that is in flood protection. So if there is some, if there's some flood protection or if there's some storm surge dissipation being provided by the, the foreshore area, if that wasn't there, if that wasn't providing it, what would we estimate the damages to be from storm surges? So in the natural asset management strategy and in a lot of municipal natural asset management, the preferred, the preferred method is often the replacement cost method. And, and that's because it seems that local governments have a, have an easier time kind of accepting that as a, a representation of the risk. You know, it feels very tangible. If we lost this natural asset, we would have to build infrastructure to provide the service and this would cost us this much money. So that is a very real and tangible value that can be used in, in planning. So the other two methods are also used when replacement cost method is not, not, we're not able to use that for various reasons. But in this strategy, then the, the majority of the values were developed with replacement cost method. So this just gives you a little bit more breakdown about what that looks like with the example of drainage services in the rainwater conveyance subservice. And so first we start by quantifying the natural asset providing the service. So in this case, it was about 169 kilometers of rivers or creeks. And then if, if all of those, you know, if you're looking to reclaim land and cover those, you'd need to put it in, in a pipe essentially. And the cost for that pipe is about $2,000 a meter. And that's how we get to the $355 million for the total replacement cost of that service. So the same methodology was applied for all of the natural assets and the municipal services provided by those natural assets. So we see the bulk of the value of services represented in the forests, including riparian areas, followed by creeks and rivers and wetlands. So some pretty substantial values here of the, a total of 1.6 billion. So this is about, no, just to put it in context about double what the asset management plan identified as the replacement value of built infrastructure. So you've got all of these numbers. It's worth a lot. So what, how does this change the district's decision-making? How do you, what do you do with this information? So the next step is to look at the risks to these natural assets. And what is the likelihood of experiencing these risks? And how do you manage these risks? So the types of categories of risks to natural assets in the district include land development, recreational activities, climate change, forest fires, pests, the asset age and condition. So this could be of our gray infrastructure and recognizing that our gray infrastructure interacts as a system with our natural environment. And then lack of information and awareness. So if, if people are engaging with natural assets in ways that degrade them, then that represents a risk. So we can manage these different risks and that, and, and make decisions about how risks will be managed. There is, there are a lot of trade offs present in making decisions about the management of risks. So that's where it does get nuanced and we need to get into some more specifics about how that will be done. So in identifying some priorities for the district and moving forward, we assessed existing practices, you know, looking at what are all the things the district's already doing that are, are essentially natural asset management, but just not being called that? And what are other practices and processes that are in place that set you up well to move forward with us, natural asset management? We use the FCM Asset Management Readiness Scale as a, a way to assess the competencies and identified a set of priorities. So these are all detailed further in the natural asset management strategy. The first one is to enhance communication and capacity building. So there is some effort required to make sure that everybody is using the same language, understanding why, you know, what is the district's role or ability to manage natural assets? Why might the district do that? What are the opportunities for that? Because it really becomes a lens for all decision-making throughout the district. And so that requires, you have some communication and capacity building, both internally and in, in some ways with the public as well. The second priority area is to consider natural assets when updating bylaws and use bylaws as a tool for natural asset management. So there's already, there are some elements of the bylaws that include environmental protections. So that'd be an example of things that could be expanded on, going from a, a protection lens to more of an active stewardship role. So you might want to look at this in updating like the subdivision development servicing bylaw or the zoning bylaw, these two examples, also in updates to like the OCP and other policies. Data and information. So using master planning processes. So Brittany talked about the importance of updating and maintaining a strong set of master plans. And these are a great opportunity to collect further detailed information on natural assets. Not just for the sake of it, you can prioritize where you go deeper with detail to make sure that it's linked to decisions that you want to inform. And then planning and decision-making. So this is about bringing a natural asset lens to all kinds of decision-making throughout the district. So land use planning, master planning, financial planning and maintenance planning. So this, you know, all of these priorities are linked. They'll all support each other. So just want to end with a couple of key messages. So the first is that Squamish is endowed with a wealth of natural assets, which I'm sure you're all well aware of. And these natural assets provide very valuable services. And if you were to, if you were to provide these services through built assets, it'd be costly to the tune of about a $1.6 billion. There is more to be learned about the details of the condition of these assets and the services they provide and the risks to those services, because that's kind of more on a site-by-site level. And you can do that, there's opportunity to do that in your master planning processes. Managing your natural assets presents a significant opportunity to contain that infrastructure deficit or funding gap that Brittany talked about. And you can do that by implementing the recommendations from the strategy. And then finally, just a reminder that this is an emerging and evolving area of practice, but just want to celebrate the work that the district is doing here because it really is leading in the industry. And we're not aware of actually any other communities in BC who are, who have done a natural asset management strategy like this and really linked it to existing processes. So, so that's really fantastic and something that I encourage you to all speak about and share with other colleagues and peers with other local governments. Because, because this is an emerging area of practice, it's all really helpful for us to learn from each other and see through example what others are able to do. So that's all from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, especially for those final comments. Council questions. I have councillor French, councillor Stoner, councillor.
And just going to try to keep in top of the councillor race joining us from afar, if I can keep my vision and focus here. And so Peddingle and councillor Race.
Thanks, Chair. My, my first question was answered there right at the end, but I, I'll maybe dig into it a little further. This, this notion of the district of Squamish being a leader on this front. Are there any other communities that are maybe a little behind us? Also very conscious of this and doing some work that we could take a look at what they're up to?
Yeah, through the chair, thanks very much. That's a great question. So there are several communities where this is on the radar and, and they've been working to make progress in, you know, different stages of that asset management wheel or, or process diagram. The Municipal Natural Assets Initiative is a nonprofit that, I, I think they end up connecting with a lot of those municipalities. So I think that's a, probably a great place to go to find out who else would be best to, best to talk to there and who's making progress, both in BC and Canada-wide.
Okay. And my second and final question is about the Stewamas Water Intake and the Masheter Water Intake. In all of the information and data about our assets, those two are not specifically mentioned. So just wanted to understand what's behind that and make sure that they're, they weren't forgotten, which I highly doubt they would have been. But what's with them just not being mentioned anywhere?
Through the chair, it's a really good point. Those are natural assets that do provide services. They're currently backup water supplies that aren't utilized. They haven't been utilized for, for many years, but you're correct that they are there and they are providing a backup service. So they probably should be considered. And to be frank, it actually was an oversight.
Just one final thought I wanted to acknowledge that I, I think that some really great work has been done here and happy to hear that the district of Squamish is a leader on the natural assets. Bye. Thanks.
Councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair. Don't want to take the wind out of our sails entirely. I think we are leading, but Gibson's did start this work back in 2015 to give them some credit. I know West Van has made some significant progress as well. So happy to be learning from them and, and starting to fill those shoes and, and bring some other folks along in the natural asset space. A few questions on the asset management plan. I was kind of surprised for the remaining life estimates for the landfill in particular. It seemed really high, given that we're having discussions about soon needing to expand. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak about where we're at with that and, and where it sits in the asset management plan?
Through the chair. So when we're looking at the, the landfill, that's actually looking at the infrastructure and, you know, some of the big infrastructure that we have at the landfill is, is the vertical wall. And so looking at that specifically, that will last for, I can't recall the exact number, but it's 50 years or something like that. The reason that we have to expand is because of growth, not because an existing asset is, is nearing failure. So that's kind of the distinction there is that we're looking at like-for-like replacement of existing assets.
Thank you for that clarification. And then also just touching on the component around kind of integrating the data that we have into our GIS inventory. I'm just curious if you can speak to, the report says that we have kind of pavement data and some level of other quality of asset data. But like, how far are we from really understanding the extents, the extent of the quality of all of our assets?
Through the chair. We do have extensive condition data on a number of our assets. So our, our sewer system, our stormwater system, where we've been completing CCTV inspections and completing repairs. So we have excellent information. It hasn't been integrated into our GIS. That's one of the recommendations of this plan. That's one of the recommendations of this plan. And so kind of taking it, so the future condition inspection work that we do, that we get that data back in a format that we can integrate it with our GIS system. In addition to that, we've also done condition inspections on things like our wastewater treatment plant and other assets. But again, it just hasn't been made in a format, a data format that's readily integrated into this kind of large scale data analysis. And so that's kind of the next step is that making sure that when we're doing these programs in the future, that we're requesting that consultants provide the data back to us in a way that we can consider it for these asset management plans.
Okay, it's helpful to understand where that challenge has been to date. And then on the funding gap for the general fund, kind of the drivers under the general fund are transportation, which is largely pavement. And we have a master plan for paving drainage and flood protection, which we also have a master plan for in our facilities, which we have the real estate facilities master plan for. So I appreciate that there is seen to be a bit of a gap, but we also have plans for all those. So I'm curious how that fits into our overall financial planning when we have more detailed master plans for those key drivers under the general fund.
Let's start off, hand it over. So the asset management plan, one of the key distinctions of this compared with master plans is that this is just looking at existing assets, replacing like for like. Whereas the master plans go into things like growth and do we need to expand our capacity? So for instance, for our, our water system, do we need to make the pipes larger in order to accommodate growth? So that's one area where master plans consider a kind of a wider lens of things. Or our flood management plan, for instance, that looks at, we need to actually raise our dikes. We need to increase our level of service. Same with our real estate facilities master plan, where it's, it's not just replacing, say, the portables at the public works facility. It's actually enhancing the service because we have a growing community. We have higher building code standards, all these sorts of things. So that's one of the key differences. And so one of the, the next steps that we need to do is to actually look, integrate the asset management plan costs with our level of service and our growth costs. And that's what's going to be done with our finance department over the course of the next year to develop that long term financial planning that considers all of these costs, asset management, level of service, growth, all of that.
Fantastic. Happy to hear that those are the next steps. One last question, if I may, Chair, just on the forest component and the natural assets. I'm curious if that includes urban trees and green space or if that was really just kind of like larger tracts of forest per se.
Yeah, so through the chair. So we, we focused on the larger tracts of forest, just going back to that definition of natural assets being the naturally occurring. So the services provided by your urban canopy, those would be in addition to what is captured in the natural asset management strategy.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. Think this is great. And just want to start with a couple of questions around developing my expectations. And my point of reference for some of this is being on a condo board and having a reserve fund study. And there, if I recall, we looked out 30 years. And, you know, we'd look at our assets, we'd do estimates on when they'd need replacement or, or major work. We'd made sure that, you know, we'd use this to set our, our, our stratifies. And, and assuming that the reserves would pay for everything. And so do we have enough by certain dates? We would make some assumptions based on inflation and interest, because longer term, we, we'd invest some of that money. And so we weren't dealing with grants or growth or those sorts of things. But a lot of what you talked about. And so I'm just trying to understand. It sounds like when we get to the long term financial planning and some of the master plans, we pull in a lot of this. But do we have all of those elements or are there pieces we're missing? And from the report, it looks like we only plan to look at 10 years as opposed to 30 years. I'm just wondering if you can speak to the sort of thing I was referring to. Is that where we get to eventually? And, and that's the goal or just wonder if you, yeah, help me out there. Thanks.
Through the chair. So you're correct. The, the long term financial plan, the intent is that we, we start with a 10 year outlook and maybe I'll provide the floor to Heather as well or Ms. Boxer to see if she has anything in addition, in addition to add to this. But we're continually determining new projects through master planning processes. And so that long term financial plan is always going to be evolving. And it becomes very difficult to look out beyond 10 years. I think we start to lose accuracy. But as it's certainly a starting point. And I think that there is an intent to actually begin to look further than, than 10 years in the future. Not sure if you have anything for that.
Thank you. And then the next question is just trying to understand the granularity for the natural asset management, which is fantastic that we're doing that. But is this, should I expect that in a couple of years, we'll be able to look at a specific lot up for development and put a value on the services of that lot? Or does this have to be at a neighborhood scale or sub area scale? Or what sort of scale is this useful for?
It's, it's highly scalable. So it really depends on the, you know, I think you back up to the decision you're trying to inform. So even if it's at a lot level, you can still use similar methodology to understand, okay, well, what, what natural assets do we have on that lot? What services are they providing? And when you're at that kind of lot level, you can get into a lot more detail with understanding what the services are that are being provided. You know, because the, for example, the, the stormwater retention services of a forest with a slope like this are going to be different than a slope like this. So at a lot level, you can look at that. And if you have a really big, high impact decision, you might choose to do some additional modeling to understand that, that level of service quite well. But it's, it's a bit of a trade off in investing in the modeling and the kind of analysis that's needed to inform that decision. So the methodology is highly scalable. It just comes back to what kind of decision are you trying to inform? And is it worth investing in that kind of detailed analysis to inform that decision? Or are you happy with keeping things higher level and making assumptions?
Okay, thank you. And then there was, you know, in some of the recommendations, some that we look for, I guess it was a 50% longer lifespan with the anticipation that that's going to require more maintenance and so on. And I'm just wondering, when we start to model that out, do we? I wasn't clear if, if we're able yet or will be to put a price on that additional maintenance as well as, you know, savings to the landfill and savings to environment, because you're not needing a bunch of new stuff. Like we're sort of, I guess, conserving in what we build. So is there a point which some of that information goes into our models?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Through the chair. It's, it's a great question. I think there is some more. And Jody, if you want to add anything here too. I think there is some more work to be done there in terms of understanding what incremental additional maintenance does in terms of extending service life for certain assets anyway. And so I think that is an area of exploration for the district is what would be that incremental increase. I think generally something that we see across communities is that they'll take on more assets without increasing their operating budget in a commensurate way. And so that would be something that we would recommend at a minimum. I think it's typically around at least 1% or so of the, of the capital cost. And so we would recommend that at least. But I think it, it, we would hope to see that if you were to work towards just that 50% service life assumption, that you might also increase funding for operating expenses for inspection, proactive maintenance and that sort of thing. We, we do know that that's an area of, it's a challenge for the district like it is for a lot of other communities.
And maybe just something to add briefly. There's also a lot of relevance to climate resilience too, when we look at maintenance of our assets. Because often we talk about climate resilience in our assets in terms of upgrading the capacity, you know, building bigger, building more robust assets. But we can think about maintenance practices with our assets as almost an insurance policy. So it maintains a better baseline level of service from our assets, which improves the resilience if there is a climate event that occurs. So there's, there's multiple benefits.
Councillor Race.
Thank you. So this is quite interesting. And it got me thinking, when you look at the difference between scenario one, two and three and, and the decisions that might be required when you're trying to manage these assets, about the amount of risk that you're prepared to assume to extend the life of them. And I think back to discussions we had in council a few years ago, when we were talking about a debris flow barrier and the different frequencies of events. And it might be something that has real, often an event happens, but the consequences are relatively low versus the other end of the spectrum, where it doesn't happen very often. But when it does, there's widespread loss of life. And so it's completely intolerable. So you end up somewhere back in the middle. And I'm wondering with, with that, if there's any science around assessing the risk or the consequences of the risk or the consequences of an event. And even, you know, not being an engineer, but I think of, you know, if you have two different size of water pipes and one of them is a big one and it supplies the whole community, one of them is a relatively small one and it just deals with my block. The risk of the big one failing where the whole community is wiped out or is without water is intolerable. But my block, you know, they can fix it in a day or two and maybe it's not such a big deal. So is there any way that, is there any kind of science around that? And I can assume that would be different for different types of assets, of course.
Through the chair, it's an excellent question. So we didn't have time today to include discussion, but we actually did complete a risk assessment for our linear assets as part of this asset management plan. And that looked at the probability of failure as well as the consequence of failure for our linear pipe systems. And so, and through the, that we, we assigned a rating to each linear asset. So, you know, ranging from, it's a scored system between one and 25. And so there's low risk and high risk assets. And one of the recommendations is that we enhance our condition inspection on the high risk assets. And also this is something that's being considered in our sewer water and integrated stormwater management plans. When we're doing these types of analysis, that we're recommending these high risk assets be replaced. So for instance, in our water master plan, we, we've completed a risk assessment. Where we have high risk assets, those are the prioritized to be replaced first. So there definitely is science to it and it has been included as part of this asset management plan. We just didn't have much time to, to discuss it in detail today.
Thanks, Chair. I'm good.
Very good. Councillor Hurford.
Thank you. I had some questions around the, the maintenance cost, but I think that area has been, been explored. So I'm, I'm curious, the natural asset piece, I was really excited to see and also to start wrapping my head around the implications of it. And a lot of the natural assets are located on private lands or, or in parks. Like the lakes, for instance, I think are exclusively located in parks inside of our boundary. So I'm curious around, when I look at the edge of our, of our boundary, it's changed over the years, usually to catch things like infrastructure or some taxation purpose and so on. So, so the lines are there and our jurisdiction kind of ends there. But there's some services being provided directly adjacent to. And the catchmentary, the watersheds of our backup water supply, use that as, as an example. So is this the kind of thing that has result, has this work resulted in, in changes of, of boundary, sort of looking to acquire greater control over these natural assets that are closely adjacent to municipalities?
Through the chair. Thank you. That's a, it's a great question. I, I don't know the, the short version. I know it has, it has resulted in strategic land acquisition within boundaries. So like the local government would specifically acquire land, fee simple land to be able to protect and maintain natural asset services. There are other examples, like in the, in the Catskills near New York, where there's, there's some, that's actually a really interesting case study around partnerships with private entities and private landholders and, and the public government where an elaborate system of incentives and others were used to try and implement natural asset management, essentially to protect the watershed in an area where they didn't have direct governance. So I don't know of specific boundary extensions, but there have been some creative governance solutions and partnerships and incentive programs that have been used. I think it's still an evolving area.
I, I just wanted to add to that. The district actually does have, for instance, a watershed protection area for the Ring Creek Aquifer, which is our primary water source. So that extends outside of our boundary, but we still have a mechanism with the province to actually protect that watershed area. So there are various tools like that that we can use.
Thank you. And then some of these pieces, like the riparian areas are generally have some order of protection, whether that's enough or not is, is perhaps something for further discussion too. But they have some and other, and other pieces of this don't have any at all. So I was curious about sort of that next piece where like, yeah, most of our lakes are associated with the provincial park. That's probably okay level of asset, natural asset maintenance there. The riparian areas do have some protection around them. But these other pieces, was there a ranking as far as sort of additional, additional actions separate from a specific application, from a, from a landowner or whoever? Was there anything that sort of bubbled to the surface there? For you, I didn't see anything highlighted, but that next piece that this area needs some, some more, some more control?
Through the chair, I, I'm actually going to answer that question based on my reflections working on the integrated stormwater management plan. And when I look ahead at the phase three ISMP there, I think there is some more opportunity for protection of natural assets when viewed through the lens of the municipal services that they provide. I think that's just a big takeaway here from this whole process is that the district is already managing natural assets. It's already protecting and enhancing them to a certain degree, just not calling it that and doing it through different mechanisms. And so I do think that there is some opportunity to better understand the condition of riparian areas. I, I do think that was a bit of a gap to an extent in the phase two ISMP. And that's where I think those master planning processes are such a great opportunity or a tool for better understanding the condition of natural assets and the level of service and therefore the value of the service that they provide. I think we took a step towards advancing that integration piece through the phase two ISMP. And then there is an opportunity to take it further in the phase three ISMP. So I think that, that to me is a big one, is just better understanding the condition of them and the services that they provide, especially the riparian area. I think in general, the setbacks and that sort of thing that the district currently has are fairly standard. You know, reflect the trade offs with development footprint and, and that sort of thing. So it's more about what's happening in the corridor versus extending it. So I do think that is a big opportunity overall. And then again, viewing the, the retention services that are provided, again, through that natural asset lens and the modeling that's conducted through the ISMP. I think that's the net, next really big step, an opportunity for the district. Does that answer your question, councillor?
Yeah, it, it does, I think. The, the, yeah, I've been thinking about this and with our built assets, we have some legal status for it. So we'll have a right of way for a pipe coming through. But in this natural asset space, I'm trying to sort of explore what that could, or what that does mean currently, what it could mean going forward. And then I guess back to the, the built assets. In some of these pieces, there are funding opportunities as far as grant, granting and, and so on. And we did discuss the extending the, the service life through potentially maintenance and figuring out what that balance is. But that gap, you know, I think in some cases it may be appropriate to have a, a funding gap because there could be another order of government come in with, with some funds for that. And how is that contemplated in this, in this work? Or, or am I missing, or am I off base?
Through the chair. So that hasn't been contemplated through the asset management plan itself. It would be contemplated through the development of the long term financial plan, where you're layering on these like for like replacement costs, assuming, you know, whatever service life you get out of them. That will be a decision that is made through that process. And then layering on all of the other projects from the master plans, capital plan, that sort of thing, DCCs, and then looking at different funding sources, including grants, including debt financing. All of that comes together in the long term financial plan.
Muriel, did you have questions at this time?
Thank you for this work. I have a question about our data collection now, given that we've spent millions of dollars on upgrading our technology. So this was about two years worth of work to pull this asset management plan together. So as because we're growing, as we're adding. Assets, are we now? Putting those in some sort of system that we understand what they are, their anticipated life cycle, their risk, as you said, Mr. Ralston. So that we're collecting it as we go now versus having to do a really big exercise five years from now to figure out what's been added.
Through the chair. Yes. So all of our new assets, we do go through annual reporting where we're reporting on all our tangible capital assets. All of our linear assets go into our GIS and that includes all the relevant information that we need for asset management purposes. So size, material installation year, all that sort of thing. Something that was alluded to in the presentation is that for our nonlinear assets, so facilities, point to infrastructure. That's going into different systems, a variety of different systems. And so that's where we we are kind of challenged to kind of consolidate all of this. But having said that, as part of the technology transformation project, it is proposed to include an asset management system. This is scheduled within the next couple of years, I understand. And we're seeking that as part of that, that we would be able to consolidate the inventory that we've that we've prepared as part of this project. As well as any new assets that have been added in the intervening years. But this really gives us a good head start because we we put a lot of work into consolidating the assets. That we'd be able to bring that into the asset management software system that we implement in a couple of years time. And then that really becomes our single source of truth that we can use for future asset management planning exercises.
So my follow up to that, now that we have the natural asset management strategy in place is, is there a way to capture the things we're trying to protect? So I think about Loggers East and some of the. The riparian areas that we're protecting, there's retention ponds that are going to get built. And and we've also seen over time how people encroach into areas and suddenly their fences, you know, a little bit further into the forest. And so I think I'm building on Councilor Herford's point about. How do we actually capture those things in our systems for the long term? So that councils, many years down the line, know that. That this council made a specific decision to specifically protect that forest for its services that it's providing. And and can we imagine an asset management system that that captures that for posterity, not just our our built infrastructure?
Through the chair, I think that if there there's conscious decisions being made with respect to preserving or protecting a a natural asset or an area with natural assets. There are various legal mechanisms that we can use, things like right of ways or covenants to make sure that we're not impacting or losing those in the future. So that that would be my recommendation is to make sure that we're formalizing those types of decisions with legal legal mechanisms. To make sure that they're not forgotten about and then impacted at some future date.
I guess my my further comment to that is that I imagine the day where there's a bit of a balance sheet between what we're protecting in terms of natural assets and what our our gray assets are. And so is there a way financially to continue to capture the value of things we've specifically created to avoid? How do we do that calculus so we can show our public that we made a decision to protect this forest, this pond, this wetland? It avoided this kind of work. And so I feel like that's the transparency we eventually need to get to. So you can have a conversation with the community around, no, that was a conscious decision. And if we hadn't made that decision, here's what that would cost us over the life cycle to to replace that asset. So I, you know, I don't, I totally understand why we would put covenants on and protect it that way. But there's a reporting piece here and a communications piece around natural assets that if that if our citizens don't get it, then. Maybe we're missing sort of a a really good tool in our tool belt. So it's just something for consideration as as we put in our asset management system and and figure out what our long term financial plan looks like. My other question around asset management is, we talk a lot about, one of the aspects is figuring out what the level of services that you want to provide with the asset. But are there best practices around community engagement? So often this is an exercise that's done within these four walls. But but there's real tax implications based on the level of service we we choose. So is there best practice out there about how to talk to your community about, you know, engaging them in the decision around level of service?
So there are, there are established practices. I think to call them best practices might be a stretch because I think it is an area in industry where we are learning a lot too and continue to learn. It's it it's complex. The trade offs are are substantial and it can take quite a bit for the public to be able to grapple with that. I'd say that what we have learned is that a mix of engagement styles is necessary. And providing people with opportunities to inform willingness to pay conversations through things like a focus group. In addition to a public survey or other, you know. Intercept surveys or those kinds of things. So opportunities where people can grapple with the decisions. And and there's a dialogue, a conversation. And so there are a couple of examples where we're we're doing some work like with NIMO right now on willingness to pay and levels of service specifically for roads and asphalt. And and getting public input on that. So the focus groups have been quite effective in creating that. The opportunity for dialogue around the nuance there, but you can't reach everybody with a focus group, obviously. So a mix.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions on the natural asset plan. In the introduction overview, it says the district's at the forefront. And it's laying the foundation for broader and a more refined study over time. And so can you just create a picture of what a broader, more refined study looks like over time?
Through the chair. I'm interested if Jody has a different perspective on this, but I would say that I think it's. It looks like the implementation of the recommendations, actually. So for example, gathering more refined, more granular information through the master planning processes. Again, I think that phase three ISMP will be a great opportunity to develop it through the lens of natural asset management. It was there before, but to to really have that be at the forefront would be different. So I think it it goes to, you know, using that as an opportunity to get more information on what assets are in the study area. For example, for a forest, how old is the forest? What's the quality of the tree canopy like? What's the underlying soil, that interplay between the two, especially for drainage services? These are like highly, highly complex systems by which the services are being provided. And so really broad, like high level assumptions had to be made through this natural asset asset management strategy process. And get more refined through modeling and that sort of thing through the through the master plans. So I think that's what that looks like because it really depends on the asset now and the services. And like Jody had indicated before, the different decisions that are being made in that process and and why you would. Conduct a more refined or more detailed study. With an ISMP, it's to make decisions about the kind of infrastructure that you'll use, natural asset based or built. To provide drainage services and and what the trade off is there with with development over time. And increases in level of service that might be warranted to adapt to climate change and that sort of thing. So when I think about those types of decisions, I think of master plan as being the tool to conduct that more refined study.
And one area that wasn't included here, but I was really curious about is pollinators. And whether those are. One of the services that we should actually value because there's areas in which we do our own maintenance and, you know, where we cut our fields to, you know. Maybe we leave a buffer that can be planted with pollinator, you know, I just wondered if that was considered.
Through the chair. Great question. So we we identified it as a service, but we didn't categorize it as a municipal service. But it sounds like there may be, if it is a service that the district is currently providing in some respect, that there may be room to categorize that as municipal service. I think it would need some consideration like based on how the district currently makes decisions about providing that as a service. So we encountered the same thing with with carbon sequestration. Where traditionally that hasn't been a core municipal service, but it is now an area where increasingly local governments are spending money, making real investments. To sequester, sequester or store carbon or reduce carbon emissions. So so that's why it was flagged as a municipal service. So I think you could make the same argument it sounds like for pollinators.
Yeah, maybe from a, we have an agri foods study and a part of our economic development and without them, we don't have that. So it's just an interesting and also a short term, potentially easier one to to make progress on. But thank you. This is a really interesting read. Appreciate it.
Very good. I have two questions of my own. First of all, for Mr. Rolston. One of the, there's been an emphasis on master planning and master plans that we undertake in the future and how we may do them differently, if you like. One that we may soon have underway is a Parks and Recreation Master Plan Version Three. And I understand at this time that there's some scoping work done that may come back to council so we can deliberate to how to set that underway, if you like. Mr. Rolston, how white should or will the the reports that we have before us today be taken into account? By planning and engineering staff in looking at how to undertake a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
Through the chair. So I'm not specifically involved in that project, but I think the 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 step is to ensure that staff who are doing master planning processes. Are aware of the natural asset management strategy and understand how it interacts with the the master plan that they're completing. And to make sure that it's considered in the developments of that master plan. So just to understand if there's any issues or opportunities that may be available through the master planning process to incorporate. Protection, preservation or enhancement of natural assets through the the master planning process. So it kind of goes back to one of the the first recommendation is capacity building and training, ensuring that staff are aware of the natural asset management strategy. And know how to consider that when they're doing their their master planning or bylaw updates or policy updates.
Thank you.
Sir, Brittany has one other thing to add.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to add to that. I think there this is a an evolving space as well, just what the the integration of not just natural asset management. But asset management best practices look like in master planning processes. I think it could be as simple to as just understanding what the the current replacement cost is of those assets. And then taking that into account when making decisions about new assets that are added. A very, you know, common narrative that we hear across communities is that new assets are taken on without the understanding of what it costs to replace, maintain. You know, rehabilitate those existing assets. So I think it is actually really simple steps like that. They're just not always taken. And so something that communities are starting to move towards is they're sometimes called integrated master plans where they really do integrate that existing asset piece or asset management. Along with level of service upgrades, growth, et cetera.
Thank you. My second question concerns the natural asset inventory. And I'll note that but next to forest and next to estuary, we have the comment further study required. Counselor Stoner has asked already about our definition of forest for the purposes of a natural asset management strategy. I'd like to ask the same question about estuary. And I note that the estuary has some definition here. It's given 161 hectares in size. And there's a reference to how the district's open data system has been consulted to define estuary or come to some definition of what we're talking about. The estuary in Squamish has two definitions, a technical one, what is a biophysical estuary and it has estuarine functions and a planning one. And both of them involve a much larger area than 161 hectares. And something that's occurred over the years is in our OCP, for example, we have. Addressed the compartmentalizing of our estuary by re. In emphasizing that it is the entire estuary management plan area, which includes Mamcon Blind Channel and the East Side. And the stormwater management plan that we addressed a few weeks ago, Mr. Rolston, you discussed the two sloughs, the Carson Place and Wilson Crescent Sloughs. And their natural asset roles and functions. So my question is, should we address the definition of estuary to include not just the wildlife management area, which I assume might be that 161 hectares? But the entire planning area and the area that has these estuarine functions?
I can start off, but I'm going to hand it over as well. So I think likely the reason for that discrepancy is because we're also accounting for things like rivers. And I I know that the Squamish River, for instance, is within the the estuary management plan. And so I think we don't didn't want to double count between rivers and estuaries. So there's probably that element is is likely what's leading to that discrepancy.
Yeah. So in addition to that, we we generally relied on the mapping and and shape files available within the the district's web mapping database for that. There are probably questions did come up with staff and and our own team even of the different definitions and even for others like grassland, to what extent does it even exist in Squamish? And and so I I mean, generally, that's pretty high level information based on broad mapping that is conducted. And probably different opportunities to slice and dice that frankly, in in different ways moving forward. So I think that, I mean, that's noted as a as a potential update or opportunity to. To to factor those in different ways into a next update of the the natural asset management strategy.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, so Counselor French, a quick one?
Yes, I hope. I'm just thinking back to the oversight involving the Masheter and Stewamis intakes and then thinking ahead to ultimately a motion. Should there be some specific mention of backtracking to include these two assets in in a motion from council?
I I don't see any issue with that. I think that's a good comment and something that we could incorporate.
And that being the case, I have some thoughts on potential wording. So if you're ready for a motion.
Okay. Please, Coach French, go ahead.
So I I suggest the staff motion, the staff recommendation. And then inserting at the end of it, once the Stewamis and Masheter water intake systems are incorporated into the asset management plan.
Second or for this.
Can I just suggest we change the word once?
Yes.
Friendly amendment. I'll go to staff first.
And just use and.
And also at the end, instead of asset management plan, I would suggest that that be the natural asset management strategy.
All right, then that would be the motion.
I'll just ask our recording secretary if that is clear, that change, those changes. Then I'll ask just for a round of comments. I have a couple of comments of my own, further comments on this proposed motion, counsel. Counselor Penney. Actually. I. Mary Elliot, I had assumed you were the secondor.
Thank you. Just a question for the mover and and I have no objection for calling up these two particular items. But as this is sort of new and and evolving work, would staff would, is your expectation that staff would interpret that? Then that's the fence around this and then we don't sort of add other things as we're sort of working through this and thinking of it? Or is there still some flexibility to to kind of work with this as we move forward? It just seems like we're learning a lot and and sort of think, oh, yeah, that's maybe something we should have identified. Let's let's pull it in now. Or do you assume that that opportunity still exists for staff with this motion?
Sure. And I'm specifically focused on these two because staff has indicated it was an oversight. I just want to make sure that these two assets get into the plan.
Further comments, counsel? I'd like to suggest, oh. Sorry, Monsieur Counselor Reese, please go ahead.
Thank you. I was just going to make a quick comment on the motion and and I think this is one of those presentations. And and I think this is one of those presentations we could go on for hours with. It's kind of fascinating, but it leads you to think about when we started to talk about natural assets, particularly around our boundaries. And Counselor Hereford was raising that point and others talked about it, that we might want to consider having a discussion with the regional district, who is just outside of our boundaries, about protected areas or co-management areas or things of that nature, recognizing that you wouldn't want the regional district to come along and sort of okay a development right on your boundary, which could have significant effects within the municipality. And I think that would probably apply to all of the communities within the regional district. And so we might consider starting a discussion at the Regional District Board about some kind of buffer or co-management areas immediately outside the borders of municipalities. But thank you. Great presentation. I quite enjoyed this.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Following on our discussion of the here of the Stewamas and Masheter watersheds, it occurs to me that an ongoing initiative of the Squamish Community Forest Joint Venture is to finalize a management plan and a forest stewardship plan. I think it would be useful for the management plan now or in future to refer explicitly to the district's natural assets management strategy and that we can be in touch with the with that, the Community Forest Board and its managers regarding this. The majority, the large majority of the Masheter and Stewamas watersheds are within the Community Forest chart area. Second comment, I was here in about 2009 in this room when a report was made to council of the day on a bridge inspection. And I remember vividly the physical response of the then mayor Greg Gardner on the report that bridge inspection had in fact been sorely neglected for quite a long time. So we have come quite a long way in the last 10, 12 years. I believe that we're is 2010 was the first effort at this type of initiative we're looking at now, and it's been advanced considerably. I'm sure that this will be a report that we will be referring to in council and staff deliberations often in the near future. Finally, I appreciate the references to trade offs throughout the these reports. One of the strategies in in looking at infrastructure deficits and underfunding that was pointed out on one of the slides is our land use policies. But here again, we have to address trade offs. If we're going to develop density in the valley bottom, that's where a lot of our natural assets are located, very valuable ones for habitat as well as for drainage and so forth. So thank you very much to our presentation team. I will call the question. We have the the recommendation, as has been revised. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again. Counsel, we we are a bit over time. It's been a good discussion, though. Shall we take a just about six minute break and come back at 20 minutes to 11? Thank you. We'll call the committee, the whole meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation on the 2022 Transit Future Action Plan. We have Dr. Ian Pickett with us presenting and also remotely our transportation planner, Dora Gunn. Please.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Dora Gunn. I'm a transportation planner with the District of Squamish. With us today, we also have Bronson Bulevent, Senior Transit Planner, and Rob Brigma, the Senior Manager of Government Relations, both with BC Transit. Bronson and I will be presenting, and Rob's here to help answer questions. Today, we're presenting a second draft of the Transit Future Action Plan. The first draft was presented to council on March 8th of this year. An initial version of the five-year service priorities was also presented back in October of 2021. Council had a number of questions and suggestions at the last meeting that staff have attempted to incorporate into this new draft. For this presentation, we're planning to focus only on these areas that council highlighted and not re-present the whole plan. However, we are happy to answer questions on any aspect of the plan. And Rob, are you able to share your screen and get that presentation up there? Perfect. So we're seeing the whole show, not just there. We go. Perfect. All right. So you can go into the next slide, Rob. Thank you. So today, we're going to start with a conversation of mode share on mode share and then move on to a discussion about service to Squamish Nation Reserve Lands. We'll review the frequent transit network map. Bronson's, I'm going to provide an update on the year one to five service priorities, touch on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'll conclude with a summary. Next slide, please. So one of the questions from council last time was whether or not the 10% mode share in 2040 was aggressive enough. There's many factors that contribute to mode share, including frequency of transit, the routing, the land use patterns, comparative trip times, so how long it takes to take transit to your destination versus using other modes, the cost of transit versus the alternatives, as well as the start and end of trip infrastructure, things like shelters and benches. There's no equation that we can use to input all these variables and come up with a mode share answer. The 10% mode share target was set at the time, so back in 2015, based on the current mode share and its trajectory, as well as a comparison with other smaller communities. It was felt to be fairly aggressive and would require significant investment to reach. A large part of the challenge in Squamish is the land use pattern with large areas of low density that are hard to service with frequent transit. The 10% mode share target is the only transit mode share target that we have in Squamish for that time period. It's also in our official community plan. The Community Climate Action Plan does have a target to double trips taken by sustainable modes, so transit, walking and biking by 2030. But this isn't, this is quite the same as a mode share target. So right now, we don't really have a solid rationale to change the 10% mode share target. There will be a more detailed evaluation of current mode shares in the upcoming Transportation Master Plan, starting later this year. This will provide us with better mode share numbers than the census journey to work data that focuses only on the trips to and from work and also better than the BC Transit estimates that are in this table. So we can use this better data, along with other proposals in the Transportation Master Plan, to review and potentially update our mode share targets. And if we decide at that time that the 10% number is not the right number, then we'll update it in the Transportation Master Plan. And then the next time we do a Transit Future Action Plan in five years, we can update it in that next version of the Transit Future Action Plan. Okay, Rob, next slide, please. So another question was about supporting our Squamish Nation community members with transit service. So to answer this question, we did a review of existing service to reserve lands. Conventional transit service is provided, to some degree, to four of the six populated First Nation Reserve Lands in Squamish. So Kautai and CHM are on the Route One, so they receive good service, while Waikiki and Yucapsum are a bit further away. They receive some service, but it's a bit of a walk. When I was measuring these distances, I was actually measuring from the bus route to the edge of the reserve, which works relatively well for all the smaller reserves. But for a reserve like Waikiki, which is actually quite long and narrow, it doesn't provide an entirely accurate estimate of the length of the walk. And so I had another look at that one. And it looks like there is actually the possibility of shifting the Route One slightly to the west that would bring it a little closer to Waikiki and make that walk for some of the people living at the farther back end of Waikiki, a little shorter. And so we're going to have a look at that, or we're proposing to have a look at that when we do the frequent transit network study, which is proposed to start this year, this BC Transit year, which is 2022, 23. The two areas that don't currently receive service are Stewamas and Chekemis. Chekemis is located north of Brackendale and is part of a much larger area of Squamish that doesn't receive transit service at all. It's a very challenging area to service due to its very low density and wasn't identified through this plan as a priority. So we're not proposing service to that area at this time. Lastly, is Stewamas, which is a strong candidate for service. Bronson is going to speak to the options for providing service to Stewamas that are included in this plan. Okay, next slide, please. Another question from council was related to the frequent transit network map, which used to show possible routing along the highway. So we've now updated the map to only show a general routing, that red line between downtown and Garibaldi Village. The exact route will be determined through that same study I mentioned, the frequent transit network or FTN study, which is beginning later this year, so 2022, 23. The same actually goes for all the routes that feed into that red route. So Valley Cliff, the Highlands and Brackendale on the map, they're shown as being exactly where they are, but that we will review those as part of the FTN study as well. Okay, and now I'm going to pass it over to Bronson to talk about the five-year service priorities.
I'm just trying to get my video started here. Okay, so I will run through the next five years of expansions and how we have modified the priorities to better align with Squamish needs based on our last presentation to council. First year of transit improvements have either been implemented already or are set to be implemented as soon as service resumes in Cedar Sky. When service does resume, Route Five sub parks will see a consistent headway throughout the entire day rather than seeing a gap that was seen in previous years. Next slide. So an additional priority that we've added in for this year is looking at on demand. So on-demand service has become a potential solution for a lot of different challenging situations, both in BC as well as across the world. It was determined at the last council meeting that more work is required to see whether or not an on-demand model can be a solution for some of the challenges that Squamish faces. The inclusion of this priority will lead to the development of a service proposal later this year to evaluate providing service to Stewamas, Waterfront Landing, and potentially other nearby areas. It should be noted that this will evaluate on-demand analog on-demand to begin with, which is essentially similar to handy art services across the province where it's a dial-in process. We have a digital on-demand pilot taking place in 2023. And following the completion of that, we'll have a better idea of where and when digital on-demand will be utilized, as well as having a a service to be implemented, ready to go. So the 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 plan or document that will be created later this year will include both options, but more information will be followed in digital on-demand specifically. Next slide, thanks. In the second year of priorities, the plan has changed with input from council to include introductory service to the oceanfront area in Squamish. This will expand Route Three Valley Cliff during the summer months to service the park and new developments. There is uncertainty as to whether the park will be completed by June 23, June 2023. As this proposal is service hours only, i.e. there's no bus associated with it, these hours can be deferred before implementation to when the park is open. Next slide, please. In 2024, 2025, Britannia Beach service has been bumped up to support a more aggressive plan at the request of council. It also provides an alternative option to providing service to Stewamas if on-demand isn't considered to be an option for this location following the review. If infrastructure and funding agreements are not in place by 2425, the transit improvement process will identify this and we can move the priorities necessary. Discussions with appropriate parties will be initiated by staff to ensure a transit partnership agreement is created prior to implementation. Next year in 2324, if council feels the service is not ready to be implemented, either due to lack of infrastructure or lack of a funding agreement with other parties, the tips process, transit improvement process can be bumped and bump the proposal back a year or change it to better reflect what is required. This goes for providing service to Alice Lake as well. Excellent. So the next few pages are have not been changed as there are no other requirements other than moving Britannia Beach service up a year. So this will be 2526. We still have the development of the FTN network, which will be completed. The study will be completed this year, late, early 2023, so next year. And we'll utilize that to implement this service we see in 2526. Excellent. In 2627, we'll further improve Route Five sub parks as well as improve weekend service. And then following that, next slide, the last priority we have is adding additional frequency to the FTN network as ridership begins to increase. So this page has been updated in the CFAP, so page 13, including a more robust explanation of how we are improving our internal planning processes to better describe how BC Transit is approaching equity, diversity, and inclusion. Within our own team, we're developing improved public engagement by utilizing gender-based analysis, GBA+, which will be part of all future engagements, as well as making engagement more accessible by providing surveys in different formats and in different languages. We also work with Squamish to identify bus stops that require accessibility improvements. BC Transit is also improving access to fares through the new electronic fare strategy, UMO, as well. Other improvements to EDI include developing a strategy for increasing engagement with First Nations and supporting meaningful reconciliation. And this priority is outlined within BC Transit's 2023, 2022, 23 to 2024, 25 service plan. Pass it back on to Dora now for the summary.
Thanks, Bronson. Just trying to unmute myself there. So to summarize, I've included the issues and potential resolutions in a table. So for mode share, the plan is to address it through the upcoming Transportation Master Plan. For service to the Squamish Nation Reserve Lands, we've reviewed the current service and have updated the proposals to improve the service. We've updated the frequent transit network map. We've added service to oceanfront. We've added a service proposal investigation for on-demand transit. We've added new language into the plan about the need for funding partnerships, particularly on certain proposals like Britannia and Alice Lake. And we've added new language around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So overall, this plan adds nine new conventional buses and 20,200 additional service hours. The total at the end of the plan, at the end of the five years, would be 17 conventional buses and 39,900 service hours. Next slide, please. So moving on to budget implications, supporting this plan does not require an immediate budget decision. Decisions on transit expansions first come to council through the three-year Transit Expansion MOU, which typically happens annually. We will receive ours this year after the Transit Future Action Plan has been approved. And then the final budget decisions occur through the municipal and provincial budget processes. At a high level, all the proposals, not including infrastructure, would result in an approximate doubling of the operating budget. And that's it for our presentation. If council has any questions.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? I have Mary Elliott, Counselor Stoner, Counselor Pennington, and Counselor Reese. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the updates. I'm just curious about, can we add all the buses we need in the first few years, given the the current status of our operations and maintenance center? Or that will that continue to be a limitation on this plan in the short term?
Through the chair, I can provide an answer for that one. Thank you for the question, Mary Elliott. Yes, currently, we had eight spots, leasehold spots, additional to our facility. Unfortunately, through some contracting issues, that got reduced down to three. So we currently have about three available leased bus spots. The transit facility currently is at capacity, but we do have some additional, those three additional leased spots. Just in some conversations with operations last week, they're going to continue to look for additional kind of off-site parking options that would allow us to continue to to expand. But those three spots will get us, I believe, through the first two years of this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Brigma. And when we look at, I know that some councillors wanted to move up the Britannia service, but there's not that many people that live down there, and the developments are many years away. And so I'm curious why we think that is a strategic move to pull that forward at this time, given it's not servicing a very dense population.
Through the chair, I might be able to start answering that question and turn it over to Bronson if he has anything to add. So the original reason that we moved that up in the plan was because it could provide service to Stewamas and possibly Cedar Sky, Sea and Sky as well. And then we decided to leave it there in the plan, despite the the possibility of on-demand providing the the service to that area, those areas instead. It's it's easy enough to bump it back in the plan as we move forward with the with the three-year expansion MOUs. But we wanted to present an aggressive, I guess, design. An aggressive, I guess, desire from from Squamish to B C Transit about about what we were trying to do with our expansions. And then if needed, bump it back. So that that was the thinking, but absolutely open to other thoughts.
That's fair. I'm I'm really keen to see if that. Sort of on demand service is feasible for for those two areas of the community. Ms. Gunn, when you look at this expansion plan. Do you see us getting to fifteen minutes service? On our main routes? By the end of, or where where do we get to that like morning peak, afternoon peak, fifteen minute service in this plan?
I might turn it over to Mr. Bullvent and see if he has a good sense of where in the plan that might occur.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, that will occur. So when we are expanding the fifteen hundred hours and one bus to both Route One and Two, which will happen in twenty. Seven, I think the second year, so twenty three, twenty four, no, twenty four, twenty five will be when that that happens, when we get the vehicles. That will improve frequency to fifteen minutes in the A M and the P M peak. Following that, when we create the actual F T N network, that will improve fifteen minute frequency throughout. The entire entire system, at least on the F T N corridor, so between downtown and Highlands and Garibaldi. Garibaldi to the Highlands, Garibaldi to Brackendale, and downtown to Valley Cliff. So between seven and seven at that point, seven A and seven P M.
So sorry, that's twenty four, twenty five, we get the morning and afternoon peak?
Let me just, through the chair, let me just bring up my presentation. I won't share it on the screen. I'm just going to make sure I'm speaking correctly. So in. No, in twenty three, twenty four will be when we get the peaks at fifteen minutes. So the first year, the trans improvement cycle, so next year. B C Transit's years.
Sorry, you're just fading out there. Can you just repeat that?
Sorry, my apologies. In twenty three, twenty four will be when we add additional frequency to Route One and Route Two to improve the A M and P M peaks to fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Following up on Mayor Elliott's question. I appreciate that we'll get to that fifteen minutes for two of those routes earlier on, but my understanding is that it's the. Implementation of the frequent transit network that will get us to that more broadly fifteen minute schedule. And so I'm curious why that is being delayed into later part of the plan. Given that we're doing the study and the scoping in twenty twenty two, is there any way that we can advance? That portion of it, because that'll get us to that fifteen minutes sooner. And we see in the. Community surveys that the frequency is really the driving factor here and not necessarily the expansion of service.
Through the chair, that's a good question, and there is a reason why we are not implementing that until that point. We, there's a lot of pieces that have to fall into place prior to having the F T N network. So there's infrastructure required at Garibaldi to be able to have an exchange there, so buses can lay over. Passengers can can transfer, drivers can utilize what they need to at that location. We also need to get to the point of where we can house those additional vehicles. And essentially have the study completed. So we have, we can't finish the study. We can't start the study until we have the plan adopted, so we can take that forward to the consultant as we go through the R F P process. So we won't be starting that plan, I would probably imagine, until twenty twenty three, early twenty twenty three, maybe in January. So that with that, having the process run through, having them provide ideas, paired with the fact we need the additional buses and we need the infrastructure, that's why we have it at that time. But this is, if everything falls into place very quickly and fast than we imagine, this is totally something we could boost a year through the transit improvement process. It's just outlined in twenty five, twenty six with how we currently envision the next few few years of transit service improvements in Squamish. But that doesn't mean we can't, we can't boost it up in the tips process while in following years.
Okay, thank you for reminding me of that context. Two other quick questions. One, appreciate. The consideration of the mode share shift by twenty forty. And although I'd like to see it higher, appreciate maybe why we're not going there. That being said, in my package, it does say fifteen percent by twenty forty. So I don't know if there's a. But yeah, in my package, the twenty twenty two Transit Future Action Plan for the twenty forty Transit Mode Share target says fifteen percent. So I was optimistic to see that in my reading. And disappointed with the presentation.
Through the chair, I'm really very sorry. There must be an error in there somewhere. Ten percent. Where we're at.
All right, we'll leave it at ten percent. My last question was the on demand, on demand pilot in twenty or that we're looking at. Very excited to see that in there. I'm just curious if one of the folks in B C Transit can speak to the on demand digital pilot in twenty twenty three. Where is that happening? And can Squamish be part of it?
Through the chair, I can take that question. Thank you, councillor Stoner. So there's actually going to be an announcement made this week for our pilot community. They have selected Kelowna as the pilot community for twenty twenty three implementation of digital on demand. So basically, what we're hoping to do is early twenty twenty three. Base implement that in the Kelowna system and run it for a full year. So that we can test out vehicle type, software, technology, operations, all of those pieces. As Bronson mentioned, what planning will do in the background while that's going on is start to analyze different systems and their suitability for digital on demand. Clearly, as you've seen in this plan, we've already identified some high level thoughts on potential opportunities in the Squamish region. So that planning work will continue and then we will mirror that up in proposals in kind of twenty twenty four. Again, in that tips process to align systems that have suitable criteria with the solution that we've proposed, tested, and have ready to roll out. More fulsomely in kind of twenty twenty four, twenty five.
Just a quick follow up on that. It seems odd that you'd only select one community as a pilot community, given the diversity of municipalities that you partner with. And so why are we only advancing that pilot in one community at this time?
Yeah, as part of the on demand feasibility project and kind of what we've outlined in the past, it was always slated to run a pilot in one to two communities. I think Kelowna, and again, I was not part of the selection committee, but I believe Kelowna just has a good diversity of both rural and more urban areas. And was was selected as a as a good representation and opportunities for for that representation of different systems. But I do appreciate the the diversity of the different systems we have across the province.
Councillor Penningill.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm just wondering if we're missing something in our evaluation of Stotmas. I understand that the residential population isn't as big as some of the other reserve places, but. It's where a lot of services are and there's events and services and all kinds of things. So I'm just wondering if we're. Factoring that in appropriately and also considering, you know. When we're contemplating past usage, I don't know if that's playing into our decisions, but thinking about. You know, what does it take for people to feel safe and welcome on the service? And and if we sort of put all that together, would we still delay the Stotmas service out as far and bundle in with Britannia? Or are there reasons we should actually maybe consider that one sooner?
Through the chair, we are actually trying to consider that one sooner through the on demand study. So the idea was that the the best and fastest way to provide service there could be through that on demand service. It's not specifically like the start of that on demand service isn't in the plan yet because it it's based on the study being conducted first. But that study is slated for this year to occur. So the the possibility of including it with Britannia is really only kind of a backup plan.
Okay, thank you. Sort of maybe leave it as a comment. That's one to my mind that I feel like there's an opportunity to move that one up. Maybe without tying it to the on demand service piece. I'll move on to another question. I think I've asked this before and I can't remember the answer, and maybe this is something to come back for the future, but. You know, our fair collection doesn't cover all the costs. And there's a whole lot of overhead in doing fair collection, printing passes and advertising and rates changes and managing all of that. And I'm just wanting if we can at some point get a clear understanding of the differential. So, you know, we lose another chunk of the fair collection through the operations of fair collection. If we just, you know, didn't collect fairs, we don't also, we also avoid the fair collection costs. And and so the sort of, maybe we're losing much less than the actual fares if we just cut the fares. That makes sense because we're already losing a chunk to the the work involved. And I'm just wondering if if someone can speak that differential or maybe just comment that that's something would have to come back.
Through the chair, councillor Penningill, thank you for your question. Yeah, so really. Good observation and complex question. What I would say, and I don't have the stats for Squamish in front of me right now, but typically what we use from B C Transit perspective is a is a term called cost recovery. And that's really when we factor in revenues of fares versus operational costs, how much of that fare goes towards contributing or supporting. Or going against, I should say, your total cost of transit operations. And typically, it's in the in the twenty mid twenty percent. If it can get up into the thirties, that's 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 fairly fairly significant. I can follow up with with staff on where Squamish currently sits, but again, fares, as you all know, fair revenue is used as one of the levers for the system. To reduce its operating expenses. Yes, providing providing free fare there, I should say, sorry, providing fares, there is some operational cost that goes with collecting the fares. But net net, it still contributes meaningfully to offsetting the cost of your transit system. I think to your point, the operational costs that are included with passes, tickets, administration. Through our electronic fair collection system and the rollout of our U M O platform will significantly reduce a lot of those operational costs. As we move to a model where people can tap their 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 mobile app, their debit card, their credit card. To access the transit system. So we're going to make the transit system a lot more open and inclusive. And hopefully reduce some of those those operational costs that you mentioned in the same process.
Okay, thanks. And then my last, I guess, comment slash question is just around the mode share. And and I wonder, I was interested when you said we're, and I can't remember the the term for the the study, but. We're going to be looking at mode shift more broadly. And and I guess what I'm interested in, I I think the main metric we need to care about is reducing the number of people in single occupancy. Vehicles or, you know, single hire vehicles. And. You know, the shift to transit may be part of that, but. It's it's that more important number and then everything falls from that. So. I guess, I guess my comment is to worry less about the transit mode share and more about getting people out of the single occupancy vehicles. But am I correct then in assuming when we get this next report, that's going to talk about how we plan to split all that that apart?
Through the chair, yes. So through the transportation master plan, we are planning to do a good job of data collection to understand what the current mode share split is. So including all the different modes, so walking, biking, transit, as well as vehicles. And then from, that'll be the first time we have that whole data set. Up to now, we've been relying on the journey to work data, which is just a part of people's travels in the day. And then so once we get, understand where we're currently at, we'll be in a better position to project forward as to where we hope to get to.
Okay, thank you. I just sort of commented, and I hope that as we're doing this, we're sort of. Focusing a bit more on where we need to be and and, you know, we'll figure out how to do that. Have to consider where we are in in thinking about strategies and tactics, but I wouldn't want to base, you know, our number on an incremental improvement on where we are. Because we need to get somewhere specific. So let's point that out and then figure out how to get thereafter.
Councillor Race.
Thanks, Chair, but my question was asked by the mayor concerned when we need the expanded transit facility. So I'm fine. Thank you.
Very good. Councillor Hereford.
Thank you. The, as councillor, as councillor Penningill pointed out, the the Stowamas Reserve and the. Has other, besides scoring just population, I think is a is a center culturally and recreationally for for the nation. And and I think there's some more work to be done to sort of flush out the flush that out. I don't know how to score that in the, you know. But it is differently than the charts presented, so. I'll leave it. I'll just leave that bit there. I was curious about the mode share. What's proposed here is quite ambitious and is a big jump. But when I look at it at. You know, both in service and expenses. And when I look at mode share target in twenty twenty five, you noted that three percent mode share. And we are moving to the goal of ten, although fifteen maybe around the table. But but using that ten number, there's still a lot of work to do for that lot for the next bit. And is this sort of doubling of service a trend that we would expect to see can continue throughout? Or will some of the other fact, or is the thought that some of the other fact contributing factors to transit ridership? I don't know, price of fuel, whatever other aspects are will sort of. Bump that ridership as well? Or how much of it, sort of, I guess, how how is that weighed in in the sort of assessing our next steps here?
Through the chair, I can start to answer this question and then I might pass it to Mr. Bullvent as well to contribute. So my sense is that what we're trying to do is get our frequency improved in the short term, so that we're putting a big amount of effort and attention on that right now in this plan. And once we get to fifteen minute frequency, I mean, sure, it'd be nice to be at ten minute frequency, but fifteen minute frequency is actually pretty good. So after that, I wouldn't necessarily anticipate that the next five year plan would have the same doubling again as this one. At that point, we'd be turning to other other aspects to try to improve our mode share. We would obviously still continue to increase. The services, but not perhaps at the same rate. And perhaps I'll turn it over to Mr. Bullvent to add to that.
And thanks for the question. This is definitely a very. Timely question in how we are completing these plans. Realistically, this is a strategic. Service proposal and infrastructure proposal plan that looks to do as much as we can within the confines of expanding service hours. Turning buses and improving infrastructure. So it's one piece of the puzzle. I think with the recent growth spurt that Squamish has been seeing over the, I mean, past five years, but also past decade. It's really transitioning from a system where it's really just providing base thirty minute level service, sixty minute level service to something where we need. A brand new kind of transit service, which is this F T N type of service. So we're looking to double it right now to kind of set up, establish a baseline for getting our residents and riders used to something that is very different, but also very effective and more convenient. I think what should go hand in hand with this is improved marketing, all of this improved technology that we're going to be seeing over the next few years. Doesn't necessarily fall in line with the with this kind of Transit Future Action Plan. But there are a lot of other things that will have to come into play to help support getting that mode share to ten percent. And this is, yeah, as I said, one piece of the puzzle. There's a lot of other things that we need to do, and we can continue to work with you to make those things happen.
Thank you. And. Yeah, that that question sort of jumped out at me with the the service hours per capita. Scoring and just sort of trying to figure out where that should be to achieve those those things, but there are other factors. So I appreciate that. In the past, there's been a lot of work done around coordination with the school, the school district around bell. About start times and and finish times of school. And I just don't want to assume anything, but going into this frequent transit network study. Will those bell times be front and center of the of the discussion so that we don't undo some of this very nuanced work that we've we've done to to get to where we are?
Through the chair. Sorry, I'll let you follow up if you have anything to ask afterwards. That is definitely going to be front and center. One of the really cool things we do in the background every single year is work with school districts to ensure that bell times are met, and that's not something that's going to stop. We have a scheduling team. This is one of their main focuses and priorities annually is to ensure that school bell times are met. And if they're not met, what can we do to change the routes and timing to make those things happen? So every year we'll make sure that they're met, even when we're changing the base route structure.
Councillor Penningill, do you have a follow up question?
Yeah, just on that scheduling question, if if my memory serves correct, we had been doing that scheduling with the school board. We set our schedules and then the school on their timeline needed to adjust their schedules and I think. think if I recall, that's where the misalignment happened. So is there a way we can address that? So, you know, our our schedule update schedules are synced up?
Through the chair, uh, I can only recall that happening once, uh, and it was recently. Um, where we, because we have a certain, it was transit, there's a certain amount of lead time that is required to set all the schedules are quite complex and then do all the marketing as well. And so we can't do it like, you know, a couple of weeks before school starts. But the school district um can and occasionally does change their bell times quite late in the game. So I think the best thing we can do to address that issue is just to let them know, let the school district know, and I did when this happened, and I will again. Um, that if they want their school bell times to line up with transit, they need to let us know early enough.
Ms. Gunn, I have a couple of questions of my own here. In the discussion we had with you and your guests on March eighth, one of the topics was areas of significant employment density. Mayor Elliott, for example, raised the i- issue of Brendan or the Business Park and how that we're, it's a little bit falling through the cracks, uh, perhaps still. Um, here in the report, I'm just going to briefly refer to the Stotmas and the population figure of ninety eight for that reserve is given in the report to council. I would suggest that consideration might have been made to the number of people working in the Totem Hall offices and other buildings on the Stowmas Reserve of service, social service agencies and other uh departments of the Squamish Nation, there's significant employment to um uh involved on on that reserve. And um the other area that was discussed on March eighth is North of Brackendale. And uh, it for today in your presentation, Ms. Gunn, you've suggested that we're not proposing service to North of Brackendale at this time. Uh, last time I brought up the topic of the two adjacent employers, Sunwolf Fergies and the uh A J Forest Products Mill. And between those two uh employers, there are about a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty people working at peak season for Sunwolf. Um, they are two businesses which have made inquiries uh and done and taken out, carried out initiatives for their employees all regarding transit and carpooling of that, things of that nature. Ride share program's been looked at uh and is being supported by Sunwolf. A J Forest Products has had conversations with private bus service providers. So my general question is, how are, can we address these employment areas in future uh planning? And uh today with the recommendations we have from you, and I'll break it, my questions down into three. Uh, are we capturing in our analysis employment uh density trends, if you like, or patterns on the map? And I'll recall back in twenty thirteen, when there was a review of the D C C bylaw, there was very detailed analysis done about present and projected employment trends and location of employment. And I wonder whether some of that type of data might be useful, because I'm I'm a little bit disappointed that we're not seeing more attention to employment, the employment picture in in the report we have in front of us. My second question, so that is, can we do more in the way of analysis to bring up that aspect of employment patterns? Secondly, can we address North of Brackendale in our on-demand service investigation? Clearly, there's a great constituency there. It's not only just those two businesses, but nearby employers. And it's not insignificant as an area of traffic in other respects as well, vehicle traffic. Can we address North of Brackendale in our on-demand service investigation? Uh, and my third question is for our guests, Mr. Bulivant and Mr. Ringma. Surely, in other small communities that are part of your clientele around the province, we have other examples of uh industrial sites or resort sites a little bit outside of the urban area. Can we look to examples and and initiatives elsewhere that we could draw upon to address situations like we have North of Brackendale? Uh, I hope that's cleared up. Three questions then, how we do analysis and bring in employment data? And whether we can address uh North of Brackendale through on-demand service? And uh whether there's other examples around the province that we could draw upon for these types of situations in our in our geography?
Through the chair, um, it's a really good, some good questions. Uh, the first one I'll I'll take. And then if I can pass the second one to Dora, and then I can take the, well, maybe I'll pass the third one on to Rob and Rob, if you need support, I can fill in and same with you, Dora. Um, in terms of the first question, how we do our analysis for where we are determining where to bring service to? We do include that, and it can be seen on page seven of the the TFAP. Um, we call it transit potential, um, but it's essentially the combination of employment uh data and population data. So we overlay the two and we aggregate it based on dissemination areas, um, which is a specific uh geography. That's one of the smallest ones where we can capture population data. Um, so on that page, the darker, I can share my screen maybe if that's actually easier. Just give me one second, bring this up. I don't have sharing abilities. Um, well, I have sharing abilities. Hey, um, go. So on this screen is the analysis that we do for determining where service should go. Um, typically, we've, one of the general rules um outlined within some of our, what we call service standards and performance guidelines, which is a different document than this, and I'm I won't get into too much detail of it. But one of the base rules of providing service to an area um is looking for transit potential or population and employment to be about a thousand persons per square kilometer. Um, it's a rough gauge, but it's what we use across the province for introducing new service. Um, as you can see, we have very good coverage of the denser areas in the downtown and Garibaldi, Brackendale, Highlands and Valley Cliff. Um, a little, a little bit of density um between zero and five hundred and seventy-six uh in Stowmas. And obviously, five seventy-six is a very arbitrary number just utilized for the data that we have for the area. Not saying that it doesn't justify bringing on service, but this is typically how we look at ensuring that um distribution of people is um most well served by transit. Um, so that also speaks to why there was no service north of this area, because north of this area in our original analysis uh didn't dictate the the need for it based on the analysis. But as we all know, um, quantitative data isn't the whole story, and we should use qualitative as well. And that speaks to the public engagement. We didn't not hear from many people in the survey. And again, um, our our survey was confined to the people that saw within the context of the public engagement timeline and were able to respond. So that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone um that needed transit was able to respond to it. But those are the, that's the data that we utilize to kind of come to the solution of where we suggested transit service.
Thanks, Mr. Belvent. Um, I can add one minor comment to that, which is that um, the, our planning department and uh economic development department are looking at models, um, looking at employment data, not only for current um employment, but also projecting into the future. I don't have an exact timeline on when this is going to be completed. Um, but um, they are working on that. And it is something that will be considered in the transportation master plan as well. So we might have new information that can then feed into the next version of the Transit Future Action Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. That's very encouraging. Um, I I guess my other question was whether there's something we can draw on from rest of the province as for models for addressing uh situations a little bit outside of our urban area.
Yeah, maybe I can round out the trifecta here with a comment, Chair Anderson. Um, yes, there are, there are other examples, improved service to the Gloucester um industrial park. Um, so, you know, I think overall, in general, I don't want to speak for the planning department, but when we're, when we're trying to plan a transit system and plan priorities, it is this mix of the things we've discussed today. It's uh, it's school needs, it's commuter needs, it's uh employment needs and it's social needs of the other community. So we try to do our best to do as much stakeholder and public engages we can to determine those priorities. Um, sometimes industrial sites can be challenging, just in terms of different work times and work needs for the different businesses that are involved. Um, that's not saying it's unsurmountable, um, but it can be, can be tricky um sometimes from a planning perspective. Um, but yes, I think, um, I think we are seeing an increased um rise in demand to those employment sites as um, to be honest, as we see the cost of vehicle ownership and the cost of fuel and these other things starting to rise as well. Um, so uh hopefully that gives you a little bit more context. I don't know if Bronson has any other comments he wants to make.
Yeah, thank you. And and through the chair, just to round Rob's comment in regards to planning and to address one of your questions, how can we plan or can we plan when future demand arises? And this TFAP does not um preclude other expansion priorities as we move through the next five years. This sets up a strategic vision. If we see demand for for somewhere that kind of comes out from the woodworks or all of a sudden there's increase in density, increase in demand, we can evaluate that and include it in in the following uh transit improvement processes. That's what council will sign off on for expansion, and we can change those numbers as we go through the years. This sets up the vision, but we are always looking for um engagement opportunities and and listening to the public through. We have a lot of avenues to to hear back. That includes a customer um response through the B C Transit website. Through our engagement website, we're always allowing people to comment. So we always take that information and work with staff uh if there are new demand areas that can.
Thank you uh for your comments uh to my uh concerns on that. We have uh in the the situation I've referred to, a couple of employers keenly interested to engage. And this may be the case with other employers in other parts of the district uh on this general topic of addressing uh employment areas. Uh, counsel, any further questions before we come to our recommendation? Counsel, Mayor Elliott.
I was just going to move the staff recommendation that we approved the twenty twenty-two Transit Future Action Plan.
I take it Counselor Herford will second that motion. Uh, any final comments? Mayor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think this creates a good vision and uh as B C Transit staff and our own staff have said, there's room within that plan to adjust as we go along. Not least of which is that the province didn't come to the table with any expansion funding this year. And we have no guarantee that they'll be at the table with the transit expansion funding next year. So it's a bit of a moot point until uh this government starts to plan transit for more than one year at a time. Um, but I think this is the right vision. Um, and I appreciate uh the work to address the questions we had last time. Um, and then we can refine that each time we look at our MOUs, um, which allows us to get more granular. I think what this plan does um make me think about, though, is the real need for us to develop a paid parking strategy so that we can fund transit. When you look at doubling our transit uh operations in the next five years, that's expensive. And we need a way to fund that differently than just tax dollars. Um, especially if we consider that also during that timeframe, we would finally actually like to be able to put regional transit on the road as well. Um, and and there needs to be a funding model developed for that. So I think a paid parking strategy is really important. Um, I think also to the importance of making sure that the oceanfront is transit accessible year round. Um, is still an outstanding priority, and I think we need to work with that developer through any rezoning process to look at contributions to transit. Um, and and as some sort of transit partnership to make sure that we can expand in that area without um the current taxpayer bearing the full brunt of that so that we can build that in. Um, as my colleagues have said, uh, the call on demand for potentially servicing uh Sea and Sky and Stotmas, I think we have to consider as well through our engagement about where the calls are coming from to get there. Um, there are people that work there that are coming from all over town. So um, how do we make sure that that the folks who don't live on Stotmas but who work there can can get there easily as well? Um, and then I think we just need to be prepared uh with our local employers to um have a way in which they can make inquiries as the gondola did to support some level of transit funding to help get their employees to and from work. A hundred and thirty-four people is in a highly dense area or a high need. But there there should be a model in which we can be approached by employers um to, if they want to partially fund um or begin discussions with us. I think that that door should be open, and there should be a way that they can engage with us um in terms of contributing to the transit system uh in a way that's easy and um and and they can, and it's visible to them. Uh, other than that, uh, happy to support the plan and thanks for the work.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I'm speaking in favor of the motion, and uh I I agree with um the mayor's list of concerns, and I'll add one more, and that being labor certainty. As we sit here today, uh, we we don't have an operating transit system. And uh with increasing our system, the way that we're planning to, uh, it it becomes a more and more valuable system with more at stake. And uh I'm looking forward to finding a way to increasing our certainty around consistent labor as we increase the size of our system.
Further comments, counsel? Counselor Herford.
Thank you. Um, I'm supportive of this plan. I think um it moves us in the right direction, but I do. I think it's important to acknowledge that we have a a ways to go with a a target of uh three percent mode share in twenty twenty-five and a ten percent mode share in uh twenty forty. And of course, the ten percent uh mode share in twenty forty uh doesn't just account for the residents that are here currently. It's our future residents as well. And I think it's important that we uh continue to plan um land use uh to help facilitate these targets and uh exceeding these targets, as um I do think in some contexts, um, these targets are um are quite modest. Um, but I do see the amount of work it takes to get uh even to this. Hopefully, this projected three percent uh is taking a huge, a huge lift. So uh we've got a lot more work to do here um as it as a community, and I look forward to seeing the um the frequent transit network um study, but being implemented and and getting to that point where we do have that greater frequency and um a more reliable system. Um, and of course, um, once the system's up and running as we are, I think it's important to acknowledge that we are uh talking about transit without operational transit at this point and um, which is exceedingly frustrating for those, not just on this call, but out in our in our community. So um, as we build reliance on that um further, um, you know, we uh need to be mindful of the impact that this has had uh already, and it may be taking a step back, but uh unfortunately, um, I look forward to taking the bus soon. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. I I will be supporting this as well. Um, I I I do still think that there's opportunity uh or value in um uh providing more service to Stotmas sooner, but I also think that would will require uh to find success, probably some coordinated planning and effort with Totem Hall. And so um, knowing that we can adapt this plan, I guess I would just note that um, I I think that's a an area where some effort and some coordination uh is worthwhile and would love to see in the next iteration, we can move up uh some of that service and and sort of understand some of the the plans around how we make that happen. Um, but in the meantime, I'm I'm glad to see that we are uh, notwithstanding the strike, very determined to see a successful frequent transit here in our our community and and thank um, you know, I'm glad to see a a report that's that's fairly ambitious. So thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, the Chair. Also happy to support the motion. I'll keep my comments brief. I think uh like my fellow council colleagues, uh, this starts to set a really strong vision for our transit system, which we already had, and we've already been investing in significantly. And this just gets us that much closer and will actually get us to that fifteen minute transit um along our core uh transit network, which we know is really critical to increasing usage of the system uh and making it more robust, as well as starting to contemplate um in incorporating some of the technology shifts like transit on demand uh and expanding the service to uh further areas of field. So um, I'm happy to support the vision that's in this plan and looking forward to working with our partners, both at the province uh as well as within the community to to get this into a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other further comments, I'll just make a couple of brief ones, my own here. Um, clearly, transit has a major interface with labor supply issues and affordable housing issues in our community. This is highlighted in a uh a conference or a panel discussion called The Future of Labor uh hosted by our Economic Development Department earlier this spring, and transit service was a key theme throughout those discussions. I very much appreciated Dora Gunn's reference to the upcoming Transportation Master Plan work that we will be engaged in for uh over the next year. Uh, that will be an opportunity for a more holistic view. Uh, and also, uh, it will incorporate, according to Ms. Gunn, some incorporate, according to Ms. Guns, some new types of analysis that are being worked on between the different departments of the district. I believe that that Transportation Master Plan should also be taking a serious look at alternative modes, but that also includes private services. And perhaps that will be the context to address some of those opportunities. So we have a motion or to approve the 2022 Transit Future Action Plan. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We're catching up a little bit, folks, but we've and the next item up is the District of Squamish zoning bylaw number 2200, 2011 amendment bylaw. This concerns 1005, 1009 Raven Drive. And we have our Planning Department coming in, too. Mr. Daley, Mr. Valeniskas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Should I get going or wait till everyone gets back? So, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Daley, Development Subdivision Coordinator with Community Planning. Today, I'm here seeking counsel feedback on a rezoning application at 1005 and 1009 Raven Drive. At the April 12 Committee of the Whole Meeting, council directed staff to bring this rezoning application back for discussion at future Committee of the Whole Meeting. Council's comments are noted on this slide and included comments regarding affordable housing being considered through community amenity contributions, comments related to housing massing, unit variation, and citing, and seeking more information about the proposed agricultural area. The subject properties are 1.32 hectares in area and located on Raven Drive, immediately south of the intersection of Cardinal Drive and Raven Drive, and east of the single-unit dwellings on King Fisher Road. Neighboring properties to the west and north are Zoned Comprehensive Development Zone 38 and are developed with single-unit dwellings. Properties to the south and east are zoned rural residential one and also developed with single-unit dwellings. The subject properties are currently undeveloped vacant land, and 1009 Raven Drive is almost entirely covered by BC Hydro right-of-way. A number of council's comments were in relation to the size of the units proposed, the citing and massing of the units, the lack of variety in unit and bedroom type, and a desire to see an affordable rental housing component as part of the application. The applicant has made the following revisions to the project to address council's comments. Block of townhomes fronting Raven Drive has been split to reduce the building massing, and the block has been shifted to the east to increase the setback from the single-unit dwellings to the west. The setback for the shared waste room has also been increased to 2.39 meters. One of the townhome house units on Block 3 has been removed to allow for more space between Block 4 and the southern property line. The distance between Block 3 and Block 4 has been increased to 10.43 meters, and the distance between Block 3 and the southern property line has been increased to 17.95 meters. The number of townhouse units has been reduced from 36 to 35. The previous iteration of the project had included the garage area and the overall gross floor area numbers of the units, which was why the majority of them appeared to be over 2,000 square feet. Garage area is exempted from gross floor area calculations, and the units are actually 1,500 square feet in GFA. Two of the units have been reduced in size to 1,350 square feet to reflect the reduced unit size. The allowable gross floor area in the zone has been reduced accordingly. To further differentiate the unit mix, three two-bedroom units are now proposed. The remaining 32 units will be three-bedroom. The three two-bedroom units will be secured as a requirement in the land development agreement. The applicant has committed to securing two of the units as affordable rental housing through a housing agreement. One of the units will be a two-bedroom unit, the other will be a three-bedroom unit. This requirement will also be secured in the land development agreement, and the housing agreement will be completed at the development permit stage. It should be noted that this application is under the allowable base density, though it would qualify for the rental housing and agricultural open space density bonuses. Council requested more detail about the proposed agricultural area with a desire to see farming and food production rather than community gardens, detailed on costs associated with making the area farmable and how the future management of this area will work. There were also questions about the size and function of the proposed detention pond. So the agricultural space has been increased from 1,620 square meters to 2,500 square meters since the previous iteration. The pedestrian trail along the eastern property line has been relocated to the west adjacent to the townhouses to allow for the agricultural area to continue unobstructed to the eastern property line. This will allow for the potential to secure additional agricultural area on the adjacent property to the east should it redevelop in the future. The detention pond is an engineered structure designed to attenuate drainage flows, restricting the post-development release rate to mimic the pre-development release rate, which which prevents impacts on downstream drainage infrastructure. Given that there is no existing development on site and the challenges with the stormwater management in the Lagers East neighborhood, the applicant has used a conservative estimate for the required size of the pond. The pond will not remain full year-round, as it will only hold water during rain events. The pond area will be landscaped, will have plant screening to mitigate visual impact, and be fenced to prevent public access. The shape of the detention pond has been varied to provide a more natural appearance, and there will be language included in the land development agreement to minimize the size of the detention pond as much as possible once the detailed design has been completed, and that any additional area that's obtained could be added to the agricultural area. So the staff report notes that the agricultural area and play area would be a commercial strata lot. Since this report was completed, staff have had further discussions with the applicant, and the proposal is now to subdivide off the agricultural area and playground area and dedicate it to the district. The district can then enter into a long-term lease with Squamish Can over the agricultural area. A covenant will be registered on title notifying other strata residents of the farm activities. Squamish Can has provided a summary document outlining the required improvements to make the area suitable for farm for food production, including a preliminary cost estimate for these improvements. The estimates for the improvements are approximately $160,000, which the applicant has agreed to provide and is proposing to count towards their community amenity contribution for critical amenities. This application triggers the community amenity contribution policy. The applicant has provided, proposed the following offer, which meets the policy for multifamily residential or mixed-use rezoning, a cash-in lieu of critical amenities amount of $730,410, improvements to the agricultural area at an estimate of $160,000, and then playground equipment in the community park area on site with an estimated cost of $75,000. These amounts meet the policy target. The following additional amenities are also proposed: two townhouse units to be secured as affordable rental housing in perpetuity, commitment that no natural gas will be provided to any of the units in the development, and a commitment to build all the units to a carbon-neutral standard. The following items will be secured in the land development agreement: the CAC contributions, including the timing of their delivery, the commitment to provide two townhouse units as affordable rental units, commitment to the required improvements to the agricultural space, and that they will be completed prior to the occupancy of the townhomes, commitment to provide three two-bedroom units, a commitment to provide a 2.25-meter-tall garage door height, a commitment that none of the units will be provided with natural gas, and that they will be built to a carbon-neutral standard, and a commitment to provide the playground area and provide a public access right-of-way over the trail through the site. So staffer seeking feedback on the proposed housing form and unit mix, the proposed agricultural space and management arrangement, and the community amenity contribution offer, and that council direct staff to bring the proposed rezoning application forward for consideration of first and second reading. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Counsel? Counselor? Thank you. Mr. Daley, I noted in the report that the garage space is not counted in the GFA calculation. And then I started to wonder, is the ground floor below the FCL? Is the FCL sort of one floor up, like it is commonly with a lot of townhouse developments in the valley? And if so, does the balance of the ground floor, which I guess would only be storage theoretically, does that count in the GFA calculation?
Through the chair, the FCL is not that high in this area. I believe it's about 1.5 meters above grade. So the a portion of the ground floor is not, or the garage is exempt from gross floor area calculation. There's also a provision to allow for, I believe it's 12 square meters, a foyer space below the FCL. So the entirety of the ground floor, I do not believe, is exempted from the gross floor area, just the garage and the allowable piece in the floodplain bylaw.
Thanks, Chair. Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. I may not be understanding detention versus retention, but wondering how the water gets into the pond. Is the site required to slope towards the pond, or can someone explain how that how it actually will manage the water during a rain event?
Through the chair, I cannot give you a very good answer for that. I'm not sure. The site will have to be designed so that it manages the stormwater on site and provides a similar release rate to the pre-development conditions. They've obviously done preliminary civil design works to get an idea of what's going to be required on site, and that's where the size of this detention pond has come from. The detailed design of that hasn't been completed at this time because the project has not moved along far enough for those designs to have occurred. But that will take place should this rezoning be successful and the project move to the development permit stage.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure that this was actually going to be a functional, useful thing. Okay, and is it possible to get the no-gas commitment secured into a covenant?
Yes, that is the intention.
Mayor Elliott?
It's good to see the rental units and some of the smaller units come into play here, but I wonder if staff pursued some of different forms of missing middle housing. We're still just seeing duplexes, townhomes, and apartments in Lagers East. This was an area because the flood construction level is not as high that we could start to see a variety of housing forms. And so still curious why we're not asking for those in this area, triplexes, quadplexes?
Through the chair, those discussions did occur. This site is fairly challenging, given the constraints with the hydro right-of-way. And this this form of housing was deemed appropriate and also was able to accommodate the required parking in a more suitable fashion. If other sort of higher forms of density were proposed, it is likely that a lot of that agricultural area would have had to be provided as parking as opposed to agricultural area to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So staff thought that this would be an appropriate form of housing, and it is it is roughly based on the number of, or sorry, the units proposed currently in the Lagers East plan. The majority of the units proposed currently are apartment units, so staff thought it was appropriate to still allow for some more townhouse units proposed. And there is still an opportunity for, you know, less constrained sites in the neighborhood to accommodate different forms of housing, if and when they come forward for redevelopment.
I'm not trying to understand why parking would be an issue if we if we changed Block 6 into a triplex or a quadplex. There's already four units there. So if there's room for four townhomes, how is there not room for a triplex?
Again, the site is quite constrained by the hydro right-of-way and needing to meet the turning radius of fire access on this on this site. Staff did suggest looking at different forms of housing, and the developer did or the applicant did respond by attempting to break up the units fronting Raven so that they were smaller and the massing was reduced, and they were there. It's a block of four and a block of five, I believe. So that was what was proposed. Having a shared parkade might be a little bit more challenging, or there could be a requirement for more parking if a quadplex was proposed. So staff felt that this was an appropriate housing mix as was provided.
Do we have agreement with Squamish Can that they want to take over this agricultural area?
Yes, and I believe Crystal is in attendance. So the Executive Director of Squamish Can is in attendance and happy to answer any questions, should council have any, that they would specifically like to direct to them.
Other questions, counsel? Councilor Herbert?
Thank you. I appreciate the changes made so far, not just by the applicant in changing the layout here, but also the clarification around the the GFA piece was was very was very helpful. And I do like the where we've landed with the agricultural piece, and it makes sense having it the ability to potentially expand further east, I guess. I guess that is, if that opportunity presents itself in future. So my question is around this sort of opportunity presenting itself in future. There's a couple pieces of this that are that, that trail that comes through the property and sort of runs roughly north-south, but along the hydro corridor. I see that being a value when the next property comes forward. And given that it's proximity to the hydro right-of-way, I'm going to assume that it's in a spot that's workable for the next for the next development to the to the south. But do we have any insights into that? Is that something that's? I haven't looked at our development showcase to see if there's something specifically coming in that that next piece. I'm just trying to sort of value the understand the value of these things, or if it's a potential value for, you know, a decade in the future.
Through the chair, so the Lagers East Neighborhood Plan, one of the policies in there identifies securing pedestrian connections, north, south, and east-west where appropriate. There aren't any active development applications on the property to the south or the property to the east, nor have there been preliminary development application meetings. So staffer just thought that this location for the trail was appropriate as it allowed the opportunity for the agricultural use to potentially expand to the east in the future and preserve the potential north-south connection. But obviously, that cannot be completed until the property to the south comes in for development.
Mr. Valeniskas?
Just to add to what Brian said, the other benefit of having the trail there is that it can stay in strata's ownership and maintained by the strata if we're going to subdivide the other lot off and dedicate to the district.
Thank you. And this this pond feature is new for, I think, most, if not all of us. And I was curious about its ability to provide some services for the agricultural area. Has this been explored at all?
Through the chair, it has not been explored at this time, given that it's still quite preliminary in the design phase. I'm not sure if that's possible or not, but I'm sure it will be looked at.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair, just to confirm on the trail, it'll be on strata land, but there'll be a public right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And then did I hear in your presentation that there was a shift in subdividing the farm lot and dedicating that to the district, so it will no longer be strata-owned?
That's correct.
Those are both positive things. I just want to pick up on Mayor Elliott's question. I think that the challenge I still have is with our discussion in the last committee of the whole was around the unit type and the mix of units provided. Appreciate that there's a few two bedrooms that are coming in. But why would staff suggest that there would be an increase in parking requirement if it was a triplex or a fourplex relative to the townhomes? And then also, to follow up on that, I guess, this is an area where it is close to future transit. It's It's relatively walkable. We've seen other developments in this area that have been considered for parking variances. So I'm just curious why we wouldn't pursue perhaps some leniency on the parking requirements if it means that we have a more diverse type of housing form presented on the lot?
Through the chair, so those comments are fair and accurate. Depending on the unit type proposed in the triplex, I suppose it could have the same level of parking. And it's a block of five units. So I guess depending on how you stack them, either vertically or horizontally, they could function the same. So that is a fair comment. Staff thought that providing the updated numbers of the current units that are proposed in active applications in the Lagers East plan highlighted that there was a, or the vast majority were apartments. So it seemed appropriate to maintain the number of townhouse units. And this was the proposal that the applicant came back with. And staff thought it was a reasonable, they had done a reasonable job at trying to address council's comments. And they were not interested in proposing a triplex or a quadplex down there.
Okay, that's helpful. I have one other question. You mentioned in the staff report that this would be eligible for a rental density bonus, but I'm unclear as to how that would work.
So the policy in the Lagers East neighborhood plan allows for a density bonus if a portion of the housing is provided as market rental or affordable rental. They are providing two affordable units and there's no requirement to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Valeniskis, would you wish to offer further comment?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to note that block six is, it would essentially is a fourplex. You know, the triplexes that we're seeing in Squamish, they're essentially in a townhouse form, just a smaller block. So while it would be possible to add a few more of these, I would expect, you know, the overall unit count would have to go down. And that also brings down the developer's ability to provide amenities. So it's a fairly small project and that's why we weren't pushing overly hard to make these blocks smaller essentially.
Beer Elliot.
I'm still concerned about why we're locating the garbage where a garbage truck has to pull well into the development. And we've situated it next to the neighbors versus looking at how we can position it at the entrance there, potentially moving a visitor parking stall further down beside block six, but moving the garbage closer to the agricultural area.
Through the chair, so the kind of, if you're looking at the site plan, there's a hatched blue line. I can share.
You don't want to put it in the hydro right of way?
Yes, that's correct. It has to stay well away from the hydro right of way. And that seemed to be the most reasonable location because a garbage truck could pull right up to the end there, empty those bins and then back, kind of back up into the drive aisle and then turn around and then not have to drive all the way through the development elsewhere.
Where do they turn around? Like they're going to have to back down the road in order to pick up the bins.
Come in just past this lot 40 sign here, pick up. And then they would do a small kind of reverse in front of, in between block two and block five and then turn around and go out.
Mr. Valeniskis, I want to challenge the idea that block six is like a triplex or a quadplex. They're townhomes. And the whole point of a triplex or a quadplex is to have more attainable forms of housing, so smaller, still ground oriented, but not the cost of 1,500 square foot townhome necessarily. So that was, it's housing attainability that we're trying to reach for here as well as a variety of forms. And so all of these lots in this area seem to have challenges. But if we're not pushing for different forms of housing, we're going to get what we've had all along, which is just townhomes. So how do you make the comparison that four townhomes is the same as a triplex? In my mind, they're very different.
Mr. Valeniskis.
Thank you for the question. I fully agree that, you know, the triplex or the fourplex that's proposed here is not what will facilitate an affordable or attainable housing form to fill that missing middle gap that we have. However, they are providing two affordable townhomes. And the triplexes we've seen come up in Squamish, you know, that's the form they're taking. So I think that if we want to see more attainable forms, you know, we have to intervene in the zoning for triplexes to kind of redefine what is a triplex. And I just think that this development is small enough to warrant the offer that they're making with the two affordable units. It would be easier to negotiate these things on a larger site. But it's just, it's quite a constrained site that doesn't have a lot of density on it already.
So the way that we've been providing images to the community on missing middle housing is that a triplex can look like a single family home, but there's three dwelling units inside of it. But you're saying our zoning bylaws not structured in a way to produce that kind of form?
Yes, that's correct. And we have some guidelines. We have development permit guidelines that speak about, you know, trying to make it fit into a single family context. But in practice, it's not working well, I would say. What we've seen a few of these come through development permitting process and they end up looking like giant boxes. So there's got to be some zoning restriction on size, I think, to make them really fit in. And that could also mean that a triplex is just not going to be a viable form for the builders or the developers. We've done a lot of performer work recently, working on the CAC policy. And the margins are quite slim on triplexes with the land values where they are now. So there would have to be some major correction in land values to be able to reduce the sizes and make those developments still viable.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further questions, counsel? Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, just a question on the maintenance of the agricultural space. So appreciate that Squamish Can is willing to take it on. But there's ongoing work there that will be required from them. So I'm just curious about our anticipation as a district in terms of either providing funding to Squamish Can or are we just expecting them to cover the costs of managing that land in the long term? Or is that something that we try and address through a partnership agreement when we provide a lease? Or what does that look like? Have we given that any thought from our side?
Through the chair, so as we've discussed currently, the developer would do the improvements to the agricultural area to make it farmable. It would then be subdivided and donated to the district and the district would provide a long-term lease. So the specifics around that haven't been nailed down yet, but a partnership agreement or something like that could be done. Again, we haven't gotten to that level of detail in the discussions with Squamish Can just yet.
Counselor Pedigal.
Yeah, I just want to understand. So the lot to the east 1015, there's a comment that there's an opportunity for the agricultural area to expand when that eastern lot develops. I'm having trouble from the maps I have in front of me to understand where the hydro right of way and so on is. But that neighboring property, is that also largely under a right of way? And so it's very likely that that would need to be, you know, some non-residential space? Or could that very well be a residential space? And so the likelihood of that being agriculture is fairly low on the neighboring lot.
Through the chair, if you look at the screen again, so you'll see kind of another hatched line going through the adjacent property there. That's the hydro right of way on the other property. So it would be severely limited for what they could do under that area as well. So that might provide an opportunity to further expand the agricultural area should they decide to redevelop in the future.
Mayor Elliott, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, given that we can't put a garbage enclosure in the hydro right of way, how does this farmland, are they allowed to put a shed in to keep their tools? That's okay?
Yes, there is, BC Hydro has a set of guidelines that you, for structures and things that you can put into the hydro right of way. So the developer has already been in discussion with them and has been discussing the proposed improvements. And they're pretty well versed in what types of things you're allowed to put under the hydro right of way.
It's amazing that garbage is not allowed, recycling.
Counsel, if there are no further questions, I wonder if I could suggest that we do a, go around the table with final comments on the three topics that staff is interested in particular in feedback on. The proposed housing form unit mix, the proposed agricultural space and management arrangement, and finally, the community amenity contribution offer. And if I could, I'd like to begin with Counselor Race.
Thank you. And so dealing with the housing forms, I'm fine with the way this has been modified. And we talked about it in other developments at different times over the years that we recognize the need for missing middle and varieties of forms. But for me, that doesn't mean that they're all going to show up in one lot, particularly a lot like this that is quite constrained. And so I think as we're seeing redevelopment in this neighborhood, some of these lots will provide more opportunity for diversity, not quite as constrained by riparian or hydro issues. And also may choose a different form. You know, it may be a problem with some of the vernacular, but triplex for me has always just been like a duplex with three units instead of two. And a fourplex is four and a fiveplex is five, et cetera. And the only real difference between them is the number of common walls, but they're essentially townhouses. So if we're looking at something else, and personally I wasn't thinking of anything else when I heard the term triplex, but if we're looking at something like a three-floor kitzallana rooming house, which was an old house that's now got three separate living units, then I think that will take a zoning bylaw change or at least a subarea plan change if that's the form that we're looking for. And that has its own constraints, as staff pointed out anyway. So I think we want to be clear about that. But I'm fine with what has been proposed here, recognizing that this is a constrained site. Different sizes, I think, is about the extent of the variety we can ask for. The comment I made last time, and I still have it a little bit, is with respect to the street front on Raven. And as I said the last time, this is maybe the first one. And we expect there's going to be more. And so what I'm trying to avoid is Raven looking like a street with a canyon, you know, sort of three and four story buildings going straight down without any kind of variety. And so I appreciate that on Raven, the units have been broken into two and that provides a little variety. And also that these are more DP issues, but I think we should try to head off any problems at this point if we can. But, you know, as we think about the street developing in both sides of the street to provide a little bit of variety, sometimes that's different roof heights. Sometimes it means angling the buildings a little bit differently. Sometimes it's slightly different setbacks from the road, just to break it up a little bit and try to avoid a monolithic thing. And I think the street front is actually more sensitive to the neighborhood than the part in behind, which is basically not on the street front and doesn't have quite the same views. But apart from those comments, I'm fine at this point with seeing that aspect go to the bylaw. The second is with the decision to subdivide off the agricultural area. And I was happy to see that. I mean, you can have a commercial and residential strata mixed in the same strata corporation. It certainly is doable. They're often sort of the place where a lot of conflicts arise of who pays for what and who can do what, where and so forth. And so it is certainly much simpler, I think, in the long term to just take it right out of the strata corporation and deal with it directly with whoever's going to be actually doing the farming. I still have thoughts about this retention pond that I don't want to get hung up on a zoning issue with that. But I think that the idea of stagnant water, it is an interesting question, is how does the water get into it? Does it flow from somewhere else in the site here? Or does it come in by streams? Or are we expecting an overflow from a neighboring stream? And I don't know the answer to that. Maybe the developer doesn't know the answer either. But what I would hate to see is it just turn into a stagnant pond that does really nothing but breed mosquitoes and turn into a mud flat in the summer. So this is going to be the first one. And I think, as I said, I think it's going to be worthwhile spending a little bit of time on how these things might actually function and look and how they might work with water and without water. And does the water actually move through them or does it somehow just evaporate? If it's just going to fill up in October, it might not empty until, well, it was this year, it might not empty until June. And so be kind of a little bit odd. But I think if there is some kind of a flow through it that can go up and down, I appreciate you want to buffer the storm drainage. But I think that takes a little bit of kind of assaging and planting. And if the water is all out of it, is there grass or some kind of aquatic vegetation in the bottom as opposed to just bare mud? So it will be worthwhile. There will be other examples of this. And I think this development is to a certain extent breaking trail for them. So I think we want to pay a little bit of attention to that. But it's, for me, it's not strictly a zoning issue. It's more of a DP issue, I think. And so at this point, I'm prepared to see it go to first reading. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, specific to the comments or the areas of feedback that staff are looking for, I still have a challenge with the proposed housing forms. As I mentioned in my previous comments, appreciate the slight variability in the unit mix that's been provided as well as the offer of the two affordable units that obviously goes a long way. But as I look at the five, six, eight units on Raven Drive, there's, appreciate that they've been broken up into two buildings, but there's very little articulation along Raven Drive and very little variability in form. Appreciate that the renderings are still early on in this stage, that we're not at the DP stage. But they aren't providing the variability that I was looking for based on our previous conversation, to be frank. Appreciate that we can't expect every single developer to provide everything. But I do have this risk in the back of my head that if we don't start pushing for it now, then it's just going to be the last person to the table is responsible for doing everything that's left over. And so that is where my main concern continues to be. I am very happy to see the proposal for the dedicated agricultural and playground area to the district. I think that that is a positive move. And I appreciate the willingness of Squamish Can to engage with the developer and our staff and willingness to take on the management of the area. I think that that will require some further thought in terms of how we support either that organization or any other organization that will be taking on kind of that level of responsibility. We had our asset management discussion this morning. So this is us taking on an asset and we need to think about how we're going to maintain and operate it in the long term and how we're setting funding aside for that. And generally on the community amenity contribution offer, I think it is fair as per our current policy. So those are my comments on those three points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. So on the proposed housing form and unit mix, I appreciate the revision effort that's been made by the developer. And I find myself agreeing with my colleagues on both sides around design personality, lines, curves. It does seem a little bit generic at this point. And I also share Counselor Race's concern about just a line of buildings down Raven. I don't think we want to see that on this street. And really that will come down to future development and encouraging future developers in this area to bring that potential personality to those oncoming projects. And then so I want to get the phrase classic townhouse into the conversation as well. What I see here is classic townhouses. And I think we're missing an opportunity to bring some design personality into this project. And I And, uh, I, I get the constraints that we're faced with here with the power lines and, um, the riparian areas. Uh, so I, I, I think that, uh, we're in a position where this is what we're going to get. Uh, and we'll have to rely on future developments for that design personality. And also a, a better mix of the number of bedrooms, um, in the units. So if I move to the proposed agricultural space and the management arrangement there, I think that this is a great plan and I'm happy that, um, the, um, uh, food council folks or the food policy folks are, are involved along with, um, Ken. When we originally talked about this, um, with the, the pond, uh, I was thinking that it should have water all year. And then after some contemplation and, and thoughts that were shared last time around by Counselor Penningill, I'm, I'm moving off of that and, um, reassessing thinking that it, I, I don't think it's that important that that needs to have water in it all year long. I'd, I'd rather that it be functional and serve a natural purpose as opposed to it having water all year long, just because that looks good. Uh, community amenity contribution offer, it exceeds the policy. And with that being the case, I'm thankful for the generosity of the landlord. Thanks.
Mayor Elliott.
Thank you Chair. Um, on the housing mix, um, I'm uncomfortable that in our neighborhood planning, we're talking to the community about missing middle housing, but we're not actually building it. And apparently it'll be very challenging to do that. So I think there's a disconnect there and, and that's up to counsel to fix through other policy discussions. But if that's the case, then, then we need to start addressing that sooner rather than later. So, uh, my other concern on this layout is that half the lot has houses fronting the street and the other half has a road and a parking lot and a playground. So I think if there's a way to move more of that parking to the back near the detention pond and move the agricultural area up, um, uh, to surround more of the park and put a covered shelter um, on next to the roadway, I think that would be provide more interaction for the community and opportunity to people to talk to farmers about what they're farming, rather than tucking it back and, and away from the street. I just think that the visual parking lot on half this lot is pretty unbecoming. And there are some potential tables or covered structures, but I think those could actually, uh, go to the front. So that people could stop, um, uh, right off the, the sidewalk there. And, um, I think it's important to make sure that there's some level of fencing there to keep people out of the agricultural area. But trying to make it approach the street would be, in my mind, a better, a better option. Appreciate the addition of the rental housing, um, and the smaller sizes. I think the agricultural space being subdivided and provided to the district is a much better option. Appreciate that the CAC now includes the improvements to the agriculture area. I think that makes sense so that Squamish can doesn't have to raise that money on their own. But I would like to capture a covered space in there. Otherwise, we go to first reading. Thanks Chair.
Counselor Herbert.
Thank you. Um, I think the, on the first point, which is the, um, the housing forms and, and unit mix, I think we're a lot better than the first time that we saw this. So, um, and, um, I, I would like to see somewhere, somewhere soon and on our horizon, some of these, um, missing middle forms that, um, however, our policy, um, apparently isn't, isn't supporting that. So that's perhaps, um, that's an issue, I think, for, for us to tackle, uh, rather than this, um, particular, um, development. So the mixes, the mixes, um, I think is, is acceptable, but I'm not particularly excited about it, but it does fit our policy. So I will, I'm okay there. I'm appreciative of the, um, the rental units, um, uh, being part of this. I think that's, um, a, a key part. The, as others have said, the, um, the agricultural land, um, and the way that it's proposed to be addressed here, I think is, is great. And I think it's the correct way, um, way forward and, uh, I was happy to see, um, happy to see that. And, um, the agricultural, um, sorry, the, the funds to sort of get that up and, up and running, being part of the CAC, I think, is, is appropriate. And, um, and the rest of the package fits, um, policy. So I'm happy to see that. And that covers your three points he asked for.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, a few things, um, um, understanding the, the GFA better and how the garages aren't, uh, counted in that. I'm a little more comfortable with the, the form, housing form mix than we heard last time. But I, I will note, and just for our previous presentation, we keep on saying we need a mode shift. We need to reduce vehicle dependence. We've talked about the health and social benefits of people walking and biking. We know we have a housing crisis and yet what I'm hearing is that our, our parking requirements are, are making, having different housing forms really challenging. And, um, you know, we are building another development that is, is really car, quite car focused again. And, and so I think, um, you know, I, I hear the conversation in the community. I think maybe as a district, we need more community discussions that people better understand the trade offs we're making when we require so much parking. Because I think in the end, we're actually working against all of our goals, even those who have concerns about traffic and parking, when we add more onsite parking, we create more parking demand and just those even parking problems that get people frustrated, we're making worse. So I think we, we really need to advance that discussion so people understand the trade offs. Cause I don't think we're making great decisions here. But I think, uh, while those parking requirements are in place, I, I think we are somewhat restricted or I can accept we are somewhat restricted in the, in the different forms we can have here. So, um, I, I think I appreciate the changes that have been made within the, the rules that we have. Appreciate the willingness to have a covenant on no gas. And, and again, it's really exciting to see, uh, Squamish and the developers in Squamish really, uh, starting to address the, the climate crisis. On the agricultural piece, uh, really happy to see, uh, some of the discussions with Squamish can and the idea of having this here. I, I do agree with the mayor's point of hiding the parking, but looking at the shape of the lot, I worry, does that end up giving us a really irregular agricultural polygon? And then does that make the agricultural more difficult? So agree with the, the concept and just want to make sure that we're not making the agricultural piece really difficult if we go down that road. Um, on, on the pond, um, I, I think, you know, for aesthetics, it's, it's not important, uh, understand, you know, we should do something to manage the water on the site. Uh, but hearing the agricultural, uh, aspirations there, let's think about irrigation and are there different solutions? And I think, you know, I, I don't want to mandate a pond, but, uh, water management and irrigation are things we should be thinking about. I do want to be careful about standing water, especially with climate change and mosquitoes and, and West Nile and Dengue fever and all those things that are migrating here. I, I think, you know, we, we have to be careful about standing water. And so does it make sense to have a, a water tower for irrigation purposes with solar panels on the roof? And another not for profit wants to be involved in that, I, I don't know. But, uh, let's, as we move forward, be sort of flexible and, and open to, to different ideas here. It doesn't have to be a pond. In terms of the, uh, CACs, um, it, it looks like it's meeting the policy, so I'm happy with those. And so, um, happy to see this go to, uh, first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, uh, regarding the housing forums, uh, I'm happy with revisions that have been made. I acknowledge the constraints in the site and in where we're at in, um, our evolving policies uh, to deliver goals with respect to variety of housing forms and housing attainability. But I'm happy with what we've arrived for this, uh, on this respect. Regarding the proposed agricultural space, uh, it is great that we have the advice, the leadership and the stepping forward of Squamish can. Uh, they have introduced, uh, and defined, uh, in some, in some ways, an agrahood concept. However, I would suggest that the agrahood concept should itself, uh, be seen to evolve or we should let it evolve. Similar to our goals with the housing, the housing forums, uh, we would like to see an evolution that will be timely enough for this future street, street scape of Raven Drive. Uh, in the case of the agricultural, um, uses, uh, we may have a opportunity in neighboring properties, two neighboring properties. While there has not been an application come forward yet for 1014 Finch, there has been some active visioning for that property with respect to, uh, food growing and gardening. We have an increasing population in Squamish, living in townhomes, apartments and confined spaces. And we're going to have a need not only for food production, but for healthy living space, for private social space in a garden context, gardening context, provide those opportunities. So I'd like to suggest, and this is not with respect to this project, but in our ongoing discussion of agrahoods, if you like, that we should acknowledge that and look for diversity of forms and the continued exploration of different forms of tenure and types of gardening. And that food production can be misleading. I think there's other values that we will need to incorporate in these types of landscapes. Finally, on the community amenity contribution, uh, offer, I will only, uh, add one comment and I made it before. We should be careful that the, uh, the northeast to southwest, uh, trail, multipurpose trail under the power lines was put forward as a concept in the Loggers Lane East Neighborhood Plan. There are a number of issues that have arisen, uh, since regarding how it could be realized. Uh, to the north of the area, we have wetland and we are not going to be introducing a multipurpose trail through that wetland. To the south, we have several properties, the owners of which and observers, uh, of which have commented, this isn't really realizable. Uh, we have real hardship cases as to, uh, the land use opportunities on neighboring properties. And it, we just, I just want to us to be cautious about assuming this northeast to southwest trail corridor. And maybe it's not needed and maybe there's going to be some real challenges in trying to realize it in particular into the property to the south, uh, for very understandable reasons. Uh, I'll leave my comments at that. We have then our staff recommendation, uh, the report to be received with the feedback noted. Staff, if you have any further questions or comments, uh, I take it we're satisfied that you, we've delivered what we can to you. Uh, and finally, the staff bring forward a, to a regular meeting, the 1005, 1009 Raven Drive rezoning application for consideration of first and second reading. Do I have a mover for that? Counselor Herbert, a seconder? Uh, Counselor Race, thank you. Any opposed? Or sorry, uh, excuse me, any comments? Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Uh, I will not be supporting the motion. I was willing to consider first reading, but I think there were a number of comments that I would have liked to see addressed before it came back for first and second. Thank you.
Other comments, counsel? Counselor Penningill?
Just a, a process question because it's a committee of the whole and so on. Uh, is that a, a valid amendment to, uh, just amend it to propose just first reading?
Counselor Herbert?
I don't know that I want to answer that procedural question, but when something comes for first and second reading, moving first reading at that time is appropriate course of action we've seen in the past. So I think it leaves it open to that and I don't know that we can or need to dictate that it's just first reading at that point.
Counselor Herbert, I've understand you, are you suggesting or asking whether we should just limit it to a first reading in, in our motion here? Are you putting that forward as a motion?
No, I was just saying that in my, in moving this, um, for consideration of first and second reading, giving it for, uh, only first reading at that, at that time is, is a known outcome of things that are for consideration of first and second reading. So I don't see a need to, uh, specifically amend it. But if, uh, if others feel differently, then, uh, we can entertain that.
Counselor Race.
Thank you. I, I agree with Counselor Herbert. And from my mind, whether it's first reading or first and second reading, uh, almost doesn't make any difference because we very often see something come before us for first and second reading and only pass first reading. And so from my perspective, it's going to depend on what changes and reactions to the comments will actually end up in the bylaw. Uh, whether we give it first reading or first and second reading. So I'm happy to start off with first and second reading. But we can always at that night, uh, we can always just, uh, reel it back into first reading only if we want to.
Further comments? Uh, do we have a second or then for the motion to, uh, for first and second reading? That was Counselor Race. Sorry, Counselor Race. I'm bouncing between the screen and the room here. Thank you. Then, uh, any opposed? Motion carried. Counsel, I see that our delegation that will be, uh, presenting to us after lunch is here. And I would like to ask Mr. Sherlock, uh, who's in the building, whether he would be happy to come to us at 10:00 after 1:00, giving us a full half hour for lunch. So if we could reconvene at 10 minutes after 1:00. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back to our committee, the whole meeting for June 14th. We are delighted to have in our gallery, uh, full gallery of Squamish's most active citizens who happen to be seniors. We have next up on our agenda, a presentation from the Senior Center Society. Mr. Vesely, I take it you are the lead presenter. Uh, you will introduce then your colleagues and I'll just advise, we've, we've budgeted a half an hour for this, uh, part of the program. Uh, we encourage you to limit your presentation to 10 to 15 minutes because we most certainly would wish to have a full discussion.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Chair, Chair Eric. And members of council, staff and guests. We wish to thank the mayor for asking for this presentation back on January 24th. Uh, I am Herbert Westerly, a president of the Squamish Senior Center Society. It's a great show of faith to allow us here today with so little information given to you. Only except to tell you that the topic of the presentation is where have we been? Where are we now? And where would you, where would you like, where we would like to be going? And with this, I will turn it over to Mike Sherlock behind me somewhere and Francois Morel on the side. They're both members of our board and they're going to do the presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Sherlock, Mr. Morel.
Now it's on? Yeah, good. Okay. I, I should mention that, uh, Francois is a new member in Squamish. He came in and just got involved with the senior center, uh, with the senior society and big help. So we're getting some good people coming in. So anyway, good afternoon, everyone. And thank you for your time today. I'd like to ask you to keep your questions, obviously, and comments till after the presentation. It should only take about 10, 11 minutes. And, uh, you may find some of the questions will be answered anyway by what we say. We'll be presenting on behalf of the Squamish Senior Center Society and the seniors community of Squamish as a whole. And we start with a brief history of the society. It was incorporated in 1993. They met in the old hydro building. And it was maintained by the district and operated solely by the seniors. And throughout the time there, numbers increased, the membership grew, which created a problem. It meant that they had to have many of the activities outdoors on the parking lot. It's fascinating to see some of them sitting out there having their meals. Previous councils, though, recognizing the need of larger premises, allocated funds and space for the construction of a freestanding building to be built on the old BC rail property for the new senior center. This was later amended to being a shell within the residential building that was being built by Solterra. On September the 16th, 2009, at the official ribbon cutting ceremony, Mayor Greg Gardner proclaimed the seniors of Squamish now have a home of their own. Seniors were heavily involved throughout the whole process. They generated large amounts of money from donations by individuals and businesses. They generated large amounts of money from donations by individuals and businesses, raising the stunning amount of $80,000. And they purchased much of the furnishings and equipment for the center with that. In addition, they worked for many days with an architect with senior center experience and through the charrette process for designing and planning their new home. Not to mention hours of work setting it all up and getting it ready for action. They poured their hearts, their minds, their bodies, their spirits, and their love into making it a beautiful environment for Squamish seniors. And as a result, they enjoyed many activities in their new home. And some of them are shown on there. Notice the happy faces, the high number, and the variety of participants that were involved. And they were heavily involved, because they used senior volunteers in the kitchen during those early days. But who would have believed it would only last for eight short years? In 2015, we approached Mayor Patricia, Patricia Heitzman and Tim Hoskin, seeking their support to help us increase the amount of hours that we could have our programs to include evenings and weekends for seniors. What followed was the Recreation Department conducted community surveys, community meetings. They also hired a paid consultant to lead the meetings and to direct the content. They then shaped those results to satisfy the Recreation Department need for space for younger age programs. They began by lowering the age to include 55-plus participants. Later, it was expanded to be 19-plus, all of which resulted in removing focused senior programming at the center. It was also deemed necessary to remove the title "senior" from the building signage by creating the theory that this was the reason why people didn't want to go there. I can only ask you, since when did senior become a threat to our community? But it was deemed that it should change. They then presented this biased summary to council as a way to revitalize the center. And the rest is history. Instead of the implied revitalization plan that we were asking for for senior program, we got this. We got less hours. The nine to five, Monday to Friday hours we were getting for senior programming was reduced to nine to four, Monday through Friday. And at one time, this was to be Monday through Thursday. They started out by proposing that from 4:00 PM daily, it would now be opened up to include programs for the ages 19-plus age groups, including Saturday and Sunday programs. However, that's now changed to include the teens, not only the teens, but the very young children. They have children going there now. What started as a plan for us to increase the senior activities suddenly turned into dramatically reducing them. I guess somebody had heard the word "less is more," but we don't see it the same way. So you can imagine the disappointment and frustration we felt when this happened. So what has been the outcome, though, of all of that presentation and work? Well, this is what it looks like now. And these photos were only taken a couple of weeks ago, in the middle of the day. Quite spontaneously, we didn't time it, we just walked in and took these photos. You can see the marked negative results compared to the revitalization program that we were trying to look for. Does it look revitalized to you when you see that? Even to the most cynical person, you'd have to say no. In the new center, seniors have experienced the unavailability of space. As an example, earlier this year, we couldn't even get the room we'd always held our board meetings in. Why? It was unavailable. Even though it was empty, it was not available. Squamish Arts Council, you see, had recently begun, given a five-year lease, granting them uncontrolled access. They get 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, but they have unlimited use of that room. We couldn't use it for our meeting, even though it sits largely unused for most of the year. And they get it for $1 per year. You might say, "They did what?" Well, at least it isn't free. They have to pay $1 a year. It may seem like I'm being a bit cynical on this too, but however, it bothers me to see such inequities like this being afforded to others when our seniors need to pay fees for things like drop-ins, drop-in programs. They charge $5 per visit, per visit for quilting, sewing, painting, even though they don't get anything for it, they just have the use of the room. And if the same benefits were afforded to the seniors that were given to other people, I'm sure we'd see an increase in all of our programs. Seniors are going through the same high cost of living that we're all going through, everybody's going through. They don't get pay increases either to, to help them. But why should you care about seniors? Well, if you considered what you'd do without them, do you realize that seniors contribute a lot to our community? For example, they raised recently $25,000 to replace the sod on the bowling greens that were left unattended by the district a few years ago, and it was not usable anymore. They raised the money to replace that sod for them. And let's look at three other examples of senior activities in what they, and probably go a lot unacknowledged and not even noticed by many people, but Squamish Men's Shed. They built the gardening boxes and other items throughout town. You know, they do things like that. The senior smoothers are making our trails more usable. And an individual by the name of Ian Brown, he's a retired teacher. And he goes and entertains his shut-ins at Hiltop House, Shannon Falls, and the seniors, as well as many other locations around town, making people's lives happier and more joyful. Well, let me ask you this question each one of you all says. Have you ever thought of going to the men's shed and telling them how much you appreciate what they do? Or let the senior smoothers know how more accessible or how beautiful the trails are after all their hard work? Or express gratitude to Ian for doing so much that the elders of our town? I don't know. Maybe these small gestures would make their lives and yours a little brighter, knowing that they're appreciated. And in conclusion, we're going to ask, why not start showing appreciation to the seniors for all that they're doing as well? You saw that in 2009, we were told that the center was our home. How can you sit back now and let the promises of your predecessors be broken so flippantly? We're not asking for something outlandish. Just have our promised home back again. We need a place to meet our friends, to enjoy remaining years in our own familiar surroundings, to play, exercise, learn, and relax in. A place that's supported by our leaders. At this time, everything we want to do has to go through the Rec Department for approval. There needs to be two staff members in the center when the building's open. In my mind, that must be one of the worst jobs you can have, and also it's completely unnecessary. The Rec Department have made all the, have to make all the decisions of what programs, what rooms, what times and dates we can have. They have to improve the instructors and the charges, everything. Staff at the Rec Department are busy. We understand that. But we are losing volunteers for leading the programs because of it. It takes too long to process. It's frustrating, and it's time-consuming, and it's also costly to the district, because the staff is being paid. And if it takes a lot longer, it costs a lot more. It needs to improve. How? Let us do it. Let the seniors do it for themselves. All you need to do is give the senior center back to them to be their home. We were let down by the belief that the Squamish Senior Center would always be our home. But I guess that promise was not written in stone. Oh, yes, it was. Thank you. Thanks for listening. And now open the floor.
Very briefly, Mr. Vasily, as I'm sure that counsel wishes, does wish to engage you with in discussion.
Sure. Thank you. We were asked on several occasions before this presentation to share with district staff the content of our presentation, and we respectfully declined. Now you can see why we declined. Because what we are asking for is beyond the level of district employees. It is council as the management group that has to make a decision. We want you to return the senior center to the seniors. We are asking council for this change in direction so we may fulfill our mandate. And our mandate was established in 2009 to advise and assist in the operation of a center for the recreational, educational, and social activities for the seniors of Squamish and area. Prior to opening of a new senior center in 2009, we were asked if we wanted to run the center ourselves. We made the grave mistake of declining. We had an excellent working relationship with staff in those days, and we said, "You run it." We would like to correct that mistake now. Over the past five years or so, we encountered just too many roadblocks to carry out our mandate. We are asking that consideration be given to operating the senior center in a manner consistent with the interest of seniors as it is done in a number of communities. Take Sea Shelt, take North Vancouver, take Delta, South Delta, to name just a few. But an operational model that we're looking for actually exists right here. And it is the youth center, or as you now call it, the Foundry See the Sky. This new operational model would not only serve the seniors better, but it would save you tax dollars, because we would involve, again, seniors in the operation, as you do in these municipalities I just told you about. You walk in the West Van, you meet seniors at the desk, you don't meet staff. We are ready to respond to any questions or comments you may have, and including, hopefully, Mr. Chair from the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasily. We have heard from you not only perspectives, in my view, from my perspective, but also information, which may not be, which, which is also important for us to consider. Counsel, do you have any questions for our delegation?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, the one thing, it is interesting, the mention of the Foundry, because, you know, our community has grown, we have a lot of pressures, a lot of needs, and we had the opportunity for West Winds. And I know that's been a point of contention to some degree. But much like the Foundry and, and the building there, there's a lot of government grants and a lot of opportunity to provide space. And it's, in my perspective, not the ideal location for the youth center, and there's been a fair number of compromises there. But, you know, with the grants and all the pressures across our community, we found some way to make that work and take advantage of those upper level of government grants. And in my mind, what happened at the West Winds is similar, where we're able to capture 240-some-odd units of more affordable units for seniors. There's a space where it had to be in the lower section, seniors only. And, and so I think, my understanding, part of what we're trying to do is make leverage of that and the grants and the affordable housing, sort of take advantage of all those opportunities, if they're not perfect. And then, and, you know, keep using the 55 activity for seniors as well. My understanding was that staff and seniors were working together on a way to make both of those facilities work together. So I guess what I'm curious about is, as you're talking about, you know, some of the things you raised, how do you see that fitting into the picture, that facility, where we're not sort of losing the, the benefits that we've had as a community with, with those upper level of government grants, which I think are really important, that we don't sort of lose those opportunities as well?
Well, the big problem there is that it's limited to what you can do. It's one single room, so you can only run one program at a time. And it's also limited hours till 4 o'clock again. It didn't answer a problem that we had before, which was trying to get evenings and weekends. And in my opinion, to take away something that belongs to one group or was dedicated to one group to satisfy another one, that, you know, you're going to keep doing that forever and ever. If it, if it all comes down to grants, you know, you have to try and find some other way of doing it, because the seniors are getting forgotten at the expense of the young children, like the small children and the teens. And the programs are just not being available, or the space is not being available when we need to use it. You know, we have to dictate, we're being dictated to by too many other people. And, you know, our problem was not the space. We had lovely space there. We didn't need to change it, but they made it where they wanted to use it for the children. And it was stated in their revitalization program, you know, that that was the case. And they just keep whittling down the ages, you know? I mean, there'll be prebirth next, you know, if it goes any lower. And I say that jokingly.
Follow-up, Counselor Peddigan?
Yeah, sorry, if I can clarify, I guess, you know, again, I understand some of the points of contention and, and, you know, I think we've made the decision that we need to take advantage of those grants, and we've got 240-plus more affordable units for seniors, so that is something done specifically for seniors. But sort of regardless of those decisions and, and, you know, how we feel about them, now we have the Activity 55, and we have this space, which is exclusive for seniors. And, and so I'm just curious to hear your thoughts or feedback or ideas about how those two facilities come into the picture. Because I've sort of heard about the 55 activity, but I haven't heard the other facility and how that fits in with things, because we do have that now. And so I'm just wondering, you know, what is your thinking about how those two pieces work together?
Can you speak to this?
Yes, please do.
The new facility was created... And we were not consulted, contrary to the agreement we had, which we had with the mayor at the start 2008, that we are to be the consulting group, that we are supposed to be consulted on anything happening to the 55, which was the senior center. We were not consulted. It was decided to go ahead. After it was all done, we were called into a meeting, and it was presented to us. Feta comple. Here's the space, great space, we need more space, because the senior center is underutilized, we need more space. That makes a lot of sense to us. So the space was created without our input. The floor in the activity room is not sprung, it's not suitable for exercises by seniors. The kitchen is a homestyle kitchen, not suitable for activities that we're involved in. You can't serve groups of dinners or lunches from there. So we basically are saying, "We don't need the space. Give us our 55, and you can do with the space what you would like to do, because you're paying $400,000 for it over 10 years." That's not a grant, that's our tax money that you decided to spend. We don't need it. The 55 is perfectly suitable for us. Please give us back our home.
Excuse me, I'm going to go to Mayor Elliott. Just because of the, our time constraints this afternoon, I'll, we'll, Mr. Vasily has, between, yes, okay. I'll go to Mayor Elliott now, please.
My question is for Mr. Vasily, actually. When we met earlier this spring with the board, I suggested that it would take some time to make sure that the relationship was building back and was stronger. And do you think that just the few months that have passed has been enough time to do that?
The relationship has deteriorated over the past six years or so. And we have a list of facts that I can give you. If you take five minutes, I'll read them to you. And they haven't changed. And we don't see them changing.
My question, though, is, do you think it's been enough time over the last few months to rebuild from, from that list, which I'm familiar with? But do you think... But do you think that we've had enough time to do that in good faith?
I think we have given it all the time we need. And it's not just the last few months. We've tried for the last five, six years to make this work. With the present management, we couldn't make it work, unfortunately. Management has told us that they will not share their thoughts with us. You know that? That was told to Mike. And that's the basis of our relationship. That's the relationship. They basically did what they wanted all along. They went ahead with programming changes, bringing in young kids with tutus running around in the senior center, no consultation with us. And we don't think it's going to change because your management hasn't changed. So yes, we think we're done with this particular group.
So it's important in council chambers that our staff... We respect our staff. We don't throw them under the bus. Our staff do a really good job for us. They work very hard. And the changes have been at the direction of council. And so this wasn't the presentation I asked for. I asked the Senior Center Society to give some thought to what the future looks like. But I don't think today's presentation necessarily did that. And again, council may set policy, but the day-to-day work happens with our staff. And so I hope that the board will continue in best efforts to build that relationship with our staff. They're our staff. They work on these facilities. And so I think that's a really important piece of this relationship building, is that the policy direction has come from broad community engagement and council decisions, and will continue to be done from that lens. We know that there are still issues with the use at the 55, but in the short term, we do need to share that facility until we can rebuild other facilities, which we're working on very diligently. So I think that's a really important element here, is that it's not potentially forever, but it is while we are building back our facilities for the broader community. So it is a balance, and I think council has been trying to strike that. But it requires everyone to be working in good faith and building the relationship. And I don't think today's presentation necessarily did that. I can hear the concerns, and I think staff were working in that direction. This is some additional feedback that they can take on board. But I don't, I don't think today was particularly helpful, although I understand that we still have some things to address, and I'm happy to discuss that going forward. But I think where we should go today is to refer this conversation to staff, which is where it belongs.
Staff needs to be involved at a higher level than what we're presently working with. Present staff is not responsive to our needs. We need to see a change, and the change was proposed today. The change is to return the 55 to the seniors. We can go through the long list of grievances, but I know you said you know them all, you don't want to hear them. We will put them in the newspaper, you can read about it. But we are firm in the, in the concept of giving the senior center back to the seniors. Do you have other facilities that you're paying for, and you can use them in any way you think is necessary? But we don't want tutus in the senior center. We no longer want under 19 in the senior center.
Mr. Basely, I have a question for you, but I'm first going to refer to our CAO, Linda Glenday, who may wish to offer a comment at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to intervene. As Mayor Elliott has said, I also am hearing the concerns, and this is not the place to be pointing out particular staff members and your challenges with them. So I would ask that that please stop, and we can talk about the issue, not the staff. And I'm here to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Basely, the question I wanted to raise is the matter of a senior strategy for the community. In your presentation, Mr. Sherlock's presentation, you referred to, very usefully, to the youth center facility, the new youth center facility, as something of a local model that we can learn from. The youth, we undertook in, the district undertook during 2019, 2020, a youth strategy.
Yes.
Some of its elements, I'll quote from its terms of reference, "to align capacity with demand for spaces, improving working partnerships, current and future needs of youth, of seniors, engagement in decision-making, spaces, programs, health and wellness, transitioning." I've just quoted from our youth strategy terms of reference.
Right.
My question to you, Mr. Basely, is, has the Senior Center Society given some thought to working with us or pursuing other avenues, which you may be able to identify, towards producing a senior strategy for Squamish? One of the other themes of your presentation is autonomy. And in the undertaking of such a strategy, there may be opportunity for autonomy on the part of the seniors community in undertaking such a strategy. Have you given this some attention?
Not in great detail. Because unless council sees fit to direct staff to start discussions on turning the 55 back to the seniors, there's no point in going in a lot of details. But what we are looking at and what we know about is how other senior centers in the Lower Mainland are operated, and we like their model. The actual funding remains to be responsibility of a taxpayer, but the seniors are involved in fundraising and contribute to that. The seniors are involved in operations of the center, so reducing your staffing costs. The only stuff we see necessary, basically, that you provide in the future is maintenance and cleaning of the facility. We would run it. We would run it with volunteers and one paid director. And the director would be appointed by the body that you appointed to run the 55. For example, the Cedar Sky Community Services Group could run it. They appoint a director, and we take it from there. That's the concept. We haven't worked on the details. That's a matter of future discussions.
Council, any further questions or observations to pass on to our guests?
Just like to move receipts and that we refer to staff for follow-up, if required.
Councilor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. I want to thank you all for being here today and for your presentation. And I hear the frustration. Although I do want to challenge the assertion that we don't care about seniors, I think that that is really hurtful to hear. I think the piece that I'm really struggling with is that, as a community, we are growing so quickly, and we have a significant infrastructure deficit. We have a lack of space. And so across the board, we've made the decision through our real estate and facilities master plan that all of our facilities need to be shared for the next little while so that we can maximize them across all of our users. I understand that that's frustrating for the seniors, but we've also at the same time been able to produce some level of senior-specific space in a brand-new build under the West Winds. And so while I understand and I hear the frustration that that doesn't feel like it's a complete solution, I do hope that it is enough for the working time being that we can build off of that and look to the future and build something more substantial and sustainable for everybody in the long term. But there's a lot of give that has to be given at the moment across all of our user groups. And we don't have as much space as we would like. And so I appreciate the presentation. I hear the challenge. And I urge you to continue to work at amending the relationship with our staff and with this body, this governing body, so that we can continue to vision what the future looks like and build on that together. Because right now, it's a really challenging time. It's a challenging time for the seniors. It's a challenging time for our youth. It's a challenging time for our firefighters, who don't have the space that they need in their fire halls. And so there's a bigger picture here that we're working towards in terms of revitalizing all of our facilities. And it's straining the community, but it's also something that we hear and we're working on. And so I hope that that is maybe not the perfect answer, but I hope you hear it loud and clear that this doesn't mean that we don't care about the seniors. It means that we're working on some really difficult balancing decisions and trying to make it work for everybody in the time being. And we know we don't have enough. So I'll leave my comments at that, and thank you for your time today.
Councilor Peddinger?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to mention a few things as well. Again, I hear and understand the frustration. I want to, there's a couple of questions, and I wasn't aware of the Trail Smoothing, and that's fantastic. Really glad to hear about that and very much appreciate that. MenShed have been to a number of the events of, I think, a few of us, I know I have, have called them out at council meetings when we talk about, you know, what's happened during the week, and thank them, and what the MenShed is doing is fantastic, and they have been recognized. I think the West Winds, like, we are in a housing crisis, and 240-some-odd affordable units is something that we have to, as a community, find a way. And we did find a way to take advantage of that. It came with some space that for, unfortunately, the limitations on how we could use that mean that is exclusively for use for seniors, which gives us fewer options with what we can do. But I think I said in previous meetings, and it is still my feeling, that that does not mean that has to be the exclusive place for seniors. I think I also said in previous meetings that recognizing the sprung floor and some of the investments of the seniors at the 55 and so on, I was understanding, though, over the last few months, and continuing, the seniors were working with our staff to figure out how we make sure that that gets recognized, that there's appropriate use, and that we're using all of these facilities the best we can. And so I hope that that continues. And if that work hasn't started or has gotten stalled, I would like to hear how we can uninstall it. But I think we need to expect that we have a mix of facilities. None of them are perfect. The new youth center is not perfect. We're doing the best we can as a community. So how do we, as a community, get together and find a way to maximize the use? And, you know, not just say, "Look, the more any of us dig in our heels, the more difficult we're going to have facing our challenges as a community." And I really share the frustration. When I see any of our facilities, whether it's the 55 or anywhere else, inactive at this time, that really concerns me. And that is a very valid concern. And that's why I hope that the seniors and our staff are getting together and figuring out how to get that place active. And so I hope we can, you know, move forward and figure out how to do that. Just want to make another comment. You know, in the staff reports of the surveys, but also in personal conversations with people I've had, some people are adamant that there must be an exclusive-only seniors space where there are no young kids. And then other seniors I talked to are adamant. They absolutely love having the kids here. And so there is a diversity of opinions among the seniors community. And so I think that's one of the other things that I'm wrestling with and trying to understand. I'm hoping the seniors and staff are figuring out how do we accommodate those different perspectives within the seniors community? And on a similar note, we have a large number of Sikh seniors and Indigenous seniors. And so how are those things being, those groups being represented in our plans? And again, I was sort of hopeful that today we would start seeing the initial feedback and ideas and thoughts about that. And so I'm hoping as we move forward, addressing all of these challenges, these are some of the things we'll start to see some discussion and some ideas around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peddinger. Councilor Herford?
Thank you. I was referring to some notes, so I got my dates right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I attended the meeting on end of February, it was the 28th, between staff and the society. And I was, I left that meeting with some hope that, that... And even just creating that opportunity for direct dialogue with staff and as well as elected leaders would instigate some change and hopefully signal a reset on this, on this relationship as we work forward. And some things came to mind and, or came to light sort of during that, those conversations that needed to be addressed, and also some things around challenges around timelines and scheduling of, you know, materials around programming. And these things were all sort of things that needed to be identified, needed to be worked on with staff and your organization. And so I'm disappointed that that doesn't seem to have had the effect that I was hoping we were. And I hope everybody in the room at that time was hoping that it was. And I think as we work towards improving the state of affairs, I think that working towards having the 55 or the building in question, the senior center, the 55, I won't get into the semantics around that, I think would be great if we could get to a point where the seniors could run it as, you know, as proposed. Although obviously, it's light on details, and there's a bunch of details to work on. So I think that identifying a pathway to that is valuable because we can't, with the commitments that have been made there, for better, for worse, the commitments that have been made in the space already, would take some time to undo. And there would be some time, there's a time between now and the future state. And I think it's important to understand what the steps and implications are for everybody involved, from a budgetary standpoint to responsibilities that the society would be taking on or whatever the other entity was, as mentioned, Cedar Sky Community Services or some other. So I'm interested in figuring out how we can move in that direction, what the timeline would be, could be on that. But that will take some staff analysis. And that's what our staff does. It's not, that's not a unique to an entity that has some friction with our staff that we're going to need to have staff work on it. That's true with anything that we take on here. So, and I'm hoping that that's something that we can work on together to figure out how far away that future, that future state is. And as mentioned around the table already, we do have some serious challenges with our facilities. And both a facility bursting at the seams and a facility sitting underutilized drive me a little crazy. And there's an interesting combination of the two from time to time across the municipality, including the facility in question. So I do note that in an hour or so, we'll be discussing Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan in more depth. And I think I would encourage some of you to either tune in when you get home or to stick around for that discussion. It'll really sort of show that greater context of the things that we're trying to do. And, you know, and there are missteps along the way, and there is a future state where things could be dramatically different. And I think we need to work on the steps along the way to get there. So maybe we can work towards some sort of... I don't want to put out how many-year plan that is.
Thank you, Councilor Herford.
Some kind of... Am I, is that time for me? Thank you. I got the hook?
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. And in doing so, I really see this as a relationship issue. And I want to be clear that, from my perspective, we care. The seven people at this table, or in the case of Councilor Race at home today, we do care. And I'll speak for myself in emphasizing why I care. And why I care is because when I look out into the gallery, I see from my youth, my soccer coaches, my baseball coaches. I see teachers who taught me and my sister, my brother. I see an individual who, in my house, is referred to simply as the mayor. And when my nine-year-old child said, "Oh, I saw the mayor today," even though she wasn't the mayor at the time, we knew exactly who that person was. And these are the people that led me and my family through my young years. And I care about them because of that. And I also care because they're the friends of my parents. We're talking of the people who shaped me in my young years. And I have a relationship with a lot of seniors in this community who have stuck it out in our town and have opted not to move to Powell River, Vernon, or whatever Squamish 2.0 city you have in mind. So this is what I see as the number-one issue here. It's not facilities, it's not buildings, it's not walls and furniture, it's relationship. And I'm hoping that by referring this to staff today, we will see a relationship shift that is... we will see a relationship shift that is going to get us to a situation where we can figure out the rest of it. And in figuring out the rest of it, I truly believe that the West Winds has significant potential, the space at the West Winds has significant potential in helping us um, figure out where seniors can have their programming, when and how, in conjunction with all of the other spaces that uh, currently exist within the district. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, Counselor French. Um, one one of my takeaways from listening to Counselor French and his comments about who we have in the audience with us today is that there's a lot at stake in our relationship, the district with the seniors community. Uh, Mr. Sherlock also referred to the contributions of the seniors. As Counselor Hurford has pointed out, we will this afternoon, later in our agenda, be considering a report from staff on our real estate and facilities master plan, where we will be discussing uh, updates on cultural and recreational facilities, a variety of facilities and puzzles to solve, and neighborhood centers also being among them. It seems to me that we should all acknowledge that there should be lessons learned, uh, um, lots of learning that all around, there's plenty for all of us to learn. And uh, this is going to be so important for to to receive your advice as we plan spaces and facilities ongoing from this afternoon, this conversation. And also programming and how to administer programs in the cultural, recreational and social field. And also how to plan engagement in the future with groups such as yourselves. And not everybody may be aware, but it was a previous council that gave the Senior Center Society the role of being the voice of seniors in this community and the liaison with council. And that role did include uh, reference to um, distinct communities such as our First Nations community and Sikh community as well. It's already in that identified role. So I wanted to remind everybody about that, but mainly I think I think there's lessons to be learned all around. And as we go forward in this facilities, spaces, programming and engagement planning, let's learn from each other and keep the conversation going. The report will be uh, our CEO Linda Glenday has just pointed out that I've overlooked one of our, my colleagues on the screen, Counselor Race. So I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Race for final comments.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and I I won't repeat uh, comments of my fellow counselors. I I tend to agree with them. But I I will tell you, from my perspective, um, we are facing a crunch in facilities. Uh, you've heard that from others. Um, and I voted for a lot of the resolutions that, in fact, practically all of them, that lead us to where we are today. Um, we are facing a crunch for space. We were faced with trying to allocate a community asset. Uh, that that space uh, referred to as the 55 now uh, is something that is all owned for and is really belongs to the entire community. Uh, it has been used exclusively by seniors up until recently. Um, we had the luxury of doing that. We don't have the luxury of doing that anymore. We are in a very fast-growing municipality. We have a very young democratic demographic. Uh, and we have to find space for everybody as far as we can. So we can't give you back uh, the space uh, and let you have it solely for yourselves. Uh, and as the mayor said, this may last for a few years. We're in a building crunch. Uh, the the report that's coming later this afternoon on facilities and rebuilding facilities uh, might be helpful for you to see what we're facing with facilities in this community uh, and trying to catch up. Uh, but that's the way it is. And so what I'd look for from the seniors, I think, is constructive suggestions. Uh, if there are problems with the way it's being managed now that you think can be changed and fixed, if ours can change, if certain programming issues can change, uh, I think we'd like to hear from you uh, on that uh, with the hope that we can get through this together. Uh, and then I can't predict the future, but you know, we're just gonna whale away at these other facilities we want to get uh, and want to bring online. Uh, and hopefully one day we'll have a little bit more room for everybody. But thank you for coming today. Uh, it is important to hear from you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Um, uh, we have a motion to refer this presentation, this discussion to staff. Mr. Sherlock, I, we have a motion on the floor and I'm just gonna put that to a vote. Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Sherlock, we do have a busy agenda for the afternoon.
I say that I'm disappointed that it turned into something that's become a personality problem here. This was not intended as a slight against the rec department, what they're doing in the in the relationship. It's just strictly the fact that the rec department actually said that 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 center is not a good space because of parking facilities and accessibility. And so it's not really being put to good use as the program that's going now with everything going in there mishmash. And um, that's the only thing. And it's what I would respectfully ask you to do is consider the seniors as an important entity. It's the growing demographic in the town. And so you have to realize that this is not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse if you don't address it. And it's not any, not a slight on the rec department, they're busy. And that's the problem. You know, you've put too much on them that they don't need to take. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherlock. Thank you to all of our guests. Our next item up is a staff report on the Union of B C Municipalities Convention, specifically the minister meeting requests. And I understand Mr. Valerio may uh, come before us to um, share information and update. Mr. Valerio, can you introduce our task before us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with apologies for the size of the font, I will, uh, there's a subsequent iteration of this. I'll try and print it a little larger. It is in the agenda package, so it can be zoomed in on. And after this, I'll send out, resend the link to the Excel sheet. Um, this is a list of potential U B C M minister meeting requests. Uh, counselors have been so kind as to fill in uh, some of the language that was discussed at the previous meeting. And um, as I understand, uh, their current objective is to fill out the language and prioritize some of these that we can uh, select which request to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any questions or observations regarding the list before us? Mayor Elliott?
Um, Chair, through the C A O, I noticed Mr. Buxton stepped out. But is the Highway 99 intersections a piece that staff can pick up on a staff to staff meeting at U B C M? Um, so that we can focus on a new topic, being the one that Counselor Pettingill raised around um, the boat launch. Um, so that's a question. I don't know if, whether, and maybe Counsel, you can answer too, whether that's an effective use or whether we really feel it needs to be done at the political level.
Through the chair, I can um, certainly if Counsel wishes, as we prepare for U B C M, bless you, um, with our staff to staff meetings, this could be a topic that we cover with M O T I. Should Counsel direct us to?
Further observations on that particular part there, the transportation infrastructure? Counselor Hurford?
I, thank you. I think the the highway intersections, as important as they are, sort of an ongoing um, piece. And um, and I think staff staff with that hopefully um, would be uh, yeah. Of these two, I would, I would focus on the 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 boat launch um, piece, the, as the opportunities to um, to execute that and the need is, are quite acute and the intersections aren't going anywhere. But potentially our our ability to um, execute a a boat launch at that, at that location might, uh, that window of opportunity may close. So I I support the mayor's suggestion of staff to staff for the um, the intersections and focusing on the boat launch in this category.
Other comments? Um, I'll offer my own thoughts on this particular one. Last year, I put forward the suggestion that we might entertain a conversation with the minister and the transportation infrastructure. I forget the name of the agency, they keep changing their names, uh, in charge of high-level planning for the province and transportation regarding uh, the, what I refer to as the Pacific Gateway. And uh, that that involves the National Trade Corridors Fund, among other funding envelopes and planning initiatives, and the highway planning. We have not had a comprehensive review of the highways since well before the Olympics. In fact, it was 2001. But uh, and I would have suggested, that did not pan out. Uh, we selected instead to focus on the uh, B C Rail Squamish Yards proposal, which there was some overlap. But I I mentioned this because there is a tie-in between uh, Daryl Bay and the highway intersections in that they involve um, um, that level of planning on the part of the province. The Site B Mapquon Forest Service Road intersection, which I'm not sure if it's here, looking at the five print, Mr. Valerio, but it's one that I keep raising, should not be overlooked in that list of intersections. And the um, uh, boat launch, these are um, things that come under uh, another level of discussion. And I'd like to suggest in closing that we're not ready for that. We're still doing planning with our marine access study. There's a number of things in play. Um, so I would suggest that in addressing Daryl Bay and some of these highway intersections, that there is a a future, more consolidated ask, if you like, once certain things have unfolded, including the the ministry's own study of the highway, which isn't public. Mayor Elliott?
So we know that a preliminary, preliminary study has been done of all the intersections uh, in, within the district boundaries. And so that's why I feel it's uh, important for the staff to staff follow-up to keep the momentum going. But I think we should back off at the ministerial level. We did get our Cleveland 99 upgrade. Um, but there's more to do, but I think um, uh, it would be helpful for staff to understand where is that study going? How fast can it be action, focusing on um, our short-term needs? Uh, and specifically addressing uh, some of the the dangerous routes, especially now that uh, the 2030 Olympic bid is there from the four nations. It's an opportunity again to to have the highway upgrades considered um, within that context. But I think it's a staff to staff level and we should, we should leave it there for now. Um, as for the boat launch discussion, um, again, as Counselor Anderson said, we may want to wait until our marine access study is actually finished and um, and save it for a more complete conversation once we've got marine zoning, marine access done. And I think it would be premature to take that one to U B C M this September. So I'd rather focus the minister on regional transportation through the S L R Ds ask rather than than uh, these items at this time.
Further thoughts? Counselor Peddingle?
Yeah, in my mind, the the boat launch is quite separate from regional transportation or intersection or sort of highway conversation. So to me, I I wouldn't see this as conflicting or competing. Um, I, and and I think from the reports we've had, um, you know, I think we're well aware of of what the constraints are for boat launches throughout. Um, I can see the the marine access uh, study being useful, especially from downtown oceanfront, waterfront, those sorts of areas. But I think uh, Daryl Bay is um, in in many ways, a very clear standalone area with possibly of some really quick wins if we get some cooperation from the ministry. So I think that's why that one is worth pursuing.
Counselor Race?
Thank you. Yeah, I I tend to agree with Counselor Pettingill. I I think um, you know, we've, and we've gone after the minister on regional transit before, and I don't want to let up on those efforts, but this will be a new one for them. Uh, and so I think we want to um, open the door with the minister uh, to um, to start it off. There's going to be, there's a lot of considerations with this from what I know of the site. Uh, there's the actual ferry operation and how it might interfere with that or not. Uh, there's the all the lot and land transfers that might have to happen because it's a bit of a checkerboard of different ownership down there between the province and the district. Um, and so this is not a short conversation. I'd be amazed if it happened in one year. But I think we've got to start. Uh, and so I think we've got a couple of years. Any solution I've ever heard to the existing boat launch is is medium term at the longest, uh, you know, a couple of years maybe. Uh, and so I think now is the time, uh, because there are some procedural things, not the least of which is the order in council to shrink the uh, the actual license that the ferry corp has in there, which takes up basically all of the water lot, uh, notwithstanding all the land issues and stuff like that. So I think we should start. Uh, so I would be supportive of uh, taking a run at this.
Mayor Elliott?
With respect through the chair to my colleagues, um, to show up uh, with a 10-minute window of opportunity to explain this very complex situation, which presupposes the outcome of our marine access review and um, may or may not have our marine zoning in place, I think is premature. And in in the advocacy that I've been involved in over the last eight years, government likes to see that you've done your homework and you've dotted the i's and crossed your t's, none of which are the case for this particular, particular topic. I agree with Counselor Race that this is um, going to be something that we need to socialize and work on. But I would suggest that that is a specific ask, once we have these studies in place. And it's gonna need a lot longer than 10 minutes. And I don't want to waste our time at U B C M when we don't have the data we need to show that this is definitely where the boat launch should be. So I think that we should focus our efforts elsewhere um, for this particular minister and uh, um, and allow the the work that our staff are doing on marine access and marine zoning to complete. And then we've got all the information to go with and show that we've done our homework and show that it is a best option. So I I think it's just not a priority and that that later this fall potentially is a good opportunity to ask for a specific and longer meeting on this issue.
Counselor French?
Thanks Chair. Um, on the boat launch issue, I feel that um, Daryl Bay as an option for a boat launch is not even half-baked. Uh, it it's way too premature in my mind to be uh, bringing this to a minister at this time. I'd way rather see us uh, spend a little bit more time doing uh, research on uh, all the potential options, uh, including upgrading uh, the facilities at the current location if if um, that's a potential scenario uh, on that private land. I, there are other options and I just don't think we're ready to have this conversation at this time. And I just don't think we're ready to have this conversation at this time.
I'm going to offer my view on this in support of Mayor Elliott and Counselor French's position. I don't think that we're ready to address Darrell Bay with the province. I think that there's a number of things in play and other things we haven't referred to and on the part of different interests there at Darrell Bay. I'd like to see our marine access study completed before we go to the province. And I'm very sympathetic to addressing instead the topic of regional transit. I'm not sure if we're going to, I'll go to Counselor Herford. We're looking for consensus on this, the approach to take on this Ministry of Transportation.
Thank you. I guess, can someone remind me when we are expecting to see that? This isn't something that, as far as the marine access piece, is that coming back to us next month? It'll be after. Okay. No, that's fine. Then I respectfully will step back from the the boat launch discussion right now because we're, I don't think we'll be armed with the information that we need. So I agree with that assessment.
Entertain a motion, perhaps, on the approach we take here or oh, excuse me. My apologies, Counselor Reese. It's my vision or my visual aids I have here and prescriptions and so on. I keep missing you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. It's a lesson to be not to miss meetings. So with the idea that we would approach the minister separately, I could step back from this. Although I have to say, I don't see many other alternatives presented to us for location. And so I think we're going to get into this discussion eventually just because there aren't that many others. So whoever's sitting in these chairs in the next few months can keep that in mind and try to pigeonhole the minister for a separate meeting. I've always actually thought that those were more effective than the speed dating that you go through at UBCM. As long as we're prepared to do that and take those steps to advocate for that on a separate agenda.
Counselor Pedengal?
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on Counselor Herford's question, in trying to find a way to come around to what other people are speaking about. The timeline for this marine access work to be done, I understand it's not our term likely, but I thought I heard fall. So does that mean early next term is when we would expect to see that work done?
It's not on the agenda planner right now. We're trying to get the marine zoning through this term. It still needs to go to public hearing. So that's the challenge in front of us. And I don't have a date yet from Ms. McJanet for the agenda planner.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to be mindful of, I know we have some homework to do, but the boating community has been asking for this for a long time. And so this is like the end of the next term. I'm a little less comfortable not getting a ball rolling, but if this is fairly fairly soon, I can see the value of going to a minister outside of UBCM with a full sort of set of information, you know, early 2023, sort of late this year, if that's more the timeline-ish we're thinking of.
So Counselor Reese has suggested that these types of meetings are an opportunity to drop new ideas, new issues with the minister, but are there others? Can we compromise here around the table and perhaps dedicate this to, I am sympathetic to regional transit myself, as Mayor Elliott has suggested, but is there another mechanism by which we can lob this issue that we are going to want to address with the province, whether on a staff to staff basis or open to suggestions here, just to conclude our discussion on the MOTI minister meeting? Question for Mayor Elliott. Would you be prepared to put together a proposal, a proposed meeting request regarding regional transit?
That one is going to go through the SLRD. So the SLRD board will put that forward on behalf of all the member municipalities and the regional district.
Thank you, of course. Should we come back to this, move on to the next item in the interest of time? That is the Ministry of Municipal Affairs or our, I'm bad with acronyms, our AAP challenges. Consensus around this points, observations? Mayor Elliott, followed by Counselor Herford.
I think with a little bit of support from staff after a conversation they had with UBCM is that we know this is a challenge, not just here, but has been a challenge elsewhere on large infrastructure loan authorizations that were rejected, but were related to things that were legislatively required to provide. And so I actually think with a little bit of staff support, we could create a compelling brief here and put this on the minister's radar. And the reason I would prioritize this is because this has provincial implications. It's not just a Squamish ask. So I think it's a strategic move to put this in front of a new minister and get him to start thinking about this. And we do have information from UBCM that we're not alone. So we'll be able to use some examples from potentially around the province where this has been an issue, where people have required orders and councils to overcome the rejection of things that we have to provide as local government. So to me, this is very strategic and is broader than just our own backyard.
Counselor Herford.
I can't make a stronger case than that, but I think this is extremely important. And I think and I think with our experience recently, we're well positioned to take the lead on this. And I'm looking forward to those other learnings from the other municipalities. And we know that this process does get handled differently in different jurisdictions in our country. So there's, you know, we can maybe even get to the point of proposing some sort of solution, not just framing a problem that's only us. So I think we're in a good spot with this particular piece. As much as dealing with it so far has been challenging, obviously, but yeah.
Thank you. Can we identify other municipalities, regional districts that might wish to partake with us, sit in or liaise with us in this advocacy?
I'm not sure we have time for that, Counselor Anderson. But I know that staff are aware of some examples that the minister can follow up on.
Very good. Moving on to the next one then. This is the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. Parliamentary Secretary Green and expanding BC parks or moving some rec sites into the BC park system. Share the district's our collaborative visitor management model. Did you wish to speak to that, Counselor Stoner?
No, I'm just supportive of this request.
Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I think the current closure of Cat Lake as a rec site is a prime example of why a higher level of management oversight that would be provided by BC parks would would be a good thing and necessary for our community. So I think this one is, yeah, is important and we should pursue it.
I know that Mr. Pageley has joined us today and I just wondered if he has any thoughts or things we need to be careful of in our briefing note? If we take this one forward, given that he has been part of the visitor management collaborative table and also may have heard some information about expanding BC parks or rec sites and trails in the region. So I don't know, Mr. Pageley, if you want to speak to that? Or may stepped away. So maybe we can follow up with Mr. Pageley. Just to make sure that we don't put anything in the briefing note that isn't aligned with what the collaborative table is speaking about. But I do think this one's very important to follow up on, keep the momentum going.
I'd like to mention that some of our forest tenures immediately surrounding Squamish have changed hands. And one of the new actors is the Slil Watuth Forestry Business Arm. And within their area, their new chart area of the Mamquam is a former or a current recreation site that has actually been neglected. And so we might give some consideration to to that wider community. I'm sure that they would, would, are, or should be encouraged to be participating in our in our collaborative visitor management model discussions. And that's the Slil Watuth Forestry Business Arm, as well as the other licensees around. They are key stakeholders with recreation sites and their future. Moving on then to the housing topic with Minister Eby, following up on the request that Squamish be included in the speculation and vacancy tax. In 2018, there was a direction to wait and see, but to be included in the foreign buyers' tax. Now, we may have missed Counselor Reese or Mayor Elliott might, would maybe recall that conversation, but, and this is being suggested by Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, and I gave this some further thought and Mary Elliott raised the point that this might actually be better directed to Minister Robinson, who's the actual decision maker on this. Minister Eby could potentially support, but I wonder if we actually just continue advocacy through Minister Eby and then at a later date make a written request to Minister Robinson for the inclusion, as opposed to trying to pursue a minister meeting at UBCM would be my proposal. Unless others felt strongly about pursuing a minister meeting.
So Mr. Valeriot, we've taken that note to consider, Minister Robinson. Mayor Elliott.
I would agree with that. The province is reviewing the speculation and vacancy tax. So I think if council wants to, the opportunity is open now. The reason that it was, we weren't considered after it was implemented earlier was because they didn't want to open it up. They wanted to implement it, then review it, and then reassess. So I think probably the minister wouldn't take this meeting, but probably would accept a letter if we're still interested and submit it during this review period.
May I make a motion that the mayor write a letter to Finance Minister Robinson for consideration of including Squamish in the speculation and vacancy tax?
Counselor French, second to most discussion?
No further comments, except for I think it's important to follow up on this. And if there's the opportunity to make this known to the minister while it's under review, then I think we should do it sooner than later.
Mayor Elliott.
Could maybe the mover and tectoner consider adding the foreign buyers' tax?
Yes. So we'll add speculation vacancy and foreign buyers' tax.
So I see that our recording secretary, Mr. Valeriot, has made that note. I'd like to support this because I think we may be in a situation now, but it's going to evolve. And this, our real estate market, and I just spoke with some folks in the real estate sector just the other day that are actually advising that we do take this very seriously, that things are evolving in the marketplace and in marketing of local real estate. So any opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. Next item is childcare, how to support children with special needs, advocacy for space development, education, wages, and support. Mayor Elliott is the lead on this one, lack of childcare in the district.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Is it straightforward or please go ahead with any comments?
I'll just say that I can certainly refine this ask with Ms. McJanet, who's working with our childcare collaborative table, but we're not at our access target yet. And we know there is a lot of challenging aspects in terms of space and wages and attracting workers and educating them. But I think our collaborative table always has an item that they would like advocacy on. And so I've identified some of the ones that are outstanding, but there might be more. And certainly for my last UBCM, I would really, really like childcare to be on the table as a priority.
Other comments? Consensus on this one? Next up is Energy Mines and Low Carbon Innovation, Minister Ralston. Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis, coordination of plans and impacts, challenges with obtaining project information. Counselor Pedengal, you put this one forward?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I think we've seen, I think we've all seen in our various presentations, the challenge in getting information, especially when it involves coordination from the two projects is difficult. You know, Wood Fiber LNG is still not doing public consultation on its plans, but has very aggressive timelines. So it's hard to see how they meet their EA conditions without doing that, that public engagement, which again, they are required to do. I also had, just was at the Climate Leaders Institute for three days and the Climate Action Secretariat, which is part of this ministry, was in attendance. And it's fantastic to see them there and some exciting things coming from Clean BC, it sounds like, as an aside. But I had an opportunity to speak to the secretariat or people from that office. And one of the messages I received is that it's, what I heard is that there's some disconnect, I think, in terms of what the minister may understand of where we are and where we are. And so I think a bit of a direct conversation to share some of the challenges and so on would be worthwhile.
Other comments? Counselor.
Thank you. I just saw the note here. Didn't we already write a letter to the minister about this a couple of years ago? Yes, I recall that. And I recall everybody sort of nodding their head that that was something that was going to change. So I know that in preparation for this, we're going to dig up that response, whatever it was. And so I think it's very important and and I think we've got some good ammunition because in my mind, the, those projects haven't done what they were directed to do already. So we need to, that's our job to make sure we raise that flag.
So if I understand you, Counselor Herford, you're suggesting a go-ahead to address this again at this time? Mayor Elliott.
I'm happy to put this one forward as well, but I think staff should have a backup ask at the staff to staff level. Given that the minister's met with us before on this issue and he directed his staff to take care of it, I think we should have a Plan B.
Comments? For myself, I think that we are in a new phase with, in particular, the Fortis Pipeline Project. And that we're going to be facing more kind of, what shall I, I'm trying to find the words, nuanced issues. We're going to be in the trenches now in sorting this through. And I'm wondering whether this is where the effort should be directed on very broad concerns that have already been expressed when we have coming before us some very specific and new circumstances of how to work through these applications and their and their considerations. So I'm a little bit skeptical. As we have already communicated these things and we have new practical demands on us in sorting through these applications and and interests in having the province take note of new and specific things.
Very good point, Chair. And I'm sure that Mr. Buxton could speak to some new and emerging challenges now that the rubber is hitting the road. So we can tailor it away from our original ask back in 2019 and update it.
Counselor Reese.
Thank you. I'm more inclined towards the Plan B process. You know, I think there is a point to be made here, but as I look at this process that we've gone through for the last half dozen or so years, to me, it's more of an issue with the EA department. And so you know, the idea that two major projects which are interrelated have separate certifications and don't seem to talk to each other and and there's, is a regulation of whether or not they're doing what the certificate requires from the EA office. So I think that would be a more effective thing. The minister is kind of out there politically. And it's sort of a provincial party project almost now. And so he's going to be kind of And so he's going to be kind of constrained a little bit about what he can say. But I think it might be more effective if we tried to improve the EA process and then point out some of the difficulties with the EA process, such as the lack of coordination between the two and and also the lack of regulation or what's the other word, monitoring of whether or not there is compliance with things like public consultation.
Mayor Elliott.
Just a correction that it's not Emily that would be the ministry, it's Environment. The EAO office sits within the Ministry of Environment.
Where do we land then? Are we going to suggest a meeting with the Ministry of Environment here on the EA process, coordination among these different project applications and monitoring of engagement or of the of the applicant's performance with respect to engagement? So Ministry of Environment, is that what I'm hearing? Councillor Peddingle.
From my perspective, there's value in either ministry, and I would almost tend to take the shotgun approach and apply to both and see which meeting we get. But I mean, to me, at the end of the day, that there are these more general problems with the EA. I think, though, there there are specific examples that we are struggling with and have struggled with with this particular project. So I'd rather use this particular project as a vehicle to speak to those EA challenges. And hopefully, finally, you know, with some communication that those prior issues still haven't been resolved, we might see some of of the issues we're practically facing. Hopefully, we'll see some progress there and some help from the ministry. Again, the the message I understood from the secretariat was that it would be quite useful for the minister to hear about some of the challenges and and our thoughts about these specific projects. And and I think we can't really well deal with the nuances without dealing with some of these bigger picture, how these things coordinate. Like a lot of the nuances on a number of workers and impact of workers and so on, that that requires understanding these two things to come together. So I think some of those bigger picture things in the general EA process, sure, but also for this very specific project, we need to communicate. And, you know, from my perspective, I'm not picky about which ministry. But I think this, from what I understood, needs to be communicated at the ministerial level at this point.
So I'm I'm kind of hearing that we will orient this towards the Minister of Environment as the topic will focus on will focus on the topic of the of the environmental assessment process. Might it be an idea to invite a staff member from Mr. Ralston's ministry to listen in? Is that is that something that we've done in the past? Is that is that allowable or something we could apply for? A staff member from from the the additional ministry of of the Energy Mines Ministry? Mr. Valerian, any perspectives on that?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just gonna say I don't believe it's a specific ask, but we can, if granted the meeting, we could follow up and ask for that informally. I just, they're definitely tailored toward one ministry at a time, from what I recall.
We can inquire about that then, but otherwise we'll we'll settle on a request for a meeting with the Minister of Environment with the issues with the focus on the environmental assessment process, our experience with it. Then the last topic here on the list, we'll come back to the first one, but the last one here on the list is health with Mr. Minister A. Inredict following up on the master planning process and doctor shortage. There is the lead here is suggested as a regional district and working with Chair Ford, who is also Chair of the Hospital Regional District. If anybody might speak to this. Councillor Stoner.
Yeah, I just brought this up to flag it with Mayor Elliott, and I'll bring it up at the Regional District Meeting at the end by email because we need to submit it by email because we won't have a meeting before the deadline. But the Regional District is going to be taking this up.
Councillor Peddingle.
Yeah, if if we're back to the boat launch and if we're gone through the other ones, if. I didn't realize we had a vote. I thought we said we're going to come back to it. And I was going to sort of say, oh, I looked at the timelines and and yeah, I think make makes sense to to hold off till we have the recommendations done. I didn't realize we had a vote. I'm sorry.
I actually have suggested we come back to it, but if we are settled on the approach to work through the Regional District in a meeting with the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure on the topic of regional transit. Is this is this where we've landed? As regards meeting with that ministry, go work through their SLRD on the topic of regional transit. The consensus on that, and I am supportive of that as well. And we have noted that if there's opportunity to warn the province that we we're going to be wanting to discuss Daryl Bay and and various aspects of it at some point, and that might be prudent as well. So with that, any further questions, observations on this topic of ministers meetings? I suggest then we are ready to have a, should we have a short recess, council? Or are you ready to address the Mr. Bragg's presentation on the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan? A quick recess, very good. We'll take, we'll come back at ten minutes to three. Welcoming everybody back to the committee, the whole meeting for June fourteenth. And we're now going to be addressing the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan Project Update with our presenter, Mr. Bragg and Mr. Buxton. Thank you. Your floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time this afternoon. This report is on the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan Project Update. It's June fourteen, two thousand and twenty two. So the objectives of this report is to provide council with an update on the overall progress of the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. It's to provide an overview of the impact of events since the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan adoption in two thousand and nineteen. And it's also to provide the next steps the staff are working on for the remainder of this year, so for the next five and a half months. So a little bit of background on the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. It focused, sorry, it focused on the what, the when and the how of all the facilities in the district. What is obviously which facilities are required, the when is the timing and also the how. And that focused on funding, which is what staff are working pretty heavily on at the moment. The reason it was created, it was, there's over a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of investment required in the district facilities to meet the community's needs and its growth. It was also created to strategize and create a formal process of prioritizing works and how we move forward. It's specifically stated that we need to allow for ongoing and external factors and it's market forces. And I'll dive into that in a minute with additions to the RF, to the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. And it also stated with and how staff deliver the facilities in a fiscally responsible responsible manner. And at the moment, we're working on three shovel projects. We've got three underway this year and also updating the five year financial plan. So diving a little bit further here on the how and the when from the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. And I just wanted to show a bit of an overview here of the critical core and the support. And this is how we're prioritizing the jobs and the and the projects here. So under critical, these are the projects that are required to operate and govern the community. These include the municipal office, public works, parks operations, fire, police, waste management, primary roads, dykes and commuter trails. Core, which is the next on the priority list, is items and facilities that are crucial to the community that the district must deliver. And these include parks and recreation, such as Brennan Park, secondary roads, library and community buildings, cemeteries, employment lands, environmental protection. And thirdly, it's the the support projects, and these are the want and needs in our community, but not directly a mandate of the district. And these include childcare, transit, affordable housing, seniors and youth services, tourism, such as information center, socio-cultural and arts and trails. So updates to the existing Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. This allows for ongoing external factors and it sits in with the the overview from the master plan. We're proposing some additional items, one of them is sustainability. This cost is not in the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan currently, and it's in addition to each project that we're working on. We've focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we're doing this in a in a two party system. One is the operational carbon, we're reducing the actual costs of running the buildings, which reduces the amount of greenhouse gases they produce. And this is to keep in line with the the District of Squamish targets through Municipal Energy and Emissions Plan and the Community Climate Action Plan. And their numbers set forth for twenty thirty, twenty forty and twenty fifty. Then the other side of it is the embodied carbon, and that's a system in process. And that's what we're working on, the actual materials that go into the buildings and the facility upgrades. And you're using the the least amount of greenhouse gases available, and it's and that's we're working on that one at the moment. The other addition is climate resiliency, and this is building better buildings. This is building them to mitigate floodwaters, flood debris, rising temperature, storms, fire, earthquake and smoke, just as an example. Other updates include a merging of the Brennan Park Recreation Center Fields and Lands Master Plan and the Brennan Park Building itself. So what we're doing is we're looking at the plans and the building itself as in Globo. And what that does is allow a better product where one talks to the other. The other item we've been focusing on is an increasing level of community engagement from the communication side. Every where the projects that we're working on now require a more open community platform here and preparing the sorry, a communications platform, so we can prepare the community for major decisions moving forward. And also an update to COVID nineteen, designing buildings in a post-COVID world. Architects and interior designers are working out, you know, how much is working from home and is it's changed compared to pre COVID nineteen. And the other main item is costs, and this is the inflation and also supply and demand on materials, particularly in construction. We're seeing significant escalation in all corners of of our construction. This obviously impacts other real estate facility master plan projects. We're working out strategies and how we move through this process here. The other item is supply chain and product availability and also transport costs. And it's changing our scope and spec on some of the buildings. An example is a generator, if we want a certain generator and they have a lead time of twelve months, we'll then have to change the the brand or the scope and spec and change to something else. This is an overview, and I've just printed up the the program here, and I've done that because it is quite small, the presentation here. And this is a project based overview and the next steps for twenty twenty two. Again, the focus is the three shovel, the three shovel ready projects underway at the moment. On folk and in particular note here is the Tandalus Fire Hall. And that's just making sure that we we do touch on the housing needs associated, sorry, the housing needs assessment for the the airspace there and also the community options there for community space. We're also updating the projects in the five year financial plan. And as noted, we're we're moving forward with a Brennan Parks Building and Fields All in One. And that's we've created a project charter, and what that does is it creates a who and a when and accountability of how we move forward on the on the process here. Also focusing on many office municipal offices and partner opportunities and sites. And same with the library, we're looking at the space plan and the partner opportunity and available sites. Funding for Brennan Park Recreation Center, which is a focus for grant opportunities at the moment, we've really zoned in on that. The transit facility due diligence and funding, Valley Cliff Childcare Design is happening this year. We're also focused on finishing twelve covered structures in various parks throughout the district. The Squamish Adventure Center Interior Upgrade, we're looking at starting in in October for construction there, and then also the Junction Park Washrooms completing that before the winter starts. On a non-project focus, staff are working on funding identification. As noted, grants are in the highlight at the moment because funding is crucial in moving some of these projects forward. Also highlighting community engagement as we move forward the next five and a half months. As noted before, the projects are becoming ever more complicated, and the community engagement process needs to be as open as possible. On the finance side, focusing on moving through from class A, class C to class A, which is the indicative costs. And this is before we lock in for construction costs with the with the builders. And then making sure that we estimate what the escalation is going to be moving forward, which is bit of a difficult task, but we're focused on that. And also the additions to the five year financial plan as noted. Noting the arts, culture and heritage strategy, we're implementing that on every project we can moving forward. We've got the architects involved in a couple of projects to see what we can merge merge in with the strategy and the actual construction. And then proposing to come back and counsel in another third quarter to provide a further update. This is of an overview of project tracking, and I haven't printed this in detail, but just it just provides an overview. The colors that are here is the staff's opinions. You'll note that there is it's hard to read, but in the five year financial plan, we're focused on those projects. And overall, this just shows how we're running compared to the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. We're running well, everything's in the green pretty much. The orange items are where we're moving through indicative costs from class D to class A. In the last twelve months, we're struggling to keep up with the inflation and make sure we have our forecasts in line with that. There's a lot of work that staff are across. One item we're focusing on is resourcing and accountability, making sure we can produce results here. A working group has been formed, it's an integrated team. Or it's being established, sorry, it is established. The sponsor is the General Manager, and it's supported with the Construction Planning Department, Communications, Recreation and Finance. Further support is coming in from the the green side, which is sustainability from Real Estate Facilities and Grants. And the the process here is to create a system to enable the core leadership team to make decisions. The way we're operating this is it's an annual quarterly monthly review and just to make sure that we are, staff are accountable. The recommendation is that the District of Squamish receive this report dated June fourteen, two thousand and twenty two from Facilities Planning and Construction, providing an overall progress update on the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan and the next step in its implementation for the remainder of two thousand and twenty two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Questions, council? Followed by Councillor Stoner.
Yeah, just one clarification on this Gantt sort of chart here. Just want to clarify where there's some of these boxes, they don't necessarily mean construction, they they may mean any sort of work related to that. And so where there's a box, there's some kind of work going on, but we shouldn't expect everywhere there's a box, something has been built by the end of that box. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. We call it pre-development work, there's an amount of work that we need to do to strategize and plan before we start the construction. So what I've listed on here is what we've been focusing on, regardless of it's construction or pre-development work. It's it's an area that we're that we're spending time on to make sure that it does end up in construction.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing. My perception is that for the last decade or, I don't know, take a a longish period of time, there's been give or take a a fairly consistent level of grants available for municipalities to do things. And we have a, you know, a certain level of success, and our staff has gotten pretty good at getting grants, but it's been somewhat static. And then my perception is that with the climate emergency and COVID and a few things, there is suddenly a lot more grants available to municipalities that are applicable to the sorts of things we're doing. And so for at least, you know, hopefully for a little while longer, there's sort of more grants available for the sorts of things we want to do in general. And and so it's a more viable funding source maybe than it has been in the past. And is is that an accurate perception or am I just being overly optimistic or?
Through the chair, it's actually very accurate. The cadence of grants that are available in the last twelve months has increased. And we need to make sure that we're in a position to capture those. And the grants do take a lot of work, you need to be in a position, you know, from the energy side. And there's a lot of consultancy work that needs to be done before you can apply for these grants. So there's definitely more out there, and they're definitely more focused on sustainability side as well. And we're making sure we're in a position to capture those ones.
Councillor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. Thanks for the update. No doubt, this is a complex piece of work and there's still lots to do and some increasing challenges, especially with the inflation and the supply chain issues. One of the things that jumped out at me in your previous table with the color coding that says six facilities projects are in the five year financial plan at the moment. And then the staff report, it says these are totaling a hundred and twenty three million dollars. Our original Real Estate Facilities Master Plan from twenty eighteen estimated the facility costs at about a hundred and fifty million dollars. So our first six projects are coming in at four fifths of the budget. So I guess I'm trying to digest that and figure out where that leaves us. I think I know the answer. We have a long ways to go and not enough money to do it. Um, I think I know the answer, we have a long ways to go and not enough money to do it. Um, but I guess the question being, at what point do we start to look at, like, do we start to look at scaling the projects down, given the pressures of inflation and rising costs?
Uh, through the chair, the short answer, yes, we're definitely looking at that, um, and seeing where options we have because, uh, we can't keep spending money just because it's escalating at the moment. So prioritizing jobs is becoming increasingly difficult and increasingly important as to what comes next, which is why we focused on grant funding, um, as a funding source and other alternative sources as well. We know there's a gap, we know that the gap is increasing, um, and we're focused on the, on the funding side pretty heavily.
Okay, and then on that point or, or related, I guess, on the sustainability side. And I think that it continues to be really critical that we look at the greenhouse gas impact and emissions of our buildings and realizing that these buildings will continue to be standing in twenty fifty. But I think back to the presentation that we had early on with the Valley Cliff Fire Hall, and the architects at the time mentioned this idea of not every single building being carbon neutral or working towards that, that it's an ecosystem of buildings that we can look across the district. And so I'm just curious if we continue to look at our entire list of projects from that perspective. And we might have to give on some of them where it's more expensive to advance that sustainability so that we can actually be really successful in, in maybe making a net, negative carbon neutral building somewhere else.
Uh, through the chair, that is a good point. Um, and I'll give you a specific example where we have to give because it's not cheap to make a hundred percent sustainable building. An example is Public Works, um, the, the building split up into two sides. So one, we focused on a wood frame structure, but doing a wood frame structure for a maintenance base, you can do it, but the costs are significant and the return again, there's a question on, you know, what's the return here? Um, when you're looking at in, uh, Globo with all the other facilities here, but you're correct, it does need to be evened out. And we can't just focus on having a, a super, super green building because the costs are, you know, they're finite.
Other questions, council? Councillor Hertford.
Thank you. Um, you've highlighted some, um, cha, some challenges, uh, here so far. And I'm curious, um, what mechanisms in the real estate facilities master plan there are for, to account for changes? Because we all know that the only constant is, is change. So we've got a, we've got a, uh, price escalation, supply chain issues. Um, I'd like to think that, um, on the land side, the dispositions would be positively affected by this. So just sort of looking at, um, at that and, um, and is that, because that work sort of would fall into similar category of sculpting and budgeting and, and so on in this work chart. So is there an, an aside of sort of stepping back and looking at the, at the overall here? Or how is that sort of reassessment being, being handled?
Uh, through the chair, there is, and specifically in the real estate facility master plan, it states allow for ongoing external factors. And that's what we've been focusing on. Um, and that's what we brought to, to today, noting that there are some changes, particularly in the last couple of years with COVID. Um, but moving forward, you know, this could change pending what funding comes through. So if we happen to get a grant coming through, then we'll end up changing our scope a little bit to focus, um, you know, um, on how the resource can, how we can actually, um, facilitate that grant or facilitate that project. So that's why we've been focusing on funding here. If we do get funding, then we'll be shifting a little bit of resources towards that.
Thank you. And then I'll just ask you a couple of these, um, I appreciate the, um, uh, the update here and, and everything seems to have a, uh, at least a little description if the, if the line doesn't sort of cover it itself. But one of the pieces that's just sort of sitting here without a, a description around what the work is, whether it's funding source or scope or update budget or anything, is courts, pickleball, tennis, basketball, lacrosse. And I know we're looking at the over, the overall is why we're here, but I thought I'd ask a specific question around that.
Uh, through the chair, that comes under, we're proposing doing some pre-development works. And if you look at Brennan Park as a whole, um, and that will take into account, um, a lot of the items that are listed there, you know, we're looking at playgrounds as well. But what we're trying to do is make sure that we have a base site plan that allows for our projects to move forward. Um, and this is why we combine the Brennan Park lands and the building itself together. So when we're doing this pre-development works, it'll, uh, in, incorporate, you know, where will the pickleball courts go? What's going to happen with the courts? Where does the ice rink go? And all this, basically an overall plan to make sure when we move forward here, that we don't go backwards or have to redo anything. So Brennan Park is, is a very large and complex project. Um, strategizing what goes first, when it goes is, um, is something that staff are really focused on.
Other questions, council? I'll throw one out myself to start to, a few that I have. Mr. Bragg, I'd like to ask about, uh, the treatment or, um, the treatment of the Archives facility in your table three, Looking Ahead Per Project. You know, my question will be just a request for clarification as to how we're, we're addressing Archives. And I'll explain why I'm asking this. Archives comes up twice in this table. Uh, it is listed under Arts Community Administration slash Archives. But above that, it, it, we have Library Community slash GLAM. Now, the A in GLAM is Archives. And the Library Futures Study, which I think we received in twenty twenty, is one of these items that came along after the Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan. But that Library Futures Study is very much, uh, addressed, uh, Archives as, as part of that GLAM concept. So there's a little bit of confusion there as to where we're slotting it in for our planning, what planning exercise. The library has been the manager of community historical archives for sixty-four years. And a, when the Heritage Community Coalition addressed council in twenty sixteen, to request attention to Archives among other matters, the library was in fact the secretariat of that, of that initiative. And I'm not aware that they're stepping aside or suggesting that they would not have a role. So hence my question, how are we addressing future planning of an Archives facility? Is it not in connection with the library? Is it other, uh, could you clarify as to whether there is any new specific direction on that matter?
Uh, through the chair, we don't know yet, but we do know that we're putting it as a placeholder, that we need to work on it, um, knowing that it's part of the community side of the Archives and the library and the community space. Um, and this is what we're focusing on the next, um, six months is what we're stating. We don't know, but we need to plan for this, uh, and we know it's on the horizon and it's coming, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. And of course, the, uh, the heritage strategy effort that's already underway would assist us in, in that, uh, most likely. Uh, I have another question, but I'll just put to count, any other questions from council? Councillor Race again, thank you. Go ahead, please, Councillor Race.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Bragg, I was just once again on the library, uh, one of my favorite topics these days. Uh, it talks about partnership opportunities. And, um, and I'm just, without getting specific about what might be an opportunity, I'm curious how, um, that part of it might proceed to identify partnership opportunities. Uh, so for example, do we go out to the public? Do we let the public suggest things that they might think are, are good co-locators with the library? Or, uh, because when I was thinking about this, you know, some possible co-locations, I mean, I'll just throw some numbers out as an example. I mean, there might be one that's maybe a one million dollar addition to a library structure. And the other one might be a ten or fifteen million dollar addition to a library structure. So we're, we're going to have to somehow go through a vetting process or a weed out process to figure out what we can, not only what might work with each other, uh, but what we can afford with each other. Uh, when you start building the building bigger, you can't stop these things halfway through. We've got to finish where we start. And I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about how that might proceed?
Uh, through the chair, we've focused on making sure every door is open. Um, and whether the library sits in with a very large development or if it sits on a smaller development, um, everything is on the, on the table, so to speak, right now. We're making sure that we talk to private industry and developers for, uh, for space and sites and opportunities. And we're also talking to other government agencies to make sure that we're capturing all the opportunities here with the partner side. So, uh, at this, it's still very early in the game here, um, but we're making sure that no doors are, are closed from that side. And if there's an opportunity, um, to go larger, then we'd want to make sure that we have the availability to do that. But also if we can go smaller, then we can do that as well. So what I'm saying is we're really making sure that there's no doors that are, that are closed here.
Mayor Elliott.
I just, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but, um, we know that residents of the S R D, uh, use our rec center and use the library. And so who owns the discussion of, um, setting up some funding, uh, for our real estate and facilities master plan from the S R D, also given that they've got major rezonings in Area D, um, that could contribute to C A Cs for some of our bigger rebuilds that are hard to tax for? So who owns that conversation?
Through the chair, um, that's part of the integrated team that's in place at the moment. Um, we've got the general manager that's sponsoring that, and that's, uh, part of our agenda to, we've already started that process. But it's, that's, the ownership is under this side of the table here and under that team.
Further questions, council? Uh, I have another one for you, Mr. Bragg, then. In your table two, events since adoption of the twenty eighteen Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan, one of the things I, uh, I wonder whether we might consider including in such a table is the social procurement policy, which we adopted, I believe, last year. Um, I, just if you have any reflections on its significance, uh, and I'll let you know the reason I'm asking is that some of these major projects, for example, the Public Works Yard, we do have a coterie of longstanding local firms that do observe who's doing what, because in fact, a lot of them are out of work. This is due to layoffs in the forest sector, so we have a lot of equipment people out of work. And so I think that we should be mindful of our policy on this because we might be asked about it by such, such people in the communities. One of the comments I'm hearing from a couple of different local firms is, hey, we put thousands of dollars a year into minor baseball. Uh, who's that piece of equipment over there or they're even local? This, this does come up in conversation. Perhaps there are other aspects of a social procurement policy that may have relevance for our realizing our real estate facilities master plan. But do you have any thoughts about whether it might be included as an item? Is it, is it something that we should consider in our, in our, um, in, in a presentation such as we're having today? Another item to consider, social procure, social procurement policy alongside our green building strategy, for example.
Uh, through the chair, I think that's got a couple of different layers to that question. We've got a procurement policy, which is what we stick to, and we make sure that we stick to that with black and white. Um, and from the social procurement side, I'm not quite sure what your question was on that one.
Um, one of the things we addressed in, uh, a social procurement policy that we adopted last year was new goals and new values to incorporate in it. Environmental, local purchasing, uh, equity, um, um, different types of hiring practices, goals and hiring practices that we would, that we'd be concerned, uh, interested in. And so we might have questions that come up concerning our major projects in our real estate facilities master plan. Uh, should we monitor the implementation of that social procurement policy uh, in our, um, reporting on our, uh, our, our real estate, uh, projects?
Uh, through the chair, the short answer is yes, definitely. I mean, we're focusing our buildings to make sure we do them and create them in a socially responsible manner. Um, again, going back to the procurement policy, it starts there and it goes on through the social side of things. So the answer is yes, in, in short.
Thank you. Um, council, any further questions? Councillor Penningill.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, this is a question I maybe should have asked this morning during the asset management discussion. Um, and here we're focused mostly on sort of a, a broader overview. Um, and in the community discussion, um, that we've been having, we're very focused on, on how do we sort of, you know, what's the immediate timeline of, of some critical and core facilities and the immediate costs and the impact, the immediate impact on our debt financing and that sort of thing. Um, I vaguely recall that in the broader real estate, um, master plan, there was some information about, you know, when we add this newer facility for new growth, it, there's a, a corresponding bump in our operational costs. And I think one of, a, a piece that has been missing for me is that future replacement cost aspect as well that comes with these. And so thinking to that asset management, um, discussion for this morning, is there a point when we will see sort of, hey, uh, here's where we are timelines, here's the upfront cost to, to rebuild these, uh, here's the bump in operational costs it'll mean, and also here is the, the future replacement sort of asset management costs that we have to think about too. And i- is there a point in the next, I don't know, year or, or whatever, uh, and, and an update or as part of the public engagement where we will have a chance to see tho- those sorts of numbers?
Uh, through the chair, it's, it's a good question. Um, from our side, yeah, it's facilities management, and we're just finishing the first project here, coming to the end in a, hopefully a month here. We're, we're going to hand over to Valley Cliff Fire Hall. Um, and this is the kickoff of all the projects moving forward. And facilities management comes in in a very stringent way of exactly what you're saying. So the answer is yes, we haven't created it yet, but it's in the process. We know it's coming down the pipeline to create a better and more intrinsic facilities management plan.
Um, to add to Mr. Bragg's response, um, as part of the overall asset management plan, um, when new facilities are added, uh, it's, they then become part of the asset management plan. So the long, the long run, uh, financial plan outcomes of adding new assets, sorry, I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, adding new assets is going to have an impact. And the impact would, would flow through the long-term financial plan, some long-term financial modeling that we're, that we are doing. And that's where you would see the impact and how that would change future asset management requirements. Does that address your question?
Councillor Stone.
Yeah, one final question. Um, I was just asking councillor Anderson before the start of this meeting how Brennan Park was, the original Brennan Park was funded and a majority of it came from volunteer fundraising. Um, and so I guess I know that I'm going to get a lot of questions around the items under the Brennan Park Recreation, uh, Centre lands, which don't have a, an immediate term funding source. And my question is, if there was a very motivated group of volunteers that wanted to fundraise for any or all of those items, they could do that, is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, of course.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Bragg, um, I note in the table, your table three, Looking Ahead Per Project, uh, the item Neighborhood Centres. And we don't have anything specifically indicated there with respect to scheduling or, uh, project updates. I just wanted to ask whether, or are we not considering neighborhood centers in, for example, already now in the Geribaldi Estates neighborhood plans? Is there at least some level of consideration of neighborhood centers in that neighbor, ongoing neighborhood plan exercise?
Sorry, I'll try and field this one. I, I, I believe yes. Um, sorry, through the chair, um, I also think that the, that's an element of the, an up, an update that's planned next year for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So there are multiple opportunities, multiple processes that where you could look at that, that issue. Neighborhood plans obviously make sense. A community-wide plan would give you a community-wide context, so you can do both at the same time, quite frankly.
Thank you. Other questions, council?
Um, what will the community see in the next, uh, five-year financial plan that, uh, isn't there now?
Through the chair.
Any big ticket items that we should be preparing them for?
Through the chair, that's a good question. The big ticket item is the change in costs on projects. Uh, we have to update according to market numbers. And there's some smaller projects that were proposed. There is a large project, which is a grant funded project for Brennan Park. That's a give or take seventeen million dollar project, and this one is pure sustainability based. So it doesn't increase the community side of things. We're proposing to put that in the five-year financial plan. And then there's a couple of other focuses on Brennan Park on the smaller jobs. One is a dog park for forty thousand, forty-five thousand off the top of my head. And then we're also proposing to put a trail in, um, for Brennan Park as well and allowing some funding for that.
Um, if, if I may, um, add to that, in, in addition to, uh, the facilities projects that Mr. Bragg speaks of, um, we're also anticipating that we will see additional projects in waste management, uh, additional, uh, additional costs associated with the replacement of the landfill. Um, I think those are. Um, I think those are probably the two biggest ones that that we should anticipate. Um, and then probably the other item is depending on how our negotiations with B C Transit go, we may be seeing uh an element for costs associated with that coming towards the end of the plan.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I've been grappling with how to ask this question, and I I think that maybe just the best way to do it is to throw it out there. Um, some of us at this table a few minutes ago encouraged the seniors that were here with us to stay on board or or tune in at home uh to get an idea of what we're grappling with here. And so I'm just wondering, Mr. Bragg, if it's possible for you to throw a few words at how all of this um circles back around to seniors, if that's even possible?
I think that's for you to come.
Yeah, okay. You know what? I I'm I'm going to leave the question there, Mr. Bragg. Thanks for hearing me out.
There's no further questions, council. We do have a staff recommendation that the district received the report dated June fourteen from Facilities and Planning Construction, providing an overall progress update on the real estate and facilities master plan and the next step in its implementation for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-two. Mayor Elliott, are you moving that recommendation?
I'll move it and I'll speak to it.
Very good. And Counselor Stoner, you're seconding it?
Um, this is a great update, and I appreciate looking at the complexity of this in a in a Gantt chart kind of format. Um, there's so many moving pieces and I and I appreciate um how you presented uh what we're trying to balance here in terms of inflationary costs, uh, the scope of the work. Um, and and letting council know that there may be decisions coming up where um, we're going to have to make tough decisions on what gets prioritized or whether we slow things down to try and get past some of this inflationary environment. I think Counselor Anderson brought up a really good point. Um, we do report on the sustainability aspects of our builds. Um, but uh I I've seen the procurement doc- document for the Fire Hall, uh, the next one, and I know there's uh social value built into that one. And I think it's really important that we start to report out on how our social procurement is um influencing our builds. So I think that's another slide that can be included in a in a future update. I think that would be a great addition. Thanks for the presentation.
Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, just briefly, uh, thank you so much for the update. I was in a bookstore the other day and I saw a thousand-piece double-sided puzzle and I was like, that's what the real estate and facilities master plan is like. You think you have it sorted on one side, but then the puzzle is a whole totally different image on the other side. And I feel like every time we get an update, that's kind of what we're working with here. Um, there are so many moving pieces, uh, and undoubtedly increasing uh costs with inflation, supply chain issues, uh, and just a growing demand and need uh that is not waning anytime soon. So uh, thank you for your continued efforts uh and your clarity with the presentation. I think Mayor Elliott said it well, that there will probably be some very tough decisions coming up for this council and the future council on how we continue to move this work forward. Um, given our limited borrowing capacity, and and that's, I think, the real piece here is that we're kind of bumping up to that. Um, so uh, thanks, thank you also for extending the amount of effort towards finding the grants that are eligible for these sorts of projects. Um, but I also know that's a heavy lift uh on staff. Um, and they're limited. So uh, just thanks for the update, uh, for keeping our community updated and uh look forward to continuing to move the work forward in a nimble way.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, just want to um I guess, repeat what some of my colleagues have said, that there is a lot of complexity here. I I can see there's some hard choices ahead. I think uh that the presentation we had to open today on the asset management, it's it's so important, and this makes it clear why that's so important. And it's or at least at the very least, the North American challenge where people didn't do asset management planning, which means no one has put aside the money to pay for these things. And so then we end up with these really complicated real estate facilities master plan with in incredibly important, critical needs, and communities haven't put the money aside to pay for them. So we have to figure out how to pay for them and to start paying for their replacement. Uh, so that's why this morning's discussion was so important. And um, I I hope for the people that are listening, it, you know, all these pieces and why we spend so much time on seemingly boring, sometimes boring topics on the surface, uh, why, why, why it's so critical. Um, so yeah, so some hard decisions ahead, but I'm glad to see that we are doing some serious work and and from what we heard this morning, uh, leading the way in terms of getting ahead of some of these things for the future. So uh, thank you to staff for that.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Stoner. I would like to offer a a cautionary comment, and it's on a, uh, I'm going to quote from Mr. Bragg's table. Uh, Events Since Adoption of the Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan, under the the heading Communication and Public Relations Platform. There's a comment here. I quote, transparent process that manages expectations. And I would like to caution that we can do too much of managing expectations. And what I mean by that? Well, in the local newspaper, uh, just over the past week, there's an interview and an editorial concerning future cultural facilities, specifically performing arts facilities. And we have some responses from staff, from our communication staffs, and they're not out of order. And they're not inaccurate. But if we should be careful that if we keep saying to the community, we have to manage your expectations, we have to manage your expectations, and we anticipate this and we anticipate that. The reality is, we haven't undertaken or completed those planning processes or engagement processes. We have the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy, which unbelievably says that we shouldn't be starting that communications and engagement process regarding a performing arts facility for quote, seven to ten years. Well, these, what my concern is, is that if we keep just kind of self-censoring ourselves and telling the community to manage their expectations, we're not going to be doing the planning and we're not going to be prepared for the facility opportunities that may come in future. And so I have some, I I um, I am concerned that uh we are doing, might, we 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 may be sometimes close to making assumptions about the outcomes of planning processes, which we haven't undertaken yet. So it's just a little bit of a caution, um, because there is, uh, there are some, some concerns in the community about cultural and recreation for re- recreational facilities in particular. And that uh, the important thing is that we are able not only to have robust engagement to be, but be ready with our planning. And let's not have our managing expectations get in the way of doing that planning and waiting for its outcomes. That's just a very general observation. And perhaps if it not only comes from me, it does come from some members of the community. Thank you. Um, and uh, with that, uh, we have our uh motion and uh to adopt this report and um its next steps for implementation and anyone opposed? And yes, uh, motion passed. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for the presentation and miraculously, and not due to any efforts on my part, we're just about back on time. And we are finished with our open meeting business of the day. And we now require a motion to close. Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor Herford. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. We'll go into close to address some closed meeting business.